Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power, under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines, to hear requests for variance and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use permit requests, and to hear appeals from the decision of the staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to then make decisions in such matters. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines and have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here and I'll introduce our board and city staff members. On the audience's left is Nathan Blake. Next to him is Cindy Smith. Next to her is Marlis Jones. On the audience's right is John Scheido. Next to him is Dave Gare. And next to Dave is Lynn Carlson. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. I will introduce our city staff that are assisting with the proceedings today. On my left is the city's legal counsel, Glenna Frank. Also assisting with legal counsel down here in the audience is Judy Parks Cruz. And here also in the front row by the podium, we have Bert Droste, senior city planner, Eric Lundey, senior city planner, Catherine Dostart, city planner, and Sue Ann Donovan, our zoning enforcement officer. And I'll go through the procedure here for today's hearing. For some of you, this may be the first time that you're in front of us. You may hope it's the only time you need to be in front of us. But we'll give you kind of the how things go here, but we'll also talk you through the agenda item. So you don't have to worry about being an expert or being a pro at this. We're just here to hear everybody's testimony, both sides of the story, and make a decision. So we'll help you with the process. First and foremost, while this is a open, public meeting, it is a legal hearing. The meeting is being recorded. In fact, we're being broadcast live right now on the city's cable channel, or you may be watching us in reruns late at night. The board members have received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. Copies of this agenda and the staff recommendations are available in the trays right outside the door here. So when I'm through with my opening remarks, if you haven't grabbed an agenda yet, feel free to do so. This board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each appeal will be announced in order as presented on the agenda. Staff will give a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified during the staff presentation. Then the appellant or a representative of the appellant will be allowed to speak first. They will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal and testimony. Then anyone else present in support of the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. Following that, anyone present in opposition to the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each for their comments. If there is opposition to the agenda item, the applicant will be allowed up to three minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments. All speakers must speak only from the podium up here at the front left, and begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. If you're here as a resident in relation to your property, just give your home address. If you're here in a professional capacity as an attorney, engineer, architect, et cetera, you can give your place of business address. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. We do have a busy agenda here today. Everybody deserves a fair shake, but kind of keep that in mind for some time management. The board will then close any further public comment on the agenda item after all testimony has been presented. The board will immediately deliberate the request, and we will make a decision here today. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until at least Wednesday of next week to go to the permit and development center if you would need to obtain any necessary building permits. This allows the decision of the board to be documented in the form of a decision in order that will be provided to the permit center as well as to you for your records. Any appeal that is approved by the board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first section of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed, and they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report unless there's an individual present or a member of this board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. And I'll come back to that here in a minute, and we'll go through that. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision in order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future items for consideration. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. So if you want to show any photos, documents, maps, drawings, you'll either need to give those to the staff for the record, or make suitable copies available to staff. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to not be disruptive or distracting from the hearing that is in progress. You're doing a fine job with that. Please ensure that your cellphone has been silenced. I think we had that one call that was taken care of, so we're doing fine otherwise. If you need to use a restroom, you can leave through the doors here. You don't have to go downstairs. There's restrooms just to the right of the staircase at the end of the hallway. Once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. Otherwise, you can stick around for the next two to three hours if you'd like to listen in on the rest of the agenda. We'll have a 10-minute break in the hearing between 3:00 or 3:30, if that may be needed. So what we'll do is we're going to take a look at the agenda quick with Mr. Droste for any changes or requests in relation to that agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Droste, planner for the city. I do have a few changes that I will go through. Item number three is the appeals at 1907 Capitol Avenue that has been withdrawn from the applicant, or from the agenda, so that will not be heard today. Item number five is a request for the property at 3121 Forest Avenue. They have requested a continuance to the September 25 Board of Adjustment Agenda. So staff would be supportive of that continuance since it's the first one. Item number six and seven, staff is moving from consent to the discussion. We've received significant opposition to both of these two, so we feel that opposition warrants a discussion. And again, that's number six at 713 Manona Avenue. And number seven, which is an appeal at 1416 East 36th Court. Hopefully, it shows up soon.
Which item was that again?
Number seven.
Seven, okay.
And then the last change would be staff suggests that item number 19, which is the appeal at 900 Des Moines Street, we recommend that be moved to the consent portion of the agenda.
Okay, so I'll work through this here. We'll start with seeing if we want to move item 19 to the consent agenda. Is there anybody here in the audience that would be opposed to granting the variance and exceptions requested at 900 Des Moines Street for item 19? If there's anybody opposed to us granting that approval, please just raise your hand for the moment. Anybody here opposed to that? Seeing none, any questions or concerns from the board with item 19? If none, would there be a motion to move item 19 to consent?
I so move.
So moved by Marlis.
Second.
Second by Nathan. Okay, and then...
Vote on the motion.
Oh yeah, we need to vote on the motion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're just moving item 19 to the consent agenda. Motion carries unanimously. And then, let's see, motion to continue item five. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the requested variance for item five, which is at 3121 Forest Avenue? Sir, are you here in opposition to that item?
Aye.
All right, in the fact that you want more information, the applicant has requested that this be continued to next month's meeting. So perhaps there'll be an opportunity for more information to be released on that. But I think what we'll do here is see is would there be a motion to grant continuation on item five to the next regularly scheduled meeting?
I'll move.
So moved by Nathan.
Second.
Second by Marlis. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion granted. I do appreciate you coming down, sir, but we're going to continue that till next month, and then we'll hear both sides of the case. Okay? Thank you. Okay, so what we've got left then, what I'm going to do is read through the items that are on the consent agenda, meaning that we're planning to approve these subject to the staff recommendations, which would have a few conditions. So if you're either the appellant or someone with a concern, if you don't agree with approving this with the staff recommendations attached, before we vote on this, please raise your hand. So I'll go through these one by one. Item one is an exception request in the vicinity of 4500 Southwest Fifth. Any opposition to that? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none. Item two is an exception request at 3839 East 32nd Street. Any opposition there? Seeing none, we'll skip item three, that's been withdrawn. Item four is an exception request at 3257 East Washington Avenue. Any concerns with that? Seeing no hands. Item five has been continued. We will discuss six and seven. Item eight is an exception request at 1328 43rd Street. We'd be looking to approve that. Are there any concerns with item eight? Seeing none. Item nine is a special permit request at 4200 Adams Avenue. Any opposition there? No hands there. Item 10, an exception request in the vicinity of 2901 Southwest Fifth Street. Any opposition there? Okay, seeing none. And then again, we would have item 19's been added to consent, variance and exception at 900 Des Moines Street. Okay, so what we would do here is we would be looking for a motion from the board to approve items one, two, four, eight, nine, 10, and 19. Would there be a motion to grant approval of the requested exceptions, variances, special permits on those items?
Make a motion.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. So if you're here for items one through two, four or five, eight through 10, and item 19, they have been approved, subject to those staff recommendations, and you can get a copy of that decision in order next week. So for those of you that were here for consent items, you're free to leave, and we'll let everybody make a quick adjustment here, and then we'll move on to our first regularly scheduled item. Which will be item six.
Six.
Six, right? All right, so our first item on the agenda will, I believe, will be item six, an exception and variance request at 713 Manona Avenue. It looks like Mr. Lundey will kick us off.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a, I would say this is an out-of-the-way property. In fact, the first time in 25 years of working here, I've been on this street when I did the site visit for this property. So it is...
Okay.
But it's an area that's very familiar with most people, so... Right at the top of the, top of the picture is the Seventh Street Bridge, but it's a street that really is a dead-end street coming off of Indianola Road called Manona Avenue. There is some limited ability to access back over to an alley system on the northeast, and then the multifamily has an outlet that gets to an unimproved section of Holmes Street. So there is a little bit of an outlet, but in general, the public doesn't pass through there. Only people that basically live there. So the subject property is the highlighted property on there in the gold. It's currently vacant property. It sits between the property with the dwelling on it, and then this, I believe this property has two dwellings on it, but it might just be the one with more of a accessory-type building. And then up, as you're actually climbing the hill here, off the river, coming from the river up to here, so these apartments sit almost at the crest of the hill. If you're looking from the street, you can see that it is an improved street. This is looking generally northeast, so from that perspective, so you can see that there's significant vegetation. The appellant is looking to do an infill project with six rowhouse-type units where they would come in, and I'm going to put this at north, so you have a feel for it. So if you recall that looking northeast in that, in the picture. So they would have basically a 12-foot drive in front of these units. So the idea would be that it would be more of a one-way circulation to that alley that I showed you. And they would have tuck-under garages that they would access off of this one-way drive system, which is 12 feet. They would keep their mechanical units away from the street view. They would have about a 15-foot setback from the, from the street. And the units actually will face nor, generally north, a little northwest. I think that that's the, the main impetus of the project, is to have some of the views that are going to get from upper levels of these towards downtown. These are renderings of the way they would set on the site. Each individual entrance with a garage. It's a double-wide garage, but with the 12 feet of maneuvering, depending on the size of the vehicle, I would question if you could actually get two large vehicles maneuvered in very well. Certainly, I think you could maneuver one vehicle into the center of the garage. They did provide a template for that to show how that would work. So just to demonstrate that you can functionally use that as parking. Each, each unit would require one and a half spaces. This is more of a elevation perspective, not the rendering, but direct, direct looking at the fronts of the units.
What do you mean, each unit would require one and a half spaces? What does that mean?
Yeah, so it's considered multiple-family. Now, rowhouses, if they face the public street and access directly onto a public street, would only require one space per unit, similar to a single-family dwelling detached. But in this case, since these units don't face the street, they're not, they don't fit into that definition of row townhome, rowhouse unit, so they don't get that parking requirement. So that may be a technicality, but that's the way.
So do they need an exception request for that?
Yes, so I'll go over those appeals that are necessary here. So they're wanting exception of 15 feet, less than the minimum required, 30-foot setbacks, so going back to the layout here. That might be more helpful to show what we're talking about here on the drawing. So right now, they're wanting to come within 15 feet. They want nine feet of the rear yard, which is up the hill. So they only, they would only be one foot from property line here. Construction-wise, I'm assuming they're going to build a wall up through the, up through that, up against it with no openings for the most part. I don't think that the building codes will allow openings on that, and it will be a rated wall. One would give them some ability to have backfill on that control. I think from a practical standpoint, they're going to want to deal with the adjoining property owner to maybe have even more right-of-access to get to that side of their building if they build that close. That's one of the reasons why we don't let you get that close, because there's, there's more to it than just the aesthetic version of that. So then, they're also wanting exception of 15 feet on the rear yard side out of the 30. And then the 12 feet of the 24 feet of maneuvering. Now, again, from the practical standpoint, and I pointed this out in the staff report, you're getting 12, and then with the depth of this being 25, normally our stall would be 17. So about eight feet into the garage would also really effectively work as maneuvering. Now, when you're parking two cars next to each other, you'd lose that a little bit because you have the walls on either side of you constraining you on that eight feet of maneuvering space, but they actually do have more storage than even beyond that in there. And then this would be their mechanicals. You would enter the garage and go up into the unit through the garage. Staff is of the opinion that there's a challenge with getting a single-family property to work on this, on this location. They provided some analysis. I'll let them make their analysis argument on the economics of the situation, but they did provide an analysis of how that would work in the market, given existing sales data and some, some of that information. And so while it would allow a single-family house by right, it's arguable that that's not something that the property would really yield a reasonable return from. So staff does, does fall into that line of thinking. However, we still think that there's a way to achieve something a little bit further away from the property line, if that makes any sense, to prevent some, some of the complications that you have from the issue, issues related to the... And I know that's more of a code issue, and this will still require a site plan in front of the Plan and Zoning Commission, but we do want to make sure that any multiple-family dwelling is in compliance with building codes, in compliance with design guidelines applicable currently. Now, if this comes through after the new code, there'll be another set of standards that they would be applying perhaps, depending on the building type, and may or may not require them to go to Plan and Zoning Commission at that point in time, depending on whether the design is able to achieve all the design guidelines that are applicable. We do want it in substantial compliance with the renderings and architectural elevations that they showed. So I guess we do support their argument here. One of the things we didn't put in the staff report, but I think is desirable, if you want to make sure when the, this gets looked at through site planning processes, a lot of times when a rowhouse situation is put on end towards the public street, we still want some type of a entry presence on the facade that faces towards the street. There may be some challenges here due to the way they're showing their design, but we didn't make that a condition of our recommendation, because I think we'll be looking at that through the site plan side of things, but certainly the board could add additional requirements. I will show you the consent map. There was a couple cards about concerns for more units up in this area. One of the things that we don't have a handle on as staff is the, some of the concerns that relate to having mixed densities on a small street with no outlet essentially, so that some of those concerns, I think, are being brought to light.
I thought I saw three cards.
Was one the Neighborhood Association, perhaps?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have three cards.
Who's got them down there?
Because one of them might be outside. There's, there's a little piece of red.
Oh.
Right here.
Ah, okay.
It might be hard to see. Where, do you see where I'm pointing? Just a little sliver.
Sure. To the best of your knowledge...
That gets them a notice, so...
Did the Neighborhood Association respond, to the best of your knowledge?
I don't think we got anything from...
Okay, because I know there would be Indianola Hills, and I think...
Yeah, I think there was actually two...
Columbus McKinley.
Two, because it, across the street is the other, Indianola Hills and McKinley Columbus Park.
Hey, Eric, question. Looking at this map that, that you have here, can you point out which sites are multi-density sites versus single-family sites?
Yeah, it might be easier on the overall area, just so we don't have...
Yeah, that shadow effect gets them...
Yeah, so both of these, these three right here are built as multi-story, multifamily.
Like an apartment-type structure. Like an apartment-type structure?
Yes.
Okay.
With, with separate parking lots. I would say their vintage is about somewhere in the 1970s to late 60s possibly.
And Eric, we do have a single-family home there.
Right here.
Between the existing apartments and that lot. And then, is there a single-family home there nearer to Indianola?
These are, I believe, these are all singles.
Single, and then, again, where it says C2 there?
Yeah, this, this one, and I thought that it's possible that there's two sitting there on that same property.
And a few years back, someone built what I call the log cabin. That might be down around the corner, but you're, are you familiar with that? Kind of up on the hill in an angle, there's a nice log home.
And then the, and then the school has this, as you go clear around the corner, I know that.
On Hartford, yeah.
Across the street from the school, there's a, an older building, but I think that got razed.
Right, yes, yes, it did. Across from St. Anthony's.
Yes.
Yeah, that's gone. So in this case, with the subject property, while it is zoned for multifamily, that lot could be used for building a single-family home or even a duplex, is that correct?
It could. So they presented an argument that based on prevailing sale prices of similar-sized properties and that that doesn't, based on construction cost alone, that that wouldn't have a reasonable return, if any return at all.
But according to the zoning ordinance, which was my question.
Yes.
A single-family home or duplex could be allowed to be built.
Yeah, those are permitted uses, yes.
All right. And to the best of your knowledge, this doesn't have any off-street parking for any quote visitors. The 12-foot wide path would be the maneuvering only, so with no.
They would have two spaces per unit, so there's, potentially, they could.
So my friends.
Make something available.
Because when my friends come over, they park in my garage usually.
Yeah.
Okay. Does Manona Avenue allow for parking on at least one side of the street?
I didn't observe it, but I, I see some in the aerials, so that, you know, generally, most local streets, if they're wide enough, they have one side parking.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Sometimes on a dead end, when maneuvering's difficult or it's a small street.
Yeah, it is narrow. I mean, I wouldn't say if we built that street today that we would put.
Right.
Parking on it.
But it's low traffic generally. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
What is the, what is the size of this lot? Like, how wide is it?
Um, I believe it's a 50-footer. Did I put that in there?
50 foot?
On the, in the first site description, 50 by 171.
Thank you.
So it's, it's comparable to the, what you typically would say is probably a single-family lot in a traditional neighborhood in Des Moines. Little deeper, probably a little deeper than the, the standard one, but.
Anything else for Eric? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so the way the hearing works, now the applicant or the representative of the applicant can step up. You've got 10 minutes to present your case, and please start with your name and address.
My name is Jake Williams. I'm the sole owner of Manona Investments LLC that owns the property of interest, 713 Manona. My mailing address is 320 Southwest 7th Street, Apartment 211. So I appreciate all your time. The, let's see there. I'll just go over some, some of the comments and questions that we had over the actual project itself, and then dive into this as well with the facility. The building will be built into the hill on Manona. The, it's a rather steep hill, it has a steep grade. With that, we'll be able to bump the first floor, in this case, of three, which would be the garages solely, up into the hill. Therefore, the back of the garages would be at essentially ground level. Because of the shed-style roof on the south end going up to the north, then you're looking at going from essentially a one-story up to a two as you look out into the valley. So that's kind of a little bit of a layout of looking south to north. And then the, the garages, yeah, let's talk about the garages quick. Two, two-stall garages with a single-bedroom loft is what each of the units say. So six units, six tenants, 12 parking spots. The minimum's 1.5. The garages are actually oversized in both depth and width. As you can see here, you have a 16-foot garage, and then you also have a walk-in garage door that adds to maneuvering ability. So you're going to have that availability for parking, for extra parking, for your buddies' parking, for, also in talks with adjacent lots on potential for that, especially maybe during construction phase, just to help out with that. But as far as parking goes and garage size goes, especially for Des Moines and the area, we think it's more than adequate, especially with the other houses on the street. The entry presence you, you mentioned, I think that was something in the recommendation, and we're more than happy to do that, is add an entry presence on that Manona side. So that, we have no problem complying with there. The, yeah, so it is considered a multifamily apartment-style facility, but it's actually a row house, and they're all separated by, by walls. So there's that, the, the target demographic, I'll just mention that here while we're on the topic of the, the living space. And it, like I said, it's a, a one-bedroom loft, a single unit, so the target demographic would be young professionals, middle to high-income, which would be a good mix for this area and this neighborhood. The other I mentioned was failure to yield reasonable return. So.
Return that.
Yeah, which way do you want it? Okay. So when looking at the property, we don't feel it yields a reasonable return as a single-family household, because the cost per construction, just on a square-foot basis alone, versus the value of the neighborhood, the average sales price in that neighborhood is $80,000. The ability to build a single-family in that under the current setbacks, we don't feel it's, it yields a reasonable return. Therefore, looking at something in the multifamily, and then with multifamily, under the current setback restriction, it just does not allow for enough livable square foot to, to make it investable as well. So under the proposed setbacks, it's not much, but it's enough to get that on the low end of investment case. I'll be living in the unit, in one of them, and, and so I'm not looking to, I just hit that threshold of just the minimum investment case to take on this. The, the taxes also, from when you're looking from a single versus the proposed structure, is drastically different. The taxes previous to me paying them hadn't been paid for 10 years. So I came in, made those present current, and then the average for the neighborhoods are roughly around $25, $2,700. This would be 10 times that. So there's a reasonable case there. Other hardships, you're looking at a really steep, steep hill. The, the lot, you can see here, the, the grade goes from, you know, let's call that base, to plus 30 feet in a matter of 75-foot run. So rather steep, and due to that, you see a lot of the structures on the hill placing themselves on the south side, on the high side of the hill. So everything marked in pink here is all on lot lines. So you can see the adjacent neighbor here, which is a single-family house, although it's owned by the apartment complex and used as a dwelling and an office, I believe, is on the backside of their lot line, allowing for adequate space between the property and mine. And the one-foot space between the back of the property will be digging in to have a retaining wall there. So there really wasn't no need for access back there. There's no windows, doors, nothing back there, and it'll help with runoff and, again, making it, you know, more ergonomic for the topography of the lot, because it is on such an upslope. Utilizing the downtown view, again, there's the, the difference between having the lot turned one versus the other. It is a blighted area, so investment in this area, I think, would be good. It will need the proposed setbacks to make the investment, like I said, investment case. The pictures you see there are pictures from the first day I bought it. A lot of trash that needed to be cleaned up. It's, you know, victim to some litter and some drug abuse. Last thing I'll mention here is it is in Indianola Hills, and it's part of the city's revitalization program. Again, so the, this matrix here is on the left-hand side, on the audience's left-hand side. It is from the revitalization program report, specific to Indianola Hills, and then on the right is how this development scorecard is against that. One of the larger assets is the views. With the proposed lease, we will be able to utilize those views. If not, we won't. The, the other items that I'll, I'll touch on here would be, one, adding middle-to-high-income units to the area, roughly around $1,200 in rent per month, versus the current multifamily in the area, which is roughly around $500 per month, low income. Adds resident leadership, as I live in the development and hold the property to the standards the neighborhood expects and deserves. And then, three, inspire confidence for reinvestment by the current owners and new investment from outside investors, which would increase the neighborhood's economic competitiveness. Open it up to questions.
Any questions for Jake?
So these are going to be rented out, not sold?
Correct.
Okay. And you've done some aspects, I'm looking at that, that hill, and all that water's going to hit that retaining wall. What effect is that going to have, having a huge rush of water going down each side? What provisions have you made for that water?
Yeah, we intend on working closely with the applicable building codes and getting necessary permits from the Permit Development Center and approved site plan under required design guidelines. Myself, the contractor, the engineer, will work closely with the city to ensure those standards are met. It could be said with the current state of the lot versus something that's more engineered and thought out, could almost be better for the erosion factor, especially for the, the house is downhill, having that be more engineered than just a current empty lot.
Any other questions for Jake?
Jake, how, you have experience with other developments or rental properties, or?
No.
Is this your first one?
No, yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay, well, you're well-prepared, give you credit there.
Thank you.
How long have you owned the property?
Um, a couple months now, just putting this information together.
And I don't normally ask this, but since you put dollars on the table for us to look at, how much did you pay for the property?
Well, I had to make the taxes current as well. So I paid $500 to the owner, and then I paid another $13,000 approximately in taxes to make them current for the last 10 years.
About 13,500 on that.
Roughly.
Okay. Okay. And I see in your analysis, you compared the value of the property, if there was a house on it, to the value of the other houses in the neighborhood that are pre-existing. So let's say they're what, 80 grand on average, something like that, correct? So we do have new houses that get built in existing neighborhoods in the city of Des Moines that can have far greater value. Just because there's an empty lot doesn't mean a house can't be built on it that isn't worth more than the ones around it.
Sure.
Sometimes when that happens, it brings up the value. And your analysis also shows just rental income. But what if somebody wanted to buy that lot? If I could pay 13,500 and have a nice big lot that would overlook downtown Des Moines, I'd love to build a single-family house there. And those numbers could work for somebody to be an owner of the property and live there, I, I, I would think. But the analysis you've given me is for your project to work, not for any other project to work, including maybe somebody choosing to build on it themselves. Is that right?
I think that's fair. I think my pushback would be the, the lot was exempt on taxes for 10 years, and.
So no one else decided to build it on a beautiful view?
I mean, I don't know where that person's at.
I've got you.
So if, if, you know.
Yeah.
I'm here now, and I want to do something now. It's part of, it's aligned with city initiatives. And I'm willing to work with the city and everyone to, to make this happen and, and provide that initial, you know, be that catalyst in that area, so.
I've got you. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and see, is there anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? They can have up to five minutes. Come on up. And we just need your name, address, and you've got the floor.
So my name's Wade Williams. I am the brother of the proposed owner. My address is 1005 Am Parkway in Indianola. And the reason why I want to speak in favor is because I'm actually a real estate professional in the Des Moines downtown area for the last five years, so I've been helping him with this project, which is why he's as prepared as he is.
Good sales point for you.
Yeah, exactly. If only I got paid for it. But I've seen, so in my experience and the work that I've done the last five years in the downtown especially, I've seen the benefits of projects like these for these types of neighborhoods. And the project, the project like this will take what, you know, obviously currently is considered a blighted area, but has great potential. I think we all can understand that from where, how close it is to downtown and the views it has. And by granting these, by granting these considerations, I think that you'll help get this project going, which I think is going to spur a lot of stuff for this neighborhood and be beneficial for all the neighborhood itself and all the residents who live there. I think that they deserve to have a neighbor that's going to be somebody who's going to take good use of that lot. And if you've seen the condition of it prior to from the photos, it just hasn't been happening for them, and I don't think anybody's really stepped up for them. So I appreciate you guys' consideration to make this happen.
Cool. And Wade, while you're up here, it sounds like you know a fair amount about this as well. I had a note here, and I forgot to ask it, garbage cans, recycling. Since this is multifamily rental, are you planning to have one place where they take garbage and recycling? I didn't see that on your kind of simplified drawing of site layout.
Yeah, so the requirement will essentially be similar to what you see in the townhomes and the neighboring communities. 555 is a neighboring one that is a rental community, and essentially what they do in that community is that everybody has a single rollout recycling and dumpster. You are able to bring that out during recycling and trash pickup days. They'll drive by and pick those up, and it has to be returned into your garage.
Ahah, that was going to be my next question. Des Moines residents have a habit of decorating the fronts of their houses with their garbage and recycling containers. I don't know why we don't have an ordinance against that, but I wouldn't want to see, you know, six times two recycling and garbage cans sitting out in front of your nice profile drawing, you know, week to week, except for garbage day. So they'll be required to keep it in their unit until it's trash recycling day.
Correct, yeah. So it's, it's, it comes down to more of a management issue. So, and the experience I have is in more management-related, having experience in management of row homes real near to this exact site. It is what it comes down to, is you, you tell, everybody has the expectation with the neighbors is you don't want that sitting out there. You bring it back into your garage. It's only after that day. If not, it's a phone call to say, you know, you need to stay compliant.
So it's a condition of the lease on, on where they keep it and when they can have it out?
Yeah.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anyone to speak in opposition? Come on up. We'll have a model process here on each step on how it works. We just need your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes.
I'm Arnold Willis. I live at 1974 Summit. I was one of the red boxes.
Okay.
And I'm a mechanical contractor.
And Arnold, with staff's help, could you show us on that area map where your property is? Because you're not addressed as Manona, right?
No, I'm on Summit. I'm on Summit.
So could you kind of point to your lot or your home?
May I use this one? I'm, I'm right there.
Okay. All right.
And what I'd like to speak to is, he's talking about a retaining wall, but if he's got a one-foot off the property line, the building's the retaining wall, if I'm correct in understanding that. And then trash pickup, you got 40 feet of, when, when it's double day, there's, there's that many dumpsters. And then, I've been there 42 years, and Home Street is a 25-foot semi-paved alley. That's what everybody uses. It's not Manona. In the wintertime, you can't get up Manona. City does not come and plow, except for, we're like the three, three-day-out for the plow, plow runs.
You're saying as far as clearing Manona?
Clearing Manona, clearing Summit.
Okay.
I've been shoveling snow in Summit for 42 years.
Is Summit your primary access to your property?
Yes, I use Manona up through Home Street on the Summit.
Okay.
So that's, that's, and that's where.
So you can get to it from both sides?
The reason people use Manona is it's far more busy than people realize.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
It's the only access east or west off of the, of the hills unless you want to go out on Southwest 9th.
Okay.
And so anyway, the, what happens is, as far as trash and whatnot, he says it's blighted, but I'd like to show this, if it'll work. I see this pretty much every week on these apartments that up the hill from us. And that's my concern about how they, and I, I'm the one that sent the card through that was asking about all the, all the dumpsters. I took that on Monday.
Are the chairs there for recreation or disposal?
No, those are constantly cleaned out. There are rentals that keep rotating people in.
Okay, so the furniture goes out when they do?
Everything goes out. And this goes on all the time.
Do you know what those apartments rent for?
No idea.
Okay.
No idea. They're a, a single, I think, a single-bedroom efficiency, I believe. And the other thing that occurred with those when they were built, they were built to the three-story. And then the city turned around and they fought them at the time, said, "Don't want those in this neighborhood." It got passed, they said they'll keep it to three stories so the people could maintain the view of the, what she spoke of, of downtown, and then they came along 10 years later and put a hip roof on top of them, took the view away.
Okay.
So anyway, my other concern was drainage and snow removal. His, he says he's worked with the city, but I know what happens. It, it just all goes out in the street and you got ice down at the bottom.
In an ironic way, if there is more development on the street, maybe that could give a push to the city to take care of Manona better.
One, long dead-end streets are at their end of their, it's, it's part of, we fought them for years over this and it doesn't work like that. They have better places to worry about. And then the other part of this is when, when you have that snow where people park, because they cannot get up Manona and they can't get around there, they end up parking in the alley, in, in that Home Street alley that was, and they, right in here.
Mm-hmm.
They end up parking in, parking in there.
Okay.
And I had one other thing. Well, the other thing, this is the, that hill's made of, of clay and mine tailings. So it's not what people think it is. They're used, they're down at Southwest 7th, there was an entrance to a coal mine there that dug back to the straight south and into that hill. So there's mines underneath that, that whole hill there, and then you do not know where they're at exactly.
Right.
So that was, I think that's pretty much what I see as my, my conditions, that I see as problems.
Any questions for Arnold?
Yeah, real quickly, it, it sounds like you're, you're opposed to the development, this development in general.
Well, he's asking for easements, and I see problems with those easements.
With all the exceptions, but you didn't really present on anything except for, I guess, the variance on the side yard setback, but for all the other exceptions, it didn't, it, it just seems like most of your concerns are related to act, any sort of development in that property.
Well, I don't, I think it should be a one-person property, that's the way it was. You're going to dig a hole for a 138-foot building on that hill, and it used to have an 80, 800 square foot. You don't know what you're going to get into is what I'm, what I'm seeing.
Okay. All right. Thank you for coming down, we appreciate your input. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Suzanne, you have something you want to add?
Chair members of the board, Suzanne Donovan, I'm the Neighborhood Inspection and Zoning Administrator. I have a couple of concerns. If you're going to have individual dumpsters, totes come out, how are they all going to stack up on this street for pickup? I don't know that there's going to be enough room. As a residential, multifamily residential unit, under the code, they have to have a dumpster enclosure. I don't see that anywhere on the plans for dumpster enclosure for garbage or recyclables. I don't believe that Public Works will pick up from a six-unit. I think they only pick up to a four-unit.
I've, I've lived in a six-unit and they picked up individually.
They do pick up individually up to six? Okay. It's still, and that's fine, it's still problematic in that I don't know how you're going to have just a recycle bin and a garbage bin, that'd be 12 bins along Manona to be picked up. I just don't see how that's feasible.
And there's a requirement for Public Works to have about three foot between each container so they can adequately pick it up and set it down and not knock the other ones over, so you have to factor that in, we have pretty wide, wide stands there.
I'm just concerned that, that the, they haven't thought through the constraints on that, that lot with that number in that small of an area.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I asked that question.
I, I have lived on the south side, I have lived in the hills, and I think Manona is going to be very slippery, and then you add garbage collection into that, and I think they just, you need to think through all of the, the issues with that density on that lot.
Okay, good point, okay. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Jake, you can have a rebuttal if you'd like, and again, this will be a good example of how an agenda item goes. You've got up to three minutes for anything in closing or response.
Well, thank you for the comments. I'll address them as far as the trash. There's plenty of examples in that area, just 500 yards away, 555, it is individual cans, it is outside the unit, it is a private company that will pick them up outside of your unit. There is no width restriction on that, so if you drive by there on trash day, you will see a garbage container next to the, the garage or the walk-in door, and then you come back after work and they're gone. I live down the street from one and I see it every, every...
So you'd see the truck backing in and then one by one deal with them and then pull back out? You wouldn't have them at the curb?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure the actual specifics on if they, if a human grabs them by hand or if a machine picks it up, but yeah, the, the containers are outside the unit, they get, that's where they sit, that's where they get returned.
But still on the property.
Yes, so it wouldn't be lined up next to the metal box, for example, yeah.
Because I don't think Des Moines Public Works allows people to use the right of way to pick up garbage privately, yeah.
I heard him say a private company picks it up there, so would you be willing to do that if?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
That's my thought, want to confirm that?
Yep.
All right.
Yep, the, the clearing and the snow removal, I think it goes down to, Mr. Willis, your concerns with the street conditions, it's, the, the hope is that the proposed development will, like I said, bring 10 times the tax revenue from one structure than a single-family and of annual tax revenue. That would help, you know, with streets, with snow removal, bring some attention to the street and potentially any, you know, blighted streets or roads. I've never used that road at the top, I've always just used Manona. But because the way this, as you can see, the way this property is on the hill, it's really at that halfway mark, whether, you know, you're committing and going up to the top or, or not. So, you know, that's from my experience, so you have the alleyway as well, and I look forward to working with the city and not only them, but the apartment complex that gets, has been mentioned. I'm in no way affiliated with them, I've never met them, but, you know, I look forward to being neighbors with them and working with them together to help clean up this area. A lot of the trash does come from there. But that's, you know, essentially bad management versus city ordinances. That's something that I think, I hope to be a steward of the area and work with them to help clean that up and, and relieve some of these things. And, and I appreciate all the comments on, from, from both of you. In closing, I want to thank the city staff for working with me throughout the process and you guys for hearing me today, that's it.
I have a question. They were talking about digging a hole for these units, but from what I looked at and understood, this, these are going to be built on a slab, right? So you're not going to be digging a foundation. Is that correct?
Yeah, because it's a hill, there'll be some grading work that'll, some dirt work that'll need to be done because just where the, we're hoping it's just a lot of reallocation of the existing dirt to shift things up. So, you know, on the back half of the building, you'll be building into the hill, on the front side, you'll be, have your driveway there, that's at current, at the current elevation that the ground is. So it's just really trying to shift around some of the existing dirt.
Okay, and then you said you're working with the other apartments, do you know what those other apartments rent for? Because I know a lot of people are talking about, a lot of fighting and loud arguments and stuff, and it might have to do more with the type of people it attracts rather than just being an apartment. Do you know what those rent for?
Sure, I, I believe somewhere in the $500 range, $500 to $600 is, is what the website might have said when I looked at it, I can't confirm.
So you would be dealing with a different, more professional people, yeah?
Yeah, and that's part of the city initiatives that we talked about, mixed-use, mixed-income, and bringing that to the area. It currently doesn't have that, and we'd like to bring that in to, to help align ourselves with everything that the city's doing in their revitalization project.
Okay, I like that, thank you.
And you have a retaining wall, not the back of the building's going to be a retaining wall.
Yeah, so I'm not a structural engineer, but the, the talks that I had with the general contractor was trying to utilize the foundation of the garage, so go concrete as high as you can to the back end of the hill and use that as a pseudo-retaining wall slash, kind of like a walkout basement where your, where your, where your basement is, you're using that as, you know, your foundation to, within the building. Again, I'm sorry, I don't know the technical terms for it, but that would be the...
Seal it extra good.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, so.
You're going to live in one of these units as well, correct?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Jake. Okay, so we'll close, unless there's further questions for staff, we'll close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. What do you guys think?
Originally, I was going to be against it, just looking at logistics and everything, but looking at, at the situation of, of where it's at and the planning that he's gone into it, I don't know if, originally I was thinking about going down to a few more, a few less units, if that would really make a big difference or not, because I imagine most of the people living there are not going to be spending time where they need green space, they're going to be enjoying downtown. So I think he has put a lot of thought into it, I think it'd be great for the area, you know, the tax increase income is going to be very beneficial for the city. So I'm, I'm leaning towards approving this and seeing that we can make a go at it.
Any other thoughts?
Well, the fact that this was on the consent agenda makes, I think it's a done deal. The only reason we added it was because there was a couple of people that objected or had some questions. This guy's going to make a significant investment in a piece of property that's been neglected for years. So I think it's a great project and I commend him for taking it on.
Yeah, I tend to agree, I, I think it, it would be good for the city to have it there, I think he's made his case really well. The exceptions, I think, are pretty easy to make, and the variance, which you all know, I have a little more of an issue with sometimes, but showing the, the context of that hill and how, there's not really necessarily a guarantee even with a single-family home that you wouldn't need to have some sort of, some level of building into that. And all of the other properties there built at the southernmost spot in their, in their property, which to me is, is pretty compelling. So I think he's made his case, it's, it's a, it's a residential district that's zoned R4, so they have a right to multifamily home housing, so I don't, not sure why everyone's so hung up on that, the fact that it's not single-family. And to his point, provides more tax revenue, but also is, is more density, I think it's actually good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move staff.
I'll second that.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Jake, you will have to be a good traffic cop on your 12-foot wide lane though, I scratched my head on that, but I wish you well with the project, those will be nice views. All right. That'll bring us into item seven, which was also moved from the consent agenda to the regular portion, which is an exception request near 1416 East 36th. Also, Mr. Lundey will present.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I do have a couple, I do have one card here.
Lots of testimony.
This is, this is a property that's in the Grayswoods neighborhood. The owner actually owns two parcels, the one to the north and the one to the south. They're both considered lots of record, so they can be viewed under the lots of record provisions. The challenge on the north is not the same as the challenge on the south. The north lot can be built by right and does not appear in front of you for any relief today. This parcel, the big challenge is the stormwater sewer easement that runs through the north section of it, and I will show you the sketch here to kind of give you a feel for that. So, and just so you know, I don't believe the pipe location that you see on the dark line is accurate, I think it's centered in that 20-foot easement, so where they're showing the footprint would not be on top of the pipe. What's in question here is that the proximity then to the south property line in order to get the width that they desire of 27.5 feet. So if you're looking at the property right now, it's a little bit overgrown. This is looking to the south, so you can see the neighbor's garage, that would be nearby on the sketch. That's this building in the photo.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that's also the individuals that submitted the card, so they also indicated that they were under the impression that it wasn't a buildable lot from something they heard, I don't believe that would have been from any city official. This hasn't been deemed unbuildable from the city's perspective.
But it would have been difficult to build on without exceptions.
Challenging for sure, because of the presence of that storm sewer.
Which is probably why they're here today.
They're seeking the relief. And the relief is somewhat based on the proposal to go with a 27 and a half-foot dwelling. They could, I suppose, go down to 24 to the minimum width of a, of a single-family dwelling, potentially. I'm not sure that design would be as compatible with the area, but if you look, you can see that the types of homes are the small bungalow, very simple style, they're from multiple eras of development. This area did not develop all at once, was platted quite a long time ago, but took a long time, I think, to fill. So you see different types of housing, pre and post-war housing in the same area. The card was submitted by the property owner. You've seen some of these owners have double, you know, bought two lots just to have more property and have, you know, a large garage off to the side as an example. So you, you see kind of a different, it's not really a consistent development pattern at all in that neighborhood. Staff is recommending approval of the exception, but we do have some standards we do want to see with the, the single-family dwelling that would result. We do want to make sure it has an attached or detached garage with at least one parking space for a vehicle and, and 80 square feet of storage space, and a paved driveway to that garage. We want a full basement, unless it's demonstrated that there's an issue with, with the groundwater conditions. I'm not aware that there would be, but sometimes if you're next to a storm sewer pipe, there might be some things that come with that. Exterior of the material of the home, masonry, brick, stone, vinyl of not less than 42 mil thickness, cedar, cement fiberboard, or other composite materials of equal quality and durability. Any dwelling constructed should have the nominal trim on the windows of the nominal four inches wide. Architectural-type shingles, no standard three-tab shingles. We do want to make sure it's constructed in compliance with the residential code, international residential code, and issued permits by our Permit and Development Center. And that's on almost everything that comes in front of you. I know that a lot of questions get raised about whether that's going to work or not. Well, at this stage, we're generally not getting to that, but they would have to make that hurdle too.
And Eric, I'm, I'm curious, which I'm pleased to see, you got a provision to have a paved driveway and attached garage or detached garage. I would assume they would have to use part of that sewer easement.
They could pave driveway over the easement, they can't put a structure.
Got it, okay, because that's what your assumption was, okay.
So they have, so when you look at that, they end up having plenty, plenty of width for driveway.
Yeah, so the driveway would go on the north side of the proposed structure.
Yeah, the other thing I should point out, you know, if you're looking at the neighbor property, it's, it's hard to see on that because it's just shades of gray, but so you're, the neighbor to the south has their, the dwelling is here, then they have a garage here, and then they have another driveway back to another garage behind, because they have such a large property, they can make all those things work on their... property, they can make all those things work on their property. But in terms of what's, what this is being proposed to be proximate to, it's the side of that garage, which you saw in the photo.
Right. Okay.
And that, it sounds like they're not comfortable with that, but staff didn't seem to have any issue as long as they could meet the codes to get the fire separations they need to have.
And what did your consent map show?
Just that one red.
Just theirs. Okay. All right. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Any other questions for Eric? All right. Thank you for your quick presentation. Much appreciated. Okay. Applicant or representative of the applicant? Good afternoon and welcome.
Hello. My name's Jason Duran with Pridecraft Custom Homes. Address is 10470 Clark Street, Clive 50325. And in regards to this, I purchased this property a couple months ago. It is two separate parcels that I purchased as one. The one on the north has an address, the one on the south with the yellow marking does not have an address. Initially, when I first talked to the permanent development before I bought this property, they showed me where the sewer was on there, and it is like 15 feet from the north lot line. So I was kind of under the impression that that's where the easement was, was a 15-foot easement. After I bought the property, I went back down there, talked to them some more details. They pulled out the old record, like from 1972 or whatever, and it turned out it was a 20-foot easement. So with that, my buildable structure shrank down significantly. So I wanted to try to build as nice of a house as possible on this lot here, but obviously there's width constraints. And the bigger width frontage I can build, the better house I can build. I did some research on lots from online sources. When I put in the width of like 25 feet, I got like five choices I could choose from. If I went to 27, it went to 49 choices. So my choices of what I can build on the lot increases tenfold, just if I can gain a couple extra feet, two and a half extra feet. So then with this, that's kind of where the proposed house would be. And like was already mentioned, there's a garage here, then another house here from the neighbors to the south. From house to house, we're talking probably at least 60 feet, maybe a little bit more roughly. If this, if this structure right here would be another house, I would not be here in front of you today because I would not want to build that close to another house. But since it was a garage, I felt that hopefully I can get this approved where I can get that extra two and a half feet to build a better house there. So that's what I'm asking for today. And I did, just, just to throw this out, out there, since I just recently purchased a lot, I have been keeping it up. I actually took this photo this morning, the yards mode, it's nice. So it does look a lot better than it did before and when I bought it. So that's pretty much what I got on mine, as far as why I'm asking for this exception.
Are you okay with the staff recommendations for provision for the garage and the driveway?
Well, the garage is a big one, to be honest with you.
But you didn't mention it until I asked.
Yeah, I wasn't quite prepared for that until I got here and started reading the notes and things like that. So the garage, if that is a make or break on this here, then I, I probably would have to scale it back down to like a 24-foot wide one-bedroom house. If, if the garage is a definite mandatory to get this exception.
Is your plan to own and rent these, or then to flip it and sell after you?
Yeah, I want to build it and sell it.
Okay, all right. And would you want to do the same thing on the lot to the north that you bought?
Yes, yeah.
Deal. Okay.
Were you planning to put a basement underneath it?
Uh, yes, the plans I've started looking at are kind of like a split foyer, where you walk in, you go down to a basement, and then you walk up half a flight of stairs. The sewer, I believe, is eight feet deep. So if I did a full basement, then I wouldn't have enough slope for a full basement to gravity feed it.
But if you did a split foyer, you'd have two levels of improved finished living area.
Right. And that's what I'm looking at doing is finishing, obviously, all of the upstairs and part of the downstairs level to make that livable, too, since it'll be four feet out of the ground and could easily have windows and everything like that.
And if you didn't do the garage, you'd still do the paving up to, let's say, the rear of the house as an end to your driveway?
Right. I believe the code is like 17 feet past the front of the house.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
Do you know if this is an NFC area?
What was that?
Do you know if this is a neighborhood financing area?
Um, I do not know if that is in a neighborhood finance area or not.
If we were inclined to let you not build the garage, as long as you had two levels of improved living and a paved driveway, would you be okay with putting a, like, storied shed of 120 square feet at the end of the driveway?
Um, yeah, that'd be a lot more feasible.
Okay. Because what I don't like to see is, yeah, we, we build a new house, we sell it to some nice people getting started, and then we've got lawnmowers and play equipment and my old grill, and suddenly we've got a yard full of stuff because we have no place to put it, because we're living everywhere in the house.
Right.
If you follow me there.
Yeah, I follow you there and.
Under 120 square feet, I don't think it has to have a foundation for a shed, so.
Yeah, I just got done building the house off of Southwest 9th, and we did not have a garage on that one.
Were you in front of us for that?
No, I didn't mean an exception or anything like that, so that one went smooth.
All right. Any other questions for Jason? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, we had opposition by card, but no one in person. Okay. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation.
I, I think this is a good idea. I'm okay with him skipping the garage, as long as he has the storied shed. With it being a split foyer, split entry home, it does lead to a lot of living space, which is probably very needed. Probably be one of the bigger homes in that area to start with than the rest of our bungalows, knowing that so many people are handy, or if they were to use NFC financing, could do a garage that way, especially if there's already paving up to it. So I, I'm inclined to approve it with the exception of the garage and making that a storied shed.
I'll second that. Friendly amendment that the storied shed will be a minimum of 100 square feet and no more than 120 unless it has a building permit. If he wants to make it bigger, he can turn it into a garage and get a building permit, so.
Yeah.
All right, is that clear enough for the records?
Clear.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of granting the recommended exception, subject to the conditions presented, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries seven zero. We're a very consistent board today. Don't count on it, everybody. Okay. I'll bring us to our next item, which I believe is item 11. And item 11 is a variance and exception request in the vicinity of 2833 East Acorn Street.
Item number 11 is a request to reconfigure two existing parcels. The subject property is located in the portion of Des Moines that is south of the Highway 5, Highway 69 bypass. The subject property is on the south side of Acorn Street. There, it is a paved street, or paved highway. It's, like I mentioned, it's two existing parcels. One has frontage along East Acorn Street, the other has no frontage at all. They're wanting to reconfigure it so it would be a flag lot. This next diagram shows that a little better. So they would have at least 20 feet of frontage then along East Acorn Street for this lot that would be here behind the existing lot. And that would allow them to build a new house on this parcel. They're wanting to have the house face to the east so that this existing lake would be in the, to the rear of the house. The proposal requires four appeals. That includes variance to the requirement that any lot in the A1 agricultural district have at least 10 acres of lot area in order to contain a single-family house, and then two appeals for the requirement that any lot for single-family use in the A1 district have at least 600 feet of lot width. And then they also need an exception to the design guideline that requires this house to appear to face a public street. So since they're wanting to face it to the east, that requires an exception. Here are a couple photos. This is looking down the driveway. The existing house is right here. That new house would be constructed generally in this area here. And again, it would have a 20-foot wide, 20, or at least 20 feet wide leg going down to, or up to Acorn Street. And then here's another photo, looking at it from the other angle. This is the corner of that house, that existing house. So that new house would be built generally up in that area. And then we did not get any consent cards or letters in support or opposition. Staff looked at this. The first appeal that they needed is a variance of the lot area. As you know, the test for granting a variance is pretty strict. You need to prove that there's no other use of the property without the variance. We didn't feel that they met that test. So we have recommended denial of that. And then without that variance to the lot area, really, the other appeals can't be considered anyway. So we have recommended denial of everything. I would mention, one of their remedies would be to rezone the property to a residential district. If it were zoned, say, R180, then they would need to have at least 80 feet of lot area, or lot width, and then 10,000 square feet of lot area. They wouldn't be held to that 10-acre requirement, but.
And the 10-acre requirement is because it's zoned agriculture?
It's zoned agricultural, right.
Was this, was this a property that was annexed in at some point?
Yeah, this area is down in that, in the 2009 involuntary annexation area. There were, that's when the city annexed several thousand acres in that area. So it was unincorporated Warren County before then.
Wouldn't that be kind of an undoing hardship there, up there?
No, because they're still allowed to maintain these residential uses along the Acorn Street.
It's typically when you annex something in, you wouldn't be in agricultural.
Well, when, when it's annexed in, it automatically comes in zoned agricultural, and then it's up to the property owners to seek a rezoning to a more appropriate district.
It's under our current code. If the new zoning code is approved, that will be different, but under the current code, as for today, Bert is correct.
That's what they're talking about. They've had workshops on that, right?
Yeah.
And Bert, if I follow along here, even if this wasn't A1, don't all parcels have to have a requirement to have, you know, direct access to a city street?
Right. You need at least 20 feet of frontage on an open public street.
So in this case, it looks like the existing house is willing to play ball to then, what, allow some kind of access easement, or?
They're both owned by the same people right now, and they're willing to sell this L-shaped parcel.
So then how does the existing house use its current driveway? Then they'd have an easement to come out on their driveway?
They would have to record an easement.
So usually, where we run into problems with this stuff, which isn't necessarily my worry at my own house, but then we have people, well, somebody doesn't take care of the driveway, and they're not clearing it, and they're not fixing it, and then we have people suing each other because they can't control or own their own access.
Right.
So in the future, if this, if we approve this and this proposed new house comes in, aren't we gonna kick the can down the road for all those other parcels? Then how do they get access now? And I know that's not in front of us, but if we approve this and they build how it is, then suddenly those other four or five parcels are screwed for access.
Right.
For lack of a better term.
Yeah. And I think that's, city staff's ultimate goal would be to have a street network built through this area.
Right.
And that's kind of why it's zoned A1 now, is to limit the amount of development that can occur.
Yes.
Before the right kind of development comes along.
And usually, in good old Warren County, where I lived for 20 years, most farm ground is not subdivided like this.
Right.
So when did the subdivision of the lots occur? Was that before annexation?
It was prior to being annexed, right.
Okay, well, that's the failure of Warren County to think ahead on things.
Right.
I'm in Polk County and in Des Moines, so I can tease them. Okay, well, that kind of helps me with some considerations here. But the other parcels are under, to the south and east, they're under common ownership. Is that correct? MEHE or whatever I see there?
You mean these here?
Yeah, are those under the same ownership as the subject parcel?
They're under a separate ownership.
They are. Okay.
Does that blue line denote a different zoning on the other side of it?
I, well, I think it's, it both says A1, so I'm sure one of the, one of the sides was, they were annexed at different times. So I'm guessing part of it was actually already a part of the city before the 2009 involuntary annexation, and then the other half came in as part of the involuntary annexation.
And do you know if the applicant has attempted to do a rezoning?
They have not attempted.
Okay, but they did talk with you about, we can ask them.
They, when they came in for the pre-application conference, Eric says they were presented with that idea.
Okay. Any other questions for Bert? All right. Thank you, sir. Applicant or representative of the applicant, you're up for bid.
Fred Robinett, owner of the subject property. I moved out there when it was Ferrari Heights, my little Ferrari, platted it. All is like two and a half acres. And I've owned it for basically 20 years. And I was gonna sell off this lot here. I don't know what this blue line is, but they were not part of the city prior to.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
The city took us all in, and we protested it at the time because we knew what was gonna happen. I mean, they jacked all of our property up, about $2,500 a year in taxes from the get-go, which I think we've all assumed it, but he said you hadn't had any, this property right here, which borders it. I know he sent a card in that he was well in favor of this being developed with another single-family home there. I had Brian from the city, Des Moines Water, come out, and he says, as long as we have that access to the lot, he was for it. And that was the only thing I could see. My neighbors to the east right here, which is in front of me, we already do a shared driveway.
Okay.
And it's been that way since I moved in. In fact, as we had a driveway agreement, rolled up from years back. I think it'd be a great addition to this neighborhood. I know to the, the ones to the north side of Acorn, it was Al Wicker, and he was, but he died 10 years ago, but he was plating that all off as two-acre lots. So it's very consistent with everyone's home here on this street. There's only like a total of seven homes, but they're all on two and a half acres. I don't think anyone's on this side of the street is less than two and a half. This one here might be three acres.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Next to my drive, but I'm looking to get this approved. We didn't anticipate any problems when I listed with Iowa Realty. It's a 10-acre lake, or 12-acre lake, and this is the best building lot on the whole lake, which this gentleman is the one proposing to buy it and build a home for himself there. He's a developer. I didn't realize he had these good pictures of it. That's what it looks like. This is a, the corner of a Butler Building of that neighbor that was right there. This is a, the corner of a Butler Building of that neighbor that was right there. But, um, all, all the homes on it are either lake or, or, or brick or siding. That's the majority is brick, huh? You have any questions for me?
Questions for Fred?
What is the land being used for now?
Pardon?
What is the current use of the land?
Uh, yard.
What are you using the land for now? Because one of the things for the variance is you cannot...
I just mow it for my yard.
Okay, so you're not raising crops on it or anything?
No, I thought when I moved out there, I'd maybe get some sheep or something to keep it down, but I didn't.
Okay.
But that's when it was Warren County. And, um...
Fred, another question for you. Do you own any of the other parcels around the lake there, to the south of you further?
No.
Beyond this one?
No.
Okay, so if we would allow this, and you have a private agreement with this nice guy, and he uses your driveway vice versa, then how can those other lots to the south get developed further?
Well, that other, um, I don't know if you have a map or something, but...
Yeah, maybe staff can help you put that back out there again that shows the... Is there other access to other public roads, south or east of there?
No, the, the farmer, which is, um, it's like that Goodview, they, they just come through right on, you know, the front of our place and right into the fields.
So would you be able to allow covenants or access in the future so that four, five, six, seven lots could get developed, and they'd all pass through your property to get there?
Well, yeah, but, um, I don't, I don't know if it's listed, but Kevin Hinter, and I think two or three other individuals bought like that four hundred acres. And I think eventually they plan to develop it, but if they did, they would have to put streets in back there.
That I'm getting at, yeah. And they'd have to come in from somewhere else more than likely then.
There are several ways in, because they all clear down to the entrance of, see, our street used to be called Adams Street.
Yep, that's how I knew it, yeah.
So my question is, is where does the city limits end where it's unincorporated?
Still south of there a little bit, right? Yeah, yeah.
Quarter mile?
Yeah, the Spencer Properties.
They, I think the city annex down the North River, I'm not sure.
Almost down there, yeah. Yeah, I might suggest to staff, when we've got stuff that's kind of rural, that maybe a little bigger picture sometimes could help us get the lay of the land. I know that's few and far between, but I think for a number of folks, we're trying to visualize how this all sits. This isn't like Hubble and East Grand where we kind of all know it. Okay, any other questions for Fred? Okay. All right, we'll check back with you in a few minutes.
Were you aware of the, uh, comments on the cards that was sent in?
Well, first of all, yeah, the card has to be received timely for staff to have it to bring it to us. So I don't believe...
He sent it timely, and I didn't keep it on my phone. He sent me, but he was all for it.
Well, it's kind of nice to know you've mentioned that in his, his favor, so, okay. All right. Bert's gonna help us out here where this actually sits.
Yeah, so here, this is the city's land use plan map. So here's the Highway sixty-five that heads down to Indianola.
Yep.
And Acorn Street is right here, and you can see this blue is the lake.
Oh.
So in order to get to Acorn Street, you, the road curves and goes along Highway sixty-five to here.
Got it, yep.
So you can see, the city's long use, or long-range plan for this area is single-family residential. So if a rezoning request came in for an R district, it would have an easy
Right.
time getting approved because it's our long-range plan.
And there is a north-south street directly to the east of the lake there, correct?
No.
Or is that just the?
No, that's just the quarter section, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and Acorn Street, I believe, you get about here to the city limits, and then it turns to a dirt road.
Okay.
I think the pavement ends right about here.
Got you.
But you're right, if, um, if the subject property's right here, and these are quarter sections, it is a quarter mile south to
City Limits.
And then the city has to go a little bit further south to the Spencer project, Spencer Farm, along the North River here.
So where's the new Menards going? Don't answer that. I do have one quick...
I keep hearing a rumor.
On sixty-five, the city calls it Southeast Twenty-Six. But they turn on that, and then they come right up around into Acorn. It turns into Acorn Street. You're actually coming off of Southeast Twenty-Six.
Okay.
But for that, all this agricultural land that comes up even around us that those people own, they've got access down there because they go in and plant all that there, too, those crops.
All right, I actually do have a quick question, hopefully quick. Sir, if, if you could step back up to the mic so people can hear you when you answer. So they've mentioned, staff has mentioned a couple of times, it would be, another option you have is to request rezoning, so it's residential. And so one of the, one of the requests at least would be implicated by that because you wouldn't have to have the variance for the size of the lot. And the variance request, or any sort of variance request is, is pretty difficult because you have to hit this threshold that's very high, which is why the staff is recommending we deny it. But is that a course of action you considered? And if so, like rezoning request? And if so, why didn't you take that?
I'm sorry, I don't even know what that means.
Okay.
Too old, I guess.
All right. Thanks.
So you could go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request to rezone the property to residential from agriculture, and then you wouldn't need to ask for a variance if they would approve it there? Is that what you're...
Yep.
With a different board than what we are?
Oh, it's not you guys.
We, you're asking for a variance, which, which he's saying it's hard to pass a variance test based on what, what you have to have a hardship and a couple other items to, to pass a variance. Instead of being able to rezone it through the Planning and Zoning Commission to residential, then you wouldn't have to come before our board.
Let's see, the reason we have to come here is we're Des Moines annexes, and we're part of Des Moines now.
Yep, but you could have gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission, just rezoned it, because then the smaller lot that he'd like to build on would be potentially allowable for what he wants to do. Right, right now it's considered A1 agricultural, and you have to have a minimum ten acre lot to build on.
Yeah, but it conforms with all the rest of the homes in the area as far as...
But those were all built under Warren County's advisement, good, bad, or indifferent. So in the city of Des Moines now, this is still considered agricultural. So development is not allowed if it's less than ten acres for residential, unless you do one of two things, just get it rezoned to residential, which is probably the long-term idea, or you have to come in front of us. But again, that's like a pretty high bar to get over. This variance test would mean there's no other use of the property. There's, there's no other way to get value out of this place, so I gotta have a variance. So we're, we're kind of getting into the sophomore-level course of, of our legal obligations here. But I don't know what it costs to get in front of Planning and Zoning Commission, but you could have paid the fee to get it rezoned, and then maybe not have to come to us at all.
But how do I do that?
Well, there's...
I would suggest that you work, is there a city staff person that you've been working with?
Is there what?
Is there a city staff person that you had consulted with? I think you mentioned...
Brian from Des Moines Water Works.
Well, Des Moines Water Works is just about getting water lines in. They don't have any authority over zoning.
Maybe if Bert or Eric could give you one of their cards, and you can contact them, and they can walk you through that process, if that's something that you're interested in, obviously after this hearing is closed and you know what the result is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've, we, we have a limited kind of box on how we are allowed to legally make our decisions, and we try our best to help all sides of the case to get to where everybody'd like to go. But that's just, as Nathan mentioned, there's some real tight constraints on how we can make that decision where it can be legally supported.
I was working with Kathy Davis with Isle Realty. Could she do that?
She's just a Realtor. She's not the city zoning enforcement folks, yeah. This isn't anything we'd want to defer and give them time, is there? I don't like to do that, but, no, okay.
I would, there are going, there's going to be, um, I would not defer it for various reasons that I can explain after this.
All right.
Should we take a vote before we...
Hold on a second.
So, so to give you a little background.
Yeah.
This was being driven by the purchaser.
Right.
They attended a pre-app. They were, that was, those processes were explained. Now, I think their motivation for doing it this way was a time interest.
Yeah, I got you.
Because if they rezone it, they're still coming in front of the board following getting rezoning, so...
Okay.
Because they won't have the lot width necessary, even under R-180, at the setback that they would need. So they're, now it wouldn't be a variance.
Okay.
So I think that they were taking the shortest path.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, they were taking the shortest path.
Yeah, Fred was describing things well, and he's the current owner, so I think maybe we just assumed he was leading the charge here, but...
Yeah.
So somebody sat down and talked with staff about what the applicant thought was their best route.
In terms of the Water Works, uh, they have separate regulations. Unless they had frontage on the street with the property, Water Works would not let them run a service. So they restructured their appeal
Right.
to include that, uh, dividing the parcel up, so...
Yeah, okay, I've got you. Okay, anybody else to speak in support? This sounds like it's your project more than Fred's, but you've got five minutes. Fred got ten. We just need your name and current address.
iPad will show up on there or not.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Andrew Long. I'm with Crown Homes. Uh, my address is twelve sixty-five Law Murphy Drive in Carlisle, Iowa. Uh, I'm also a licensed Realtor and a builder, so, uh, this property was listed for sale. Obviously, it's a nice property, two and a half acres, backs to a pond. If you could build a house on it, it'd be a great property. It'd probably be over four hundred thousand dollar home, so. Uh, as you can see on this, uh, map here, obviously it doesn't meet the zoning regulations, which is why we applied for a variance. I'm no expert in zoning variances. You know, I went through the pre-app meeting. There were certain things that were brought up. We did what we knew best to, um, you know, apply for variances to look at it, you know. When I look at this property, obviously it was platted before Des Moines inherited it or took it over or whatever. And the other lots out there don't conform to the zoning either. To me, that doesn't make a ton of sense, but I'm not the person who, who did that or make those decisions, and maybe you guys weren't either, so. But, uh, if you look at, through this, you can kind of see all these lots that are parceled off right through here. And so this line right here, if this were to be developed, down the road would be where the street would go.
I get it.
So you've come off of East Acorn, you come in on that access drive that was shown on one of these other photos. And one of the things that we talked about during the pre-app meeting was, um, you know, the city was concerned that because they have run sewer and water down into the, at least, I think the sewer is somewhere down in this area. And then water is actually all the way up to the top of the road, which is only about four hundred feet from the lot that's being proposed for sale that we're talking about here. So you can actually get city water to that house with that flag lot. So we'd be changing the two parcels to meet that requirement. And then as far as not having enough frontage, obviously there's a variance there. The, the actual home that would be, would go on there would meet the current setbacks as far as the side yards and the front yards and all of that, so that wouldn't necessarily be an issue. Uh, and then the city, you know, the staff's concern was that, you know, hey, with our investment here, how do we protect the future development of that, which is a very good, I can completely understand that aspect of it. So I would just assume that if this variance was approved, that the house would still be far enough back so that when a current road goes in, in this section, they could, uh, be conforming to the, the development once that gets developed.
That was my concern.
And then, of course, it would be on septic, but once the sewer was run through there, you know, you guys could always, you know, make it so that the homeowner, you know, hooks up to the sewer at that time and, you know, abandons the, the septic and already be on city water, which, you know, in my mind as a builder, that's not, there's, there's some struggles there. I'm sure you guys have had people argue about that down the road. Maybe that's something you don't want to get into. But I feel like if we did it with the flag lot, you know, the person who owns the rest of these lots down here is called South Community Developers. I don't know who owns that, but they own all of that. So if they were to develop it in the near future, um, you know, like they said, they could bring in sewer and water pretty easily because it's close by from a cost perspective. And, uh, but, uh, putting that flag lot in there, you know, your, your question earlier was, hey, what happens if the rest of these houses get developed, you know? It was my impression that, you know, the developer would maybe come back and then buy the portion of the lot from those, what would be me at the time if I owned it, at least a part of that.
What if you didn't want to sell it?
Well, I mean, I, I guess if it were me, I'd, it'd seem like there'd be some form of a stipulation that the city would probably put in to say, hey, when this gets developed, you need to conform to...
Which would then have to be us right here.
Sure, so, uh, you know, for me, I guess I would be open to, uh, conforming to that. But, you know, the developer would buy that out, put the street in so that everybody has the, the, you know, a normal street access off of East Acorn. And I'm assuming that street would carry down off of East Acorn and would wrap all the way around and connect up to this other part of East Acorn, which is actually closer to the entrance over here off of, I think, whether it was East Twenty-Six or, I don't remember the name of the street that comes in off of Highway sixty-five, sixty-nine that gets you access to that area. So that was kind of the, the thought behind it, uh, kind of what we talked about in the, the pre-staff meeting. They advised, hey, if you can do the flag lot, you'll suffice, you'll suffice the city of, or the Des Moines Water Works regulation of having at least twenty feet of frontage. But then you also have three or four, or there's four variance requests because it doesn't meet A1 zoning and some of the other lot frontages and that type of stuff. So that's pretty much the information as far as why, why didn't we seek a zoning, rezoning thing? I don't own the property. I didn't even know that was an option. Eric said he brought that up in the meeting. I must have just missed that. I guess that would be a totally different thing for, you know, Fred and maybe the other neighbors in the area to, to consider doing that, uh, for the, you know, for the sale of one lot. So it just wasn't considered, I guess, it, I guess, lack of understanding. So that's pretty much all I got, if you have any questions.
Anything for Andrew? Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Yep, appreciate your time.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff from the board?
I have a quick one. So the staff recommendation in here states that if we deny the variance, the requested exceptions are moot. Is that really how it's gonna work, or...
Well, without the variance, you can't have the two lots in their current...
But can we just ignore the exception requests? Because they are separate requests.
Yeah.
I, I guess what I, I want to try to avoid is, I don't know that any of us have spent a whole lot of time on the lot, lot, lot size, uh, aspects of this. And so if we deny their variance but ignore all the exceptions, I just want them to retain all their rights to come back for exception requests in the future.
Yeah.
So I don't want to...
Yeah, 'cause he couldn't come back for two years if we deny it, right?
Well, they would have a different zoning with different standards.
Well, for the first two, but for the third one, wouldn't it still be the front door, the dwelling? That would still be the same, right? So that would be the one I would be concerned about.
And then the exception to have a flag lot...
Would come into play. Yeah, so is there a way, so it states in here that it would be, all the exception requests would be moot. But are they actually moot, or are we gonna have to address them today if we deny the variance?
Well, I think two things could happen. You could vote on the variance and then ask the applicant if he wants to withdraw his request for the exceptions.
Okay.
So that's one option. So we would split, split the vote, right? You'd vote, have one motion regarding the variance, and then make that ask, and then have a second motion. Um, that's an option.
Because that would preserve his rights to come back later on the exception.
A second thing, I apologize, I didn't hear the beginning of your question, but I...
Mel was talking to you, it's, it's really his fault.
So, um, i-if your question was, what happens after they've already rezoned? The board would have the ability to reconsider or to determine if that was a change in circumstances such that they can ask for relief within the two years.
Oh, like we're doing, yeah, there's one coming up, yeah.
There's one coming up on our agenda that has a reconsideration piece to it. So, so there are really two options that I would see.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Andrew, I'm not saying which way this is gonna go, but you kind of understand at least one scenario that's being discussed here.
Just one last question, that the front door thing would be formed and new development.
Okay, so just to... Just to summarize what you said, since it was not on the record, the front door would con... On the record, the front door would conform to. So, the relief for the front door would conform to the new road, potential road that you discussed. Thank you.
Okay. So, okay.
Okay.
You good? All right, then we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation.
I think this needs to go in front of planning and zoning, especially with all the lots to be developed with the street and all the questions there.
Yeah.
I mean.
I have a concern we'd have to put too many easements or conditions on one, two, and even a third property, which we don't know what's going to happen. And I don't think the board should be putting conditions on multiple ownership properties on how they all have to work together. The property in question needs to work within the ordinance.
I think we're just premature because we don't know what's, is going to affect other lots, and so I'm, I'm going to move staff recommendation that we deny the variance.
Any other thoughts before a second?
So, just to clarify, you're, you're moving just the variance.
Yes.
Just to address the variance, and then.
As far as I know, if we deny the variance, then the other items are put on the back burner because.
Well.
I don't know.
You, you can make it very clear that you're just, your motion is to just deny the variance appeal as one part, and then we could ask if he just wants to withdraw the exception request for now.
Right, he will need to come up to the podium to answer that question, but yes.
So, what I'm moving right now is we just deny the variance.
Cut.
Appeal and not addressing the exceptions.
A second.
A second.
So, we got a motion, a second, just to deny the variance. If everybody understands that, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Okay, I think that's unanimous. Okay, all right, so, but in our discussion, and why don't you come back up, Fred and/or Andrew, or you guys are good buddies. You can both stand up there if you want. Um, based on what we're doing to preserve your rights to come back to us for some exceptions, assuming you've sought a rezoning on the property, if you want to make a motion or ask us, or if you'd like to withdraw your exception request for now, that'd preserve your rights to come back with the exception later on after you go through a rezoning review. Because if you don't, we just vote your exception down, then for the next two years, you can't come back in front of us. So, you could maybe get the zoning thing figured out and then ask us for some of these exceptions later. Do I have that pretty clear?
Yes.
So, if I understand correctly, is if you were to deny those, we don't withdraw those variances that you denied, then you got to wait two years?
Yes.
The better route is to try the rezoning first, then come back, and you'd have to, you still have to get a variance for the frontage, it sounds like, because you're going to have to have 80 feet in that new zoning or an exception or whatever you.
And like the front door.
Yeah, because if you withdraw today, then we don't have a decision to make. But if we make a decision and deny the exception potentially, then you're kind of stuck for two years and can't bring it back.
Yeah.
Unless you can prove a change in circumstances, but that's a fairly high, high burden.
It sounds like that's almost impossible.
Yeah.
How you would prove that, so, at least for me, because that's not my property.
Yeah, yeah.
Fred would have a different.
We'd like to see all of you be able to develop not, not only what Fred wants to sell to you and you as a builder, we'd like to see all of this get done someday.
That'd be great.
Yeah, but unfortunately.
I would think that probably it would be in the best interest to just, uh, withdraw then. That'd be my opinion, Fred.
All right.
That's fine.
If you have the opportunity to seek something else.
All right, so Fred, just, just for the record, are you, can you state that you want to withdraw your exception request if that's my understanding of what you want to do?
I'll withdraw the request for now.
Okay, for the exception.
Please make sure to get a card from either Erica Burt so that you or your realtor can talk through the options with them.
We want to have you all sit down with staff, okay? Okay, so the applicant has said they want to withdraw the exception request. Uh, do we need to vote on that, or that's just for the record? Okay. All right, guys, I'm sorry we couldn't help you out completely, but we, we might be able to do this the right way for everybody down the line. Okay, so that will bring us to item 12, a variance and exception at 2211 Grand Avenue.
Mr. Chair members of the board, uh, this item is on Grand Avenue, uh, just west of the downtown area. This is the Terrace Hill property here, just to give you some reference. Apartments to the west, uh, former mansion to the east. Ingersoll, uh, fronting properties to the rear. This property sits at the top of the hill and the topography slopes down towards Ingersoll, um, toward their parking. What you can't see very well here because of the gold border is there's a, there's a driveway that runs down the west property line, shared with the property to the west, which I believe is the one that submitted the, the communication that you, I passed out. This is a building that's been offices in, uh, the past and has had kind of an ongoing, non-conforming, uh, situation with angled parking that comes in, cuts over public sidewalk, and accesses angled, angled parking right now that doesn't have any real actual maneuvering, any maneuvering. It does occur. Uh, when they use that parking is on top of sidewalk, which isn't typically of a thickness to support the weight of vehicles driving over it, except when it's in, in the areas of the approaches such as this. Uh, so you can see why we don't generally allow that type of condition, but it's been an existing condition. What's driving this is they're wanting to redo the occupancy of a good portion of the building, um, in the lower level, which accesses off the back side. Quickly, I'll show you this photo, which shows that driveway that's shared with the apartments to the west going back. This is across the front looking east down Grand Avenue towards the center of downtown. This is looking along the east side of the building to the north at the back parking lot. And then this is looking from the back of the property up towards Grand, so you can see how the lower level has a separate access. And the parking is generally level as you get back behind the building. The parking actually has an odd, uh, layout as well, which is being, causing a number of the pieces of relief that you have here as well. So, you have kind of a circulation of parking that comes in through there. You have some tandem type, uh, where you have three cars get parked in here. They probably are the employees that are there all day so that customers can use these. You've got some that come angle off the alley, head in off the alley, or the shared driveway, I should say. And then some that actually encroach onto another property owners, property to the north as well. So, there's kind of, it's one of those, for, over the years, they've pretty much claimed every square inch that they can possibly park in that area that fits between Ingersoll and Grand Avenue, so it's not an unusual condition. It's just now we're creating a improvement to this property that's driving site compliance, so.
Where is the improvement that they're, that's driving this?
They're, they're building out a lower level for a new occupant tenant, so I'll let them get into the detail of that, but.
Sure, that's fine.
So, that's kicking in our site plan review and then, um, so triggering all of the relief that you see on, uh, on page, uh, 35, starting on 36. Variance of five feet, less than the minimum five feet of paving setback, which is along this property here, so even.
Zoom in on that a little bit.
Yeah.
Is the primary thing for us to look at today, the whole lot or just the frontage?
Well, we're recommending denial of the variance on the front side.
Right.
Because it's, it's.
So, that's our main focus here.
It's really creating a, a tough, uh, situation. Even if you grant the relief, it's still not a very desirable, uh, maneuvering condition. Uh, I think they're looking to try to at least get one space that you can cut through here, head in, and then be able to leave out this driveway and again, attempt, you know, to restore this area between driveways. But the pavement to get to this space is still going to be right up against that property line, which is where the north edge of the sidewalk is, so.
So, what green space do we really have? I.
You'd only gain some in the right of way in this situation.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
They wouldn't really get any on the.
Okay.
In front of the building. Again, when they, they're recently acquiring the property, I think in the last few years, so, you know, this is an inherited condition, but they're, it, the, the trigger came to a head.
Right.
And the project that they're wanting to do, so.
Okay.
In front of you now. From that, from the staff perspective, you know, we're, we understand this, you can't take away all the parking from this problem, property by not allowing any relief to preserve parking in the rear that's occurred. And again, I think they've pretty much maxed it out, what can actually function there, um, given what, what they have. But what's in front is a condition that we just really, um, don't believe is, should continue. Uh, I know that is, you have kind of a situation where you have businesses upstairs that come off of the Grand side and businesses downstairs that come in off the lower level, but, um, it's just kind of a bad situation. Now, we've had some communication from our traffic that says it's conceivable that they could get some inset parking along Grand. Right now, Grand is four tight lanes, two in each direction. There's some notion that that would go to a three lane over time like you see on Ingersoll possibly. Uh, but also they could consider doing some inset parking. It would not be their own parking, private parking, but it would be there in the front of the building for somebody to, could park and access the, the upper level.
Does inset mean parallel parking to the street? But it's just like a little curb cut.
Yeah, it would be on-street parking. They would have to.
It's like a pit row thing, often.
Yeah, it would be a bump in.
A bump in.
Yeah.
I got it.
So, that would eliminate that green space. Now, that would allow them to gain green space in front of their building, uh, by removing that paving on their side.
Right.
Uh, that might trigger the need to reconfigure these driveways as well so that they're only as wide as necessary to get to that.
But they, they would have to work through traffic. There's no guarantees on that. That's just a.
Yep.
Possibility that is, that was brought to us with traffic. I think, um, I don't know how many discussions they've had with them since our pre-application meeting, but that, you know, traffic raised a number of concerns about this condition even in the pre-application meeting, so. They were, they were willing to work to get a solution somehow that gets them something in, in that upper level. So, I think even though staff's recommending denial of that variance, they're, that doesn't, that doesn't get them out of, that doesn't keep them out of every potential solution that would at least give them some ability to have a parking space. It may not be an accessible space.
We got it, yeah.
And I don't think, uh, are building codes requiring an accessible space on that. It's based on the total number of parking spaces. They would have to stripe something in the lower area. Um, it would still benefit anybody accessing the lower portion of the building.
And by the size of the building, they have plenty of parking spaces. They're not asking for an exception from the requirement?
Uh, deficient of the number they need for the use of this, of the building. If they went to like a restaurant or something, then they'd probably have to get some relief of parking. Right now, I think everything's office or medical.
But what, I guess what I'm getting at is they're voluntarily trying to cram in extra.
Yeah, I think this probably.
More than the city requires.
Yeah, this probably reflects what was always going on there from their perspective.
Right.
When they bought it, but.
Sure.
But we're not, yeah, we're not saying that we're taking away something by denying a variance here from a, a requirement perspective. Exceptions of less than a minimum nine foot width, so we have some of the spaces there that are less than nine foot width. Uh, some that are less than the 17, two feet less than the 17 feet of depth. Uh, 12 feet less than the minimum, 24 feet of maneuvering space for 90-degree, uh, parking, and then nine feet less than the minimum, 20 feet of width for the driveway of two-way circulation, so, which.
Which is the one on the right?
Yeah, the by its nature, that has to be two-way circulation. The maneuvering issue is over in this for those head-in stalls off that narrower drive over there.
So, staff's generally okay with the exceptions on the side and back for width and size or whatever?
There's all kinds of practical difficulty with this property, so.
It's that front end using the sidewalk to maneuver.
Yeah, I think that's just a.
And paving, paving, paving.
Continue to allow that, it's, it works against the character and the, and actually is probably, works against traffic.
Sure. Got you.
Uh, from that standpoint, I know, I know that they badly would like to have that, but we're recommending denial.
Okay. All right. What'd you have for a map, radius map again?
Uh, just the light yellow, which is, again, they didn't indicate, the neighbor didn't.
It was just.
Indicate there was some verbiage that.
Yeah.
I said they had no problem, but, uh, and I think they've been in cooperation with this property owner and the previous property owner over time. But we marked it yellow because they didn't.
Got it.
Give an indication on that one way or the other, so.
Okay. Anything else for Eric? Okay, thank you. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant? Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Causey. This is my partner and co-member of YNC Global LLC. Address is 2211 Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa 50312. YNC Global may have a international sounding name, but this is it. Okay, we're just a small business. Uh, we're attorneys by trade. This is by far our largest investment. Wish I would have met y'all before I ever bought it because to say that it has a bunch of variables is an understatement.
Yeah.
I bought it in 2017. It is roughly 10,000 square feet. When we got inside, boilers from the 20s, I believe, HVAC, things of that nature, electrical from the 50s and 60s, asbestos everywhere. We, we bought it, I believe, at $495. We've put roughly $500,000 into it, so I want y'all to not maybe take it as a, uh, me, me trying to tear at your heartstrings, but think about it this way. We took a building that was falling apart, and we've done a lot to make it into a viable office space for not only our law firm, but for several other businesses, law firms. Uh, we have, I think, five tenants at this point. One of them is a, a therapist. Two other ones are lawyers. Uh, we have, uh, the lower level, which he's correct, which is what triggered all this. Again, in my line of work, you can never play ignorant. The judge doesn't care, but I'll play ignorant. I didn't know anything about a 50% taxable value that would, uh, trigger a site plan. We thought the city wanted to talk to us about electrical stuff.
Right.
And so, if you noticed from these pictures, because some of the languages, language in the staff notes, and I only got, I read those today, seemed to, to sound as if, and it doesn't sound like Eric was saying that, but it, as if there is actual, that this is all one level of some kind. Um, these two access points here, this one is a tenant who rents that entire, uh, it's like a bay that was empty. Um, he does physical training or fitness training, that type of thing. This door right here goes into a very small space. This is where you go in. If you go in this door, there's one room here. These are bathrooms. This is a utility room. This is an undeveloped old kitchen, and it goes directly upstairs. There is no elevator. The cost of an elevator, I can't imagine, is astronomical. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. I doubt this structure would support that. Half the building over. Half the building over here was built in the twenties. When we did the renovation in the middle part, it came out a big mural on the outside of a brick building, so that's cool, but at the same time, I don't think the structure is there to introduce a, an elevator in the back. So at this point, if you were to eliminate my parking up front, which it sounds like that is what is being recommended, I have no access to not only So if you imagine, this looks like it's a brand-new picture.
Mm-hmm.
So obviously, not having all this knowledge when we bought the property, when we renovated it, this is my front entrance to my law firm. We have installed a large secretarial area. The signs are all there. This is the front of our building. All the built offices that go down the hallway behind that are all structured so that they're facing the street, which would be the normal way somebody would renovate a building. All of this middle area, a lot of it is a large conference room, but down here is another hallway that we've built several other offices that are now rented by tenants. And as you can imagine, their, their customers come in through this. Now, I understand what the complaint is, is that they have to back out over the sidewalk, but what I'm here today to try to implore you is that when we talk about criteria for the board to consider, if I have an unnecessary hardship, I would say it would be an apocalyptic hardship if you eliminate all of my, my parking up front, because we are in the business of serving customers. If they are forced to all park in the vast parking lot that we have in the back, I'm not sure how they're going to get to their, the businesses that they're trying to
Okay.
Yes.
Without interrupting you, since you showed us the floor plan of that lower level, it did show a staircase and vestibule, right?
Yes.
But that just goes up to where then?
It goes up to basically the back end where one of my new associate attorneys is standing. There's a bathroom there. And then you go down the hallway that would have gone
Frontage.
to the front of the secretary. So basically, they would be sort of wandering through a maze of a building before they ever got to some sort of, you know, secretarial area.
Right. I kind of understand that, but in essence, your main level here does have access through that back hallway and stairs to that lower east door that goes out to the surface parking.
Currently, but that would also eliminate any chance I have of renting this lower area right here. That's these windows right here.
Okay.
There's actually a room.
Because it'd be a common space then.
This room right here
Yep.
is actually an open space with two separate offices. If we have to use this simply because people are going to be entering the thing, then you're basically putting another.
Well, and I don't want to drag this out, but if this is your bottom level, I walk in the door into the vestibule, and then why can't I get to the stairs? To go up?
You can get to the stairs, correct.
Which would take me up to two, and then I'm not messing around with this lower level here.
Correct. You can get to the, you go down the hallway and you can get to these stairs when you first walk in.
Right.
Okay. Again, this other side, though, however, you can't just enter in here because this is a tenant. They can't just go and use these stairs to get up to some other area that's above this.
Okay, yeah. I guess I'd like to see your second floor elevation then. Do you have that?
No, I don't have that out.
Okay, see, that's the important floor. That's what we're, we're talking about, too.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, the letter we got.
I can show you if, if for demonstrative purposes, your honor, I can.
You don't call me that. Trust me. But thank you, Jonathan. You're very kind. I get called a lot worse.
Yeah, sorry, that's a habit. But I would say that this, these are, these are issues we inherited. I mean, it, it's been like that for God knows how long.
Right.
So I don't know what we can do. Obviously, the, the recommendation is to deny it.
Right.
We're trying to comply with ADA, honestly, which I know this is not necessarily the ADA board. We do need to have some parking up front. I have contacted, I can't ever say his name, Steve. Yeah, Biancetta.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's right either. Maybe it's right, but. I talked to him this morning briefly through email. This space here, I've heard of this green area complaint, so this is more mud area. It has actual asphalt that's grown underneath it. And I know that you guys wanted us to eliminate, eliminate and more green space here, because y'all think of this as being a very wide exit entrance right here. And so if we were to cut that out and make it so that we had on-seat, on-street parking, which would be the same equivalent as our neighbors, hold on, roll one. As our neighbors, the Iowa Public Radio, they have almost the identical situation that we have.
Yep.
And so they were allowed to cut in, and then they created their green area here.
Right.
It would almost be a mirror image, because our entrance would remain this far-left door, and we could build out a retaining wall with some green area here, and then we would have two or three spaces right here on the street. I, I haven't measured it, but I mean, it's at least two. It's fairly large.
There's still a sidewalk to keep in mind, so people can walk through there, right?
Well, the same thing is true with the
Yeah, how serious is that?
Public Works. We walked it this morning. It's all level. It's the exact same
Ah, okay.
shot. It doesn't vary. They didn't move the sidewalk.
Okay.
In fact, I'm the one who rebuilt the sidewalk out there in front of our building. It was falling apart, so. Anyway, the point is, is that I think total elimination of all my parking is going to have an astronomical detriment to my business. I mean, I can't, I can't add into my tenants. Nobody's going to ever want to rent from me, because they don't have any street parking. No one will ever want to buy the building, because unless it's one company that had, like a tech company or something, that has no employee or customers, then they're not gonna, they're always going to worry about the front, the street parking. So if you look at it from the idea that I inherited this problem, that we inherited this problem, and that it's impossible for safety reasons as well, and Eric touched on this as well, that that right there is the entrance. This right here is the exit, and the people from, you know, the apartment that zip around here, I mean, if I have people walking up here, even on a sunny day in the summer, we're going to have some issues. I'm going to get sued. In the winter, that slope is, is, is steeper than probably what it even appears to be on that picture. We can't have people walking up there. Obviously, it's an ADA.
But you make your employees park in the back, though, right?
Yeah, and they walk in, right. They walk in that door. I don't worry about them getting lost in the maze of stairs.
Right. So your point about the
Oh, my partner was making a point that obviously, being attorneys, our security is paramount, and so having a bunch of random customers walking in through our back door, we don't have anybody watching our records, is also a problem.
Right. Unless you did a lot of reconfiguration of
A lot of reconfiguration, yeah, and, and you're talking hundreds of thousands or more. I mean, we're talking, geez, this is my wife. We have, we have a five-month-old baby. What, some of these ideas are great in a vacuum, but you're talking bankruptcy level here. If you get, if you made me go spend another $500,000, it's done. Not, not doing it.
So how do we dress up the front end? Because right now, you got mud and a bunch of concrete and some new concrete on your little porch thing. How, how, how could you kind of help to at least buffer that a little bit with maybe some planting beds up on the thing or dressing it up? Because it's just, we got concrete and mud.
Right, so this site plan is based more on the conversations I had at the pre-app meeting.
Okay.
Which indicated to me that indenting the street was, I don't, either I, they were thinking I was priced out, or I was, it wasn't going to happen, but this, this here, which is this concrete.
Yep.
So this was a retaining wall, again, that I inherited that was falling apart. So all we did was seal it in. And then we're going to make this a porch and have a railing across it, so that our tenants can sit out here.
Sure.
But let's say that we go where y'all are talking. If we had an indention here, and it went as far as what would have been the complaint about green space, and now it is parking, we could then fill in all of this up until our door with a retaining wall and a raised sort of bed of grass or flowers or whatever. I like gardening, so flowers would be my preference, but and I guarantee you, it'd look so much green space to make a headspace.
I'm, I'm a little confused. Are you okay with an inset parking at the front? And are, I mean, that, that would still be us denying the variance, and then you'd have to put green space in up there as required by city code right now, and then there'd be, I don't even know the process. But there'd be some sort of separate action for getting that inset upfront, like IPR has. But are you okay with that, or that's what you don't want?
What I would say is, is
Obviously, you prefer this.
I prefer the thing that would cost me less money and that I could get done, and that's, I think, why we wrote this site plan that way. But any good attorney argues in the alternative. So if the alternative is, you're going to deny it, and I got to go to Plan B, I would rather have that inset, because I think it solves problems.
Yeah.
One, we get more than one spot. Where, where you look exactly like the Iowa Public Radio down there, so therefore, I can't imagine why it would be, I don't even think it's y'all's department. I think it's like a three-way contract with the city or something like that. But then we could also add the green space in order to satisfy you good folks.
So I'm not sure if you've seen a letter, but, but your neighbor, Mr. Coppola, who I think owns the Building to the West.
Yes, I know Mr. Coppola. I haven't seen the letter, though.
He, he basically says he's not opposed to your variances to get what you want, as long as you don't use his drive for your maneuvering area. Which if people come in at an angle, my tendency would be, I'm going to back out, and then I'm going to flare it. I'm going to go through his quote driveway.
Where are you speaking of?
On the far west end, past the white car. It sounds like he's got a concern that you're using some of his property once people kind of back out and then cut left and go out the west end.
I certainly, when I heard from my, I think an email maybe from my engineer said something about that that was the property that had opposition to it, I, I told my wife, that's got to be it, because this right now, when we had that first pre-app meeting, they kept talking about these things as if they were sort of one-way. It is a one-way street, but this is also an entrance, and the same would be true over here, that this is technically an outlet for us, but it's an entrance for everything else. And so if we were to, if we were to move this out and cut an inset into it, then it wouldn't do anything to their entrance.
Right, it'd be on your own property then.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be further out.
Yeah, because, because we don't have the authority to allow you to use his property for maneuvering.
Eric or Burke, could one of you grab that letter and put it on the screen, please? So at least they have a chance to look at it, and thank you.
Are two spots in front, parallel to grand, enough for you?
Enough is a, I mean, it, it's more than I'm going to get today, so, I mean, it'd have to be.
Well.
But you could make that work.
I mean, I would, I would tell you I'd have to make it work. I mean, right now, we have people coming in and out from other businesses that rent from us, and as those leases come up for renewal, I might have a big problem on my hand if all they ever have is two spaces.
Right.
But I know y'all can't predict the future, and that might not be something that's in your purview right now, but
Yeah.
it's better than what I'm being left with. Right now, I'm going from six to zero.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and it's unfortunate that you've made some improvements to the building. It's triggered a bunch of stuff that was beyond your control.
Right.
Okay.
I'm not a fan of that.
Well, neither, neither am I.
So, so, I mean, I, I think, I, I'm just, I want to understand what, where you think you could be. And then
Yeah.
we can build a bridge to get everybody where we, where we need to be.
You'd like to do what's on your site plan.
Here's the thing. I mean, we, we showed up today, we argue, and I heard somebody, the second, the person before us talking about, you know, reserving rights and everything like that. So this is the site plan. If you deny it on that front, does that start my two clock, or two-year clock on just that particular issue? If I then come back to the city and I say I want to inset, is that a totally different situation, and I can ask for that within two years? Because I'm probably going to ask for it within two months. Okay?
If it's a different proposal.
Well, I think, I would like staff to weigh in on this, but I think that the decision on the inset parking is made by our engineering department rather than by this board or even by our planning staff. I wonder if it is possible, since it sounds like that decision has not been finalized, is it possible to maybe continue this, to get it finalized?
I, I thought of that as well while I was sitting down over there, because our concern is, we lose here today, we lose over there, we come back, and nothing's changed. I mean, I don't even know what happens after that. Do people keep parking, or is a cop going to show up and start directing people away from my lot? I don't, these are answers I don't know.
Has this, has the city seen your site plan?
I believe.
Yeah.
But what?
That site plan was part of their application.
And did you deny it? Did you?
That's not a site plan for final construction.
See, I get, I guess we're, I think, I got a problem with this whole thing, is, is we've got a guy up here that's trying to run a business, and because he's trying to improve the building, all of a sudden, we've triggered a whole bunch of stuff that's going to cause him to modify the whole functionality of this building.
Yep.
And he's struggling, and he's already invested $500,000.
Right.
So I guess my suggestion is, is if we need to continue this to help him get to where he needs to be, so everybody gets on the same page, let's do that.
Yeah.
And let's help this guy be successful. Let's not just think we got to enforce the code because that's tidy and neat for everybody. Because this building, if he hadn't put the money in it, what would it be? We'd still be parking angle out there. They'd still be backing over the sidewalk.
Yeah, but this is how non-conforming uses eventually do get brought in.
But I get that.
And I'm not saying I disagree with this situation, but we got to keep in mind the tenants of, of how we make our decisions are when there's either a change in use or a substantial reinvestment, such as the building's burned down, the sign blew over, now the new rules come in for how the site can be used.
Yeah, I get the new rules.
Yes.
But it's almost like he's being penalized for making an investment in the building.
Right.
So then now, all of a sudden, our new rules can be enforced.
Right.
And so far, a lot of our discussion's been to ask and inquire, how are people accessing the building? What modifications could be made?
I'm going to ask, because you brought it up. Are we better off continuing this, letting him get with traffic or whoever? Because we can go right down the street, a half a block or three-quarters of a block, and there's two parallel off-street parking spots. I can think of several spots on Ingersoll, same deal.
Right.
Ball Greens is one, right now.
But he'd have to make the investment.
Right, no, I get that, but he, he said that's better, that's better than what we're going to ask him to do today.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, it's not necessarily contradictory. I mean, we make our decision today based on his variance request, and then he goes and talks to somebody else. And I, I guess my opposition to a continuance is that he doesn't meet the variance test, and he's not going to meet the variance test when he comes back, even if it's denied or not, so. And he does meet all the exception requests. And so I don't, I mean, we spent, I don't know how, 30 minutes on this already. Like, he's going to come back next month, and we'll spend more time, but, but the position, as far as regardless of whether he gets inset parking, which I, I think he should, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I hope, you know, the city grants that, but regardless of whether he gets it or not, my, he doesn't meet the variance test, from, from my perspective, based on the presentation given so far. So I'm, 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 I'm going to be opposing a continuance request. I'll just put that out. If it's made, yeah.
Are they two separate things? You can deny my variance. I can go ask for an inset from another peo- people.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
But that, that denial will be permanent. Well, it will be applicable for two years. There will be a two-year period before you can ask for any other relief.
Any other relief, not just this drawn-up relief.
Related to the front of your building.
But if he's asking for inset parallel parking now, is that a substantial change in the variance request as opposed to what he gave now? Because from a character standpoint, to me, it would be different.
I don't, I don't know whether that would even require a variance, because he would have met the pay, the requirement here.
But what about the next question would be, is where are you going to put your green space in, John? And I'm going to say, right there where that asphalt is. Is that something I have to come in here for a variance? Because otherwise, it's going to have an old parking lot with slanted things that I'm never going to be able to keep people from pulling up in, and I'm going to have inset parking, and we're just going to be back here and do this.
I think I'm going to say this a lot today, but that would again be a change in circumstances that you could argue for the board within the two-year period.
Yes. Yeah, because it's substantially different what your appeal is to us. Instead of, yeah, I want to keep all these nice slanted spaces and pave everything, I'm oversimplifying it. Now, I'm going to have some nice angled insets, or some parallel inset spaces that kind of go with the street and some green space.
The variance is, he's asking for five feet less. Nothing, there's nothing in there about parallel or the other.
Right.
I mean, just as, as a five foot less, and I
Five foot less than five.
I would think that this is, meets some of the variance for me, because he did not make this situation. He's been there for two years, and no one's promised us.
And we can see where it goes, but it's kind of like, I don't, I'm not going to call it double jeopardy, but
Yeah.
depending on how it gets voted on, instead of giving him a little rope to, to look at continuing, we, we might just deal with it. Instead of giving him a little rope to look at continuing, we might just deal with it. I do have a question. On this little gray photocopy thing?
What's that?
What's the little drawing that is under the letter here, this little gray drawing? This looks a little different than what we've been talking about. What's this?
This is the piece of paper that I got with the first meeting with the-
This is what the city wants?
No, well, this is what I was drawing when we were talking to them. They told me about the green area.
Yeah, you got a green area and a tree, a sidewalk, you got a little separation, and then what, cars up against the building there?
I guess that's what I drew in, was something about you could have a circle drive.
Is that going to fit?
No, not, engineer says no.
Because I'd love to see that. Be glad to support something like that. But that's probably not, by dimensions and maneuvering, probably won't work.
Unless I can move the building in a feasible cause.
Okay. We're not laughing at you, just with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you don't laugh, you'll cry. Um, okay.
Well, I need to know what rights I'm giving up. If I'm asking for the variance to cool on the day, and you guys deny it, and then I come back and I want to put in green space or something. I mean, I'm telling you that if y'all are going to deny it, then I need to go back to the drawing board, and I probably need to go to a different department. And I need to get my engineer to whip up something that has inset parts. I know, but then, like my partner said, that this second option of inset is definitely not guaranteed either. And so therefore-
Yeah.
If somehow they deny it, we don't know where we should have gone.
Yeah, there's obviously, from a legal perspective, there, you know, you must meet a variance test. But also in regard to that, if it not only fails the variance test and it's contrary to the community character and the surroundings and everything, that's kind of like, you know, a double nail in the coffin. But we have granted variances before when there are, we could maybe say, some hardships. And the way they're proposing to get that variance granted would help the general character of the neighborhood blend in and not be intrusive. That's kind of the like, yeah, we're giving you a little extra leeway here, but you're making it look as good as possible. The way I see it with what you've proposed here, as much as I like everything you're talking about, it's a little tough for me to warm up to that, too.
The inset?
No, 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 no.
There's one space, the variant?
Just paving it and have them all like angled in there, and away you go. I don't want to see that. Kind of that's his approach.
My understanding is that the city isn't even allowing that. Even what he's requesting is actually one spot up front. Is that correct?
Yeah, the variance, what my engineer put together is a one-spot ADA compliant, well as best he can, because I don't think there's enough space. There's only 19.5 feet.
So you'd have one spot on the whole front edge of this building?
Yeah, like I said-
But that's not what you want anyway.
Correct.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is what you really want would probably fail the variance test, and from a character perspective, also, mm, doesn't look the best.
You think what I really want, which is the inset?
No, I don't know if that's what you really want. It doesn't sound like it.
I like Dave's idea of a continuance. I think that a continuance makes sense.
But let's take this guy to be successful, and let's come back with a plan that everybody salutes, including the city. And they say, yeah, we'll support two inset parking places. Good, I can make that work. I'll put in the green space. Versus, well, if we deny this, then he loses it for two years. What's he going to do? His people are entering through the back of the building.
Well, yeah, now your earlier comment, Dave, was let's just approve it. I like the guy, it's a hardship, but-
No, I didn't say that. I said, if he needs, I asked him if he had two inset spots, would that work? Well, that's the best he's going to get.
Okay. Well, how long does that process even take? Are they going to be?
I don't know.
Does anybody know? Are we going to have an answer in a month, or are we just going to come back and then spend another?
I think that we would direct the engineering to make a decision in the month. And if that's not a possibility, we will let you know next month that that's not the possibility. But it's frustrating to me as counsel for the board when we come here with things that the city hasn't resolved, that are raised. And so I think it needs to be resolved unless Eric knows that it has been.
It's resolved that they can't do it right now. The variance, if they don't get the variance, they're open to the consideration of taking it through a process to allow the inset. They don't want the inset. They don't want the parking there. Their ideal is none of it.
The engineering or the city does not?
Right, they wouldn't approve it right now. Stephen Biancetta is open, if this gets denied, he's open to the opportunity for an inset. That's a decision.
But he says he doesn't want it to begin with.
They would have to remove the prohibition on parking, I think, by ordinance.
So then he's at the mercy of staff instead of seven fellow citizens.
Well, I think he might even be at the mercy of our council to remove the parking prohibition on that.
If we didn't approve the variance, he couldn't have any parking up there of any kind whatsoever, inset or whatever.
I want you to understand-
And he needs to have that. I mean-
That there's a potential that none would be there if it's the number.
I mean, so we need to approve the variance. If he's going to have any parking at all, we don't need to decide right now what kind of parking he's going to have. But we need to give him a variance so he can work out the type of property, parking that's applicable to the site planning. If we just prove it that way-
If we approve the variance, he gets one spot in front, and what Eric just represented was that he will not get inset parking.
If we approve the variance-
If we approve the variance.
They won't be able to make both.
That doesn't make sense.
The inset won't function if you don't-
If you don't have green-
In fact, they may have to push the sidewalk back a little from where it is to make that function with the geometry to do an inset. Because they also have to not conflict with driveways on both sides. So there's, they have to work with two driveways and fit in between there, and then have it enough width to keep it out of the drive aisle or the drive lanes on Grand. Now, he's saying that could improve if it goes to a three-lane configuration, which hasn't been approved yet.
That could be years ago.
I mean, I would just, I mean, I thought if we gave him the variance, he could go work out what's best.
Well, if you give him the variance, then the inset won't be on the table probably, because he'll be using-
Because we can have a variance already for that space. Oh, we've given a variance from that and the green space, knowing he's going to plant or something on that nice printed area, on that nice-
He would have to restore that right-of-way area if he got the variance.
We can't just give him a blanket variance to do what he needs to do, get two spaces and make it look nice and prevent traffic.
Well, he didn't require, first of all, two spaces isn't on the, wasn't notified for two spaces. He was notified for one, based on the submitted sketch. And so, and he's been, I mean, engineering has looked at this. So I guess I don't want you under the impression that we weren't cooperating or working with him to come to a solution ahead of coming to the board, because we did.
Why can't it look like-
But they aren't going to approve anything administratively. They couldn't do the inset without going through another procedure. But there's no guarantee, so I think the board does recognize there's no guarantee that that would occur necessarily. I think we would work with them, knowing that there's no parking that would be allowed otherwise. And I think engineering even recognizes that.
So let me ask you this, Eric. Could you start over and just say, what can we do to give him some parking up front, and what would that look like?
They would probably, I mean, it would probably be an inset on the public right-of-way outside of the traveled lane. So you see the lane-
That seems to me to be a better conversation to have than the conversation we're having, right? You just told me-
But they want to exhaust the variance opportunity, because even off the street is better from their perspective than adding something that's not up. You know, there's one other location along there that has that.
Has the city sat down with him and say, here's what you want to accomplish, here's how you can do it? Have we had that conversation with this guy?
I wouldn't say we're, you know, that we've had somebody sitting there trying to develop a solution for them, no.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we?
We generally want the developer to come to us with the solution.
It's such a unique property.
This is no different than the screening conversation we had for air conditioners on top of buildings two months ago. The guy goes, what kind of screen do you want me to build? I don't know, bring us a screen. I brought you screens.
They weren't-
I'm just saying, I don't know why we can't sit down and say, here's what this guy wants to try to accomplish. Let's help him.
Absolutely. All right, we're kind of in the middle of the applicant's testimony. The applicant's had-
And then there's other people here that are to speak. So I did want to let you know, if you're thinking of continuing-
Yeah, and we've asked the applicant a lot of questions. From what Eric just said, the variance request is for one parking space. I might be fine with that for one parking space, but when I listen to Jonathan, that's not what he wants. I think he wants to keep what he's got and pave it, but fill with him.
This all changed, my thought process changed when I get the emails yesterday that say, from my engineer, that says the city's thinking of denying your variance. So then I'm just back to the drawing board at that point. Ideally, I want six spots. Now the engineer can't-
But you didn't ask for six.
You're not going to guarantee it, because it looks like that. So now, the city already told me I can't have the way it is now. So then I wanted to try to get two spots up there. The engineer showed me on the numbers, it couldn't work. This is what he told me, can't get it up there. And so then he came back with this one spot, and I said, well, sure, I'll make it work. Well, then, when I hear that the staff's planning on denying the one spot, right back at the drawing board, okay? Well, we're out there this morning measuring stuff with tape measures out in suit and tie in the street with my wife. I mean, I'm trying to do something, anything other than losing all parking in front of my commercial building.
If you wanted one spot up front and would restore some green space on the rest, we'd have a lot different conversation, at least from me.
Okay, so-
But that's not what you've been talking about this whole time.
Right, and now, so if you would guarantee this variance, this is new information to me.
For one spot?
That if this one that's drawn for y'all, if this is approved, then what I'm hearing from the city now is that I can't even go talk to them about an inlet, inset, which is a new variable here that I didn't know about. So what's going to happen is I'm going to get a pigeonhole here where I'm going to have one spot, and I'm going to think to myself, well, in the future, I'd love to have more than one spot. And now they're thinking I'm trying to have a variance and an inset, which I'm not trying to do. I'm trying to have one or the other. I'm not trying to have a circle drive on top of an inset. That's not what I'm asking for. And I realize that the drawings don't show that right now, because I'm not an engineer, and I don't have AutoCAD. I didn't draw anything this morning. But that's, I got a lot of issues from what you can tell.
All right. Jonathan, there's a couple ways that we're going to have to do this. You've given a lot of testimony. It's all been good. We're going to have to decide if we're going to make a decision, and we'll see what my board members think. But if you want to defer this for 30 days and ask for it, I could see what my fellow members think.
If it's continued, the testimony could occur at the continued hearing.
Okay, I've actually decided this already. I want to make a motion for a continuance, so I can go talk to the city about an inset parking.
Excuse me, I'd like to have an opportunity to speak to this, since I've sat here all the time.
You've sat here for three and a half hours. If you've got some comments that are right to the point, you bet, come on up. Yes, but what we could do, Mr. Coppola, hold on just a second. Is there anybody else in favor of the applicant's request that wants to speak?
So he can-
Is there anybody in opposition?
I'm in favor.
Oh, so you're in favor? Okay.
So I can speak either way.
And there's only so much that we can enforce here. So, but yeah, if you want to give your comments, we'll go ahead and hear them.
Should I go forward?
Yes. Okay, all right, so then we'll get him next to you.
Thank you. Joe Coppola, 300 Walnut, 240 Plaza. And we are the neighbors next door. It's the 90 apartment units, Grand Trees. And what I want to speak to is just the fact that we continue to hear that, I hear it from the city, I hear it implied from our neighbor, that they have the rights to that driveway next to us. It's not a shared driveway. That's our property only, you know, only at our consent, they can drive down there and do. So I think it's very important to establish that, and I want it known, and I want it on record, that that's how that works. And the only thing I also refer to is this parking spot, which I really have looked at this and looked at this, and I don't understand how it works anyway. So if someone could just tell me how they get in and out of that parking stall, that would clarify where I stand on that. Like I said, I understand the difficulties of renovations of properties. And I hope that he can get whatever relief he can get from the city in doing his property. But those points, I think, whenever there's a site plan or anything comes up about this property, again, we want it clear that that should not be cited as their right-of-way, because it is on.
So you don't want a connected maneuvering area for any front parking to your drive to the west, basically?
Well, if, I do not, no, I don't want any usements, any tie to our property.
Which we can't do, which we cannot do.
If we establish that as, and again, if, I'm not sure how it pulls in there. I don't understand this parking situation at all. But if they have to use our parking, our driveway to get in or out of there, then we're opposed to that.
Sure.
If they can clearly pull out onto the street on their own property in term, wonderful.
Yes, okay.
So those are my points, and I thank you.
Thanks. Yes, thank you, sir. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Do you have a comment at all, sir? You had your hand up earlier.
I agree with Dave.
He needs to come to the podium.
All right, if you have something to say, you can come up here, but otherwise, we're not polling the audience. Okay, any further questions for staff? Okay, so now that we've heard from those that are in support, or those with concerns a little bit, maybe in between, does the applicant want to look at considering deferring this, or do you want to see what we're going to decide, and that's what will happen?
I'm trying to weigh a bunch of different, or juggle a bunch of things in my head, but I would actually move for a continuance or deference, Mr. Chairman, at this point.
All right, we'll see what our board members say. That was a clear enough comment for me. You guys want to continue this to the next meeting, so he can weigh which is less painful? Or further evaluate his proposal, or clarify what he's trying to accomplish?
I'd move for a continuance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to continue. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Two, okay, so five to two, we'll continue this to next month. But I would encourage you to clarify what it is you're trying to do. I know it's clear to you, but it appears there's still some concern here, and maybe that will give you time to refine that. And we'll see what happens next month. Okay. It's fortunate that none of us are getting paid to sit here as citizens today, or we'd be on overtime with the city. And the same for those of you in the audience. Okay. That'll bring us then to item 13, a variance request at 1518 Idaho Street.
Let me have a moment to get my variances here. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're dealing with a property that's part of a site, but is a separate parcel. You can see this blue line here. That is a zoning line that separates the commercial properties fronting east 14th Street. This property is actually addressed off of Idaho, which is a residential street primarily. Historically, this had been developed commercially without the proper zoning. But nevertheless, it was built. And this owner has purchased that property in recent times, recent years. This property still carries with it the R2A designation, which is a residential designation. It's been recognized that this is in continuous use for the commercial purposes. There is a fence here, and I'll show you the photos, too, so you'll see it. But there's a fence along this entire front edge that was put in, shadow box-type fence. There's actually a gate prohibiting commercial access onto the residential on a regular basis. It could be opened up and allow that for emergency purposes or anything like that. The circulation is coming in here and going through automatic, I'm sorry, it probably actually comes in through here.
This is a car wash, right?
Yeah, the automatic bays are back here. I don't know if any of these have been converted to automatic bays in the front of the property.
They're all self-serve.
They've recently vacated some of this alley, I believe, in the process. We've also had conversations with them about rezoning this property to get a commercial designation that would allow the car wash. We've also had conversations with them about rezoning this property to get a commercial designation that would allow the car wash as a conforming use. So what happens is any type of enlargement or expansion, even a fence, really triggers that provision of an expansion or extension of a non-conforming use. This is the kind of what I call the shadow box fence, which means alternating equal finish on both sides. This shows it across the gate. You can see the exits from the car wash bays that are there. This is at a little bit different angle. They've provided some, I don't know if they use a drone or what, but it's kind of nice to get these with an application. But the actual fence in question has been partially constructed to the setback to this point. And then they haven't finished this area in here, but it would separate them from that parcel to the north. And because of the height of it being six feet, it exceeds the amount of an opaque fence in the front yard. They could do a three-foot fence without relief.
If it was zoned commercial, would they be able to do a six-foot?
No, they would, they would need the same provision. The difference being here, there's already, it's connecting up to one that's already six foot tall.
Yeah.
So it seems a little odd that we're requiring, I mean, from the outsider perspective, it seems odd we're requiring.
The same fence.
A fence to do the same encroachment.
And go like this, yeah.
So they're right here to preserve their ability to finish off that fence at the six-foot height to get it to connect on that north property line to the east fence. I don't know what, if they're intending on following through and getting rezoning of the property down the road. That would probably help eliminate some of the issue of it being a non-conforming expansion versus it just being a variance of the fence height in the front yard.
What's the use of the property to the north? There's some unique pathways and small structures.
I think this was developed and had display of vehicles for sale, but they lost that in a.
Weird, okay.
My understanding is that's a law, that was lost in a lawsuit, and they were prohibited from actually using that space for anything for the commercial display. So it just sits there.
But it is owned by the, that property is owned by the black building, if I want to call it that, with the C2 on it.
Yes.
It's owned by that car dealership lot, okay.
Yep, and then recently, like I said, they vacate, the appellant vacated this and has, owns this, I believe.
Yes.
Oddly, now, since that time, I've seen that there's this little tiny parcel here with a completely different ownership. So I don't really understand where that comes into it, but that wasn't there when we went through the vacation process, so.
Okay, so the city vacated the right away and gave it to the car wash owner, the appellant.
That was within the past year.
Yeah, that's good, because I use that all the time to get to that car wash, so I'm glad you guys decided to vacate it.
But it comes down to the variance test on, from our perspective, so we're not able to find that unnecessary hardship was demonstrated, so we're recommending denial at this point.
Do we have residential properties to the east on Idaho, or is that like commercial? I see those white vans and stuff to the south, yeah.
These are just large properties. I don't know if something weird's going on here or not, but.
And then there's residential to the south.
It wasn't there when I drove by on the, there's a lot of construction going on here right now. I think there's some public infrastructure stuff going on along the street, so.
All right. And no cards or opposition?
I don't think we got any. I'll show that map just to say I showed it.
Gotcha. Okay.
If there's no other questions, I'll.
Yep, any other questions for Eric? Okay, thank you. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Thanks for your patience and waiting.
No problem. Alan Hansen, 1437 East 14th Street. One of the managing owners of Spot Free Car Wash. We have four locations in Des Moines. Purchased this in 2017, and we knew about the complexities of the site from the previous ownership. He literally owned all the way from Washington, pretty much to within about a half a block of Cleveland to the south. And then all the way from East 14th to basically Idaho, with a few residential properties, majority of which unfortunately are not owner occupied. They're, as we went through records, trying to contact people, find out they're pretty much all absentee owners, out of state especially. So what we'd like to do, and I understand the hardship test, what drove us to do this was the automatic, when people come out, we were having an increasing problem because they were being forced off the roads due to ordinances. The transient population was hanging out and trying to knock on people's windows as they were leaving the car wash to ask for money. And it was kind of, when they come out of this bay and all of a sudden there's this person standing there, it was a little, you know, unnerving. So for the safety of our customers, we were trying to figure out what could we do? So I went and I talked to the neighboring landowner to the north, and I said, would you be opposed to me building the fence? And he said, no, I would not be opposed to that at all. His name is Paul Moyer, and in fact, he, he gave me, he gave me, he gave me a letter. And I don't know if he returned a card or not, but he gave me a letter, sent me an email, basically said, you know, to that effect. So this is the, there any question? We had permission from permit development to build all the fence. We could have to drop down. As an experiment, we put up green construction fence, and we've had to repair it virtually every three or four days because the transients, they've come down to the end of the fence, rip it down, and then kind of want to come through there and hang out. We have done as much as we can do to be a good neighbor. If this property was abutting a residential, if it wasn't the front yard setback, we would be required to have a six-foot wooden fence. We would be required to do landscaping. Out of our pre-application meeting we had last year, we have decided, you know, we came out of that with a list. And unfortunately, the list was more than we could afford to complete in the time allowed. It was sidewalk along Washington, dumpster enclosure, landscaping. So we've kind of taken it a piece at a time. And so we're voluntarily, we're doing some landscaping, planted about 14 trees. We got a street tree permit from forestry department. We planted street trees between the fence and the street as well. Here's. The power lines that are there create a little bit of a difficulty from a landscaping standpoint.
And you planted the trees yourself?
Myself and my employees, yes.
And those were approved ornamental style trees for the.
That is correct, yep, yep. Shane, Shane, he's an ass named McQuillan, yeah, yeah. I worked with Shane on that. And, you know, we can't prove the hardship test, and here's another view.
Well, maybe you can.
From the other direction. There's kind of two parts to this, and I don't know, I thought in my application I was clear. One part is to finish the last 20 feet at a six-foot height that abuts the existing fence. The existing fence, we, I'd like to repair it and put new pickets on it, but I was told at permit development, that's why I'm here, I can't fix that either because it is a non-conforming structure as well. So I would need a variance to actually fix the fence that's there. So I don't know if this presented as two parts, but that's the two parts that we would like to, that we would like to accomplish is, I'd just like to be a good neighbor. You know, we voluntarily restrict our operations in that building. We close down, I think, at 11:00 and don't open until, I think it's 6:00 o'clock in the morning, to try to, you know, not cause any hardship to the neighbors, I guess, next door.
So you're saying the automatic car wash part will close?
Yeah, we voluntarily close it, no zoning requirements, so.
Yeah. The self-bays remain open though?
They do remain open that are close to East 14th Street, yes.
Yeah, do you have someone who lives in the upper part there?
No, no, it is non-used space. It's not permitted for any residential use.
And it never was? I kind of always thought that maybe somebody, you know, onsite manager or something could live there.
No, no, I've never really inquired as to what really transpired. Like I said, the previous ownership created a lot of complexities to the property.
Sure, sure.
And so we've been trying to kind of sort through those, work with the city as much as possible, be a good neighbor. The driveway in the back, yes, we do not use it. It is by far the closest fire hydrant. It's immediately located to the corner of the property. So if the fire department had to get in there, they would simply open the gate up, pull a hosing and go in. So the dry, you know, we put some barricades across there so no customers could try to go out that way. We want to keep our business away from the residential, and we kind of felt like the fence was the best way to maintain and add that short section. I guess to keep our problems and our property and the other problems away. So it doesn't meet the hardship test, I was hoping it would meet the common sense test.
Most applicants don't stand up here and say it doesn't meet the variance test.
Well, I knew that when I, I knew it when I made, when I made the application. In my mind, I didn't consult legal counsel on this small matter, I guess, so.
That's okay.
I was hoping it'd be a small enough matter not to be important.
Okay, all right, Alan, you take some questions from us?
I also have a comment to make, is I think safety is a hardship. I mean, if you've got people knocking on somebody's doors, coming out of a car wash, and you're protecting your clients, I think that's a hardship.
Yeah.
So.
That's, yeah, I would say, is that a unique set of circumstances, not of your own making? You aren't inviting vagrants and.
No, we're not, we're not, in fact, we.
You're not offering free food or anything?
No, it is a problem we have at other locations. We have staff that rotate on it all day long, between eight and five, between each location, and it.
Check it out.
It, yes, it becomes a problem of keeping people moving along.
No, I understand. I had someone in the fence next door to my house the other night, on a vacant lot. So it gets around, and yeah, it's a safety issue, which is not of your own making, so don't say that.
Okay, anything else we can help Alan with? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? If none, we'll close public portion of board, go to board deliberation. I want to lead off on this one. Some of you might remember, I don't say much about where I was born, but I came home to East 14th in Cleveland a long time ago, and that was a nice little neighborhood. It's not very nice anymore, and I'm extremely disappointed. But what they've done with this business is they're trying to keep a good business and improve that East 14th corridor. I work near the East Village, and I go to your car wash on a regular basis. And I spend as much money as I can in the city of Des Moines with local businesses. I didn't know the ownership changed hands, but I knew something was different. Because it looks better, I feel safe when I'm there. I might not be there 10:00 o'clock at night, but, but I feel like anytime during the daytime, I can pull in there. The place is clean, it's well-kept. I've noticed the landscaping. I also have thought that the way the car wash sets in the back, the self-serve, it's nice that it's kind of segregated from Idaho Street because, again, I know that neighborhood, and there are residential houses within 100, 200 feet of there. So I could see that there are conditions not of his own making related to that property. It'd be easy to cut in and out of there. People want to get up to that South End of Guthrie Avenue Business Park, Washington, hide out in there, cut down to that convenience store, East 14th in Cleveland, and cut right through your place and see what's going on there that might be of interest. So the way you've taken care of that property, you have landscaping on both sides of the fence that you spent money on and got permission from the city to put in. We don't see that. So I'm very impressed with that, and I think there'd be every reason to grant the variance conditions he'd want. But I'm interested in what my colleagues think too, so.
I agree completely. I drive by there often, I think I'm gonna start using that for my car wash now that I've met you, because I live on that side of town. And I'm very impressed with what you've done, and I think it's kind of, you know, you are maintaining what is already up there and improving on it. There's nothing that's gonna harm anybody else, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the variance.
And I'll second it. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries six to one. We've got good principles here, but you've got good principles too, Alan. Keep up the good work there, okay? All right, that'll bring us to item number 14, which is a special permit at 2424 East Aurora.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Catherine Dostard, city planner. The property in front of us is one that you probably know, I'm assuming fairly well, as you will drive by it when you're heading north or south on I-235. We're looking at Grace Church, and in particular, we are looking at their sign, which I believe is right about there. Have a couple of images. I will let the appellant speak to the exact circumstances of why they're making the change in the sign, but they are updating both the sign and the reader board. They've presented us with what is existing and what they are proposing. They're very similar in nature, in size, a couple of, couple of differences on the size overall, but very, very similar to what they have. And we are proposing that, we are recommending approval of this request. However, we would like to see it go from a pole sign to a monument sign. And other than that, we just have what would be our standard conditions, including the fact that this be a monument sign included in our recommendation. And then I have a consent map and a few cards I'll pass around. If there are any questions, I can try to answer for you.
Could we see the picture of the two sign proposals again?
Yes. So this is the existing on the left-hand side, and then on the right-hand side is what they are proposing, so. And we are good with this. We would just like to see it go from a pole sign to a monument sign with a masonry base.
Okay.
What's the difference between this and a billboard being along the interstate there?
I'm sorry?
What's the difference between this and a billboard being on the interstate there? Just out of curiosity.
I'll defer to Bert.
Hi. You're saying, why wouldn't we require like a billboard to have a monument base? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah, I mean, to me, on a highway, on an interstate where this is, what's the difference between a billboard?
I know it's been the will of council to get any freestanding sign that's of reasonable height to be a monument sign, just for a character perspective. I do see your point that we don't require the billboards to be monument, but I think those are a little bit different than.
Yeah, I know.
So what is the difference?
Forty-five foot.
One difference is that the sign is, this sign is an accessory use versus a billboard, which is a primary use on the property.
Yeah, and as Eric just reminded me, this isn't commercially zoned either. It's a residential zoning district with a, I guess, a church institutional use, so it's not a commercial business.
Yeah, John's got a good question.
Fair question, but there are reasons.
And billboards are regulated under a separate subsection of the zoning ordinance as well. And even within the allowance for billboards, there are a lot of limitations on them, in fact. There's, yeah, yeah, we probably won't see new billboards going up in Des Moines unless there's conversions.
Yeah, there's separation distance requirements for a billboard, so you would not see a new billboard in this area because, as you know, when you come into town from I-35, there's several billboards there that new ones wouldn't meet a separation.
A lot of them have been there for 40 years, yeah.
And again, depending upon the zoning and this being a principle, billboard being a principal permitted, this is first of the next testing.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant? Thank you for waiting today, appreciate your patience.
You're welcome. My name is Harry Elder. I am on the Elder Board. I'm here with Paul Dykstra, he is also on the Elder Board. And I just want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting us represent here. We are asking to repair the existing sign without a monument sign. That is one of the variances we asked for because of cost, and we wanted to, the bottom sign is not working well. It showed 130 degrees here a couple weeks ago, and so we wanted to make something that's warm. Yeah, felt like it, but it wasn't. The top side is just plastic, using the same frame, basically. It's, you see a little bit different design to it, but they're just an update on the whole thing. And Grace Church is in a great neighborhood. We have spoken to Joe Youngworth. We have spoken to Joe Youngworth, Homeowners Association. He was in favor with it. I will tell you that Grace is a good neighbor to be next to because we have projects that go out and help people that are unable to do certain projects. We do that once a year. So it's a landmark for a lot of people. And so on behalf of the Grace Church, the board members, the staff, the members and the church, we do thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the church and about the sign that we just wanted repaired to get the information out correctly. We've talked to the sign guy and everything else and meets all the state and the city requirements.
I remember when you guys wanted to put your first electronic sign up a number of years ago here.
You were there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, a long time ago now, wasn't it?
Been 10 years.
But if you're reading 130 degrees, I'd say your problem is the temperature sensor, not necessarily your entire sign.
Well, it's not working properly in other areas. Messages we try to put on. This, this next one is the latest and greatest where you can put signs on, still meeting the requirements of eight seconds.
So has staff told you that in essence, well, you need a variance here because what? The cost of the new sign is...
No.
Too great or that would trigger it or?
Monument sign. So this is a pole sign, which is against the...
Right.
So all we're doing is asking this to allow us to fix the current sign.
Right.
Do all the information we want to have.
Yeah.
I do have a resolution, if you're interested in it. If we could at least get a 10-year, this sign lasted 10 years.
Right.
So if we could get a 10-year moratorium on a monument sign until maybe this one wears out, then we could budget enough money to put in a monument sign.
Okay. Usually special collections at church are for the needy, not to fund the city sign 10 years from now, but that's what you maybe have to do.
I understand.
Right? Set money aside. What I was trying to get at is minor repairs to an existing pole sign can be allowable, but when you get into a certain amount of money, the value it, it, it far exceeds where it'd be considered a repair, it'd be a replacement. So I'm assuming that's what might have triggered the, the city's requirement here.
Well, the sign company that was, that put it up originally could not repair it.
Okay.
So a new sign company said, we, we can do it, but we need to change a few of the boxes, just to shift the numbers. Actually, the square footage is smaller on the new sign by a little bit than it is for the existing sign. But they have to replace both and make them, make their equipment fit.
Gotcha.
It'll be LED, it'll be nice, it'll all work together.
On the reader board, what kind of messages are you going to have on there? I'm just kind of concerned that it might distract if people are reading things because that's kind of a busy area of the freeway.
Say that again, please.
That's a busy area of the freeway. People are getting ready to merge off or merge on, exit. What kind of messages are going to be on the message sign? I have no problem personally with the, the sign itself, but the reader board, I have a bit of an issue. What kind of information's going to be on there? Is it going to be scrolling? Is it going to be constant?
Well, according to the state, you're going to have eight seconds, so the sign will not change, but the sign will have a temperature a day or maybe a special event that's coming up. Like there's a, there's a car show. We're supposed to be there in two hours, so hopefully I get back.
Okay, so it'd be something simple like car show, not this paragraph?
As long as it stays up there for eight seconds, they can put whatever they want up.
Okay, thank you.
That's the regulation.
Thank you. I'm done.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant?
Stop on up.
I'm going to be in front of him for eight seconds. You're going on the interstate. Hi, my name is Paul Dykstra and I live at 1104 15th Avenue Southeast, Altoona, Iowa, 5009. And people have been wondering, what do we do with our sign? Our sign promotes a lot of activities that go on within our church body. So if you look at it at a year's period of time, there's a lot of things that we can put, put to remind people on a, on a basic concept that we have this event coming up or this is taking place or whatever. And we have found that to be very effective as far as our, our church is concerned. Harry and I have both been around at Grace Church for about 10, 20 years right now, and I was on staff for a time period. So in terms of seeing this sign and what it, what it can do for us from electronic, electronic basis, it's something that to me is very beneficial. And it's something that I would really like to see happen far as our, our church is concerned. It adds something along that corridor. Yes, it adds some information, but we've also gotten a lot of phone calls and a lot of comments when our sign isn't reading completely or, or it's, it's not reading at all, or we get a temperature of 132 degrees. Yeah, that's not what it's supposed to do, but that might remind them what the alternative is if they...
I was going to say.
So just, just to let you know, this is something that I think is really beneficial to the city of Des Moines. It's been a landmark along that corridor for 20 years now. And this is the second sign we've gone through. We were putting our third sign in if this gets approved and it gets taken care of. We'll put our third sign in. And I think once again, that it's beneficial to the community of Des Moines. So I trust you folks. I know that you'll make wise decisions, but we do want, like to work with you on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. Anybody else here to speak in support? Seeing none, anybody speak in opposition?
Chair, members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer for the city of Des Moines. This is the time to get this sign into a monument sign. They are no different than anybody else in the city. They can still get their message out with a monument sign, just like they are with a pole sign. There's no use kicking this down the road for 10 more years when everybody else, we've been very consistent to get those pole signs down and monument signs up at the point in time when the monument sign is failing. And this is the time to do it. I don't believe that we should start making exceptions to what we've held strong to up to this point. It's time for a monument sign to go in there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here in opposition? You guys want to say anything quick to rebut Sue or have you said your piece? Just, just kind of by order, since Sue said she's not in support of this, you, you have the right to give another couple minute comment if you'd like. You don't have to, but you get final word.
Well, I think you know our intentions. It's not, we're not advertising. We're trying to inform people. We have people come all the time that need help. And if they know to come for a certain reason or a certain event, we want to do that. And we're here just to serve God's word and be friendly to everybody and to support our neighbors most of all.
Right. Yep. Which is appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public portion, then we go to board deliberation. Thoughts?
Well, if I find this a little bit unique just because of the location and they've got this, a very large swath of property and you essentially see the sign from the interstate. I'm not opposed to them taking this existing sign and upgrade. And I think for them to make this a monument sign, it would, in my, in my perspective, it would look a little bit hideous as a monument sign, but I think that the focus of this sign is for passerbyers to see it. I'm fine with what they're proposing. Think, I don't think every sign is going to fit the code.
I don't want to have the temperature raised on me, but as much as I agree with their mission and what they're doing for the community, we've told many businesses, you got to convert to a monument sign. We have told many institutions, including educational ones and nonprofits, they've got to convert to monument signs. We have told churches on Bell Avenue and Flewer, Beaver Jail, Beaver Drive, Beaver Avenue and Grand Avenue, that they've got to convert to monument signs. And as much as I like what they're doing, I would agree. I might also go as far enough to say, you know, when somebody has a sign in front of their direct business where there's access, that's one thing. This is sending a message to a lot of people that, you know, they're driving by the business, but they're not really driving by the business. As much as I like what they're doing here, we've, we, we do have to stick to our standards here in principle. So I'm going to count...
I understand what you're saying, but the signs that you're referencing are on city streets. They're not off interstates. They're not off 235 or interstate.
Right. And the new zoning ordinance does not give allowances that because you're near an interstate, you can have a taller, bigger sign. In fact, the zoning ordinance finally did what I wanted it to, which was bring even those signs down. Hardee's didn't need a 40-foot tall sign within a mile of the interstate. So, you know, one, one could even contend that while it's on-site, it's designed to have more than off-site advertising potential, potentially. But, but I don't need to go there because I, I think the ordinance is pretty clear. We've got to get people converted to monument signs. But I'm just one of seven. No, you may not. Any other comments from the board?
Would they be able to keep it as high as a monument sign? Because it says minimum that the height has to be 25 percent. But would they be able to still have a, so it's visible from the freeway?
A tall enough, well, there's a maximum combined height.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a maximum combined height of 15 feet.
Be the second condition?
Well, technically, if it were, if it were a commercial, a regular sign, it would have to be 15 feet maximum, I'm sorry, 8 feet maximum if it's within the first 25 feet of the, within 25 feet of the front property line. However, since this is a special permit, they're not really held to those bulk regulations per se and they wouldn't need a variance to get around them either.
They would or wouldn't?
They wouldn't. I mean, it's a special permit, so they wouldn't be subject to the variance criteria.
And we're still requiring a 25 percent base, even though it's going to end up being like...
Right. I think the way the staff recommendation is worded, you know, typically, typically a sign would be limited to 8 feet in height if it were within 25 feet of a front property line, but since this is a special permit.
Right.
And it's in a highly, like a high volume or high-speed corridor, I think we were okay with it being taller than the 8 feet as long as it had the masonry base. That was at least 25 percent of the overall height.
Yeah. So your potential approval would accommodate that or allow for that?
It would allow for the 25 or 22-foot height, but it would have to have a base.
Have to have a base.
Have to have a base at least 20, at least 25 percent of that height.
Okay. So it'd have to be five and a half plus feet tall.
Right.
Which is next to nothing if you're standing there, driving on the interstate.
Right.
Okay, I'm confused. It can be how tall?
The overall sign would, could still be 22 feet, but they would have to have a masonry base. And it's possible they would want the masonry base to be taller than 25 percent.
Which they could.
So it can get under, you know, to the bottom of the sign faces and it could have a higher height.
I doubt they're going to want it higher because they don't want to spend the money.
Right. But I know there's a fence there too and without that height, it's not going to be as visible.
So the conditions address the size of the sign face, but not the size of the height?
Right. I mean, and when we wrote that, we were purposely leaving it a little bit ambiguous to give them the flexibility to still go up to 22 feet of height if they wanted to put a bigger base under it.
They could go up to 40 feet.
Was that?
They could go up to 40 feet. How you've written it?
Well...
As long as they get this...
What was noticed was for a maximum height of 22 feet.
Okay.
So we could, we would hold them to the 22 through that.
All right. So so far, we just had a couple of comments from Cindy and myself. Thank you, Bert, for clarifying a question we had. So back to board deliberation here. Other thoughts, comments or motions?
I mean, I'll, I'll comment that I, I think the sign ordinance is overly onerous, as I've said multiple times. And I don't necessarily agree with it, but I'm not on city council and those people made up their minds. And I don't think, to Mel's point, you know, everybody who's come through here, we've insisted upon a monument sign. And to Sue Ann's point, these are the opportunities we have to do so. So I'm going to be supporting staff recommendation. And actually, I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay. Before we vote, I'm happy to take any other final comments. If there are none, we'll go ahead and vote. We got a motion and a second to approve the special permit subject to the staff conditions. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three. Those opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, so since the special permit does not pass as presented, what options do we have on the table yet? Lana?
Well, you can, someone can make a motion to approve the special permit with revision to the conditions that are presented in the special permit.
Does that have to come from anyone in particular?
Not according to your rules.
Okay. All right. So in other words, it's game on, so...
I'll, I will move that they be allowed to put up the sign as they proposed within the rules put in here.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
A second.
And I'm assuming that's clear enough for everyone to understand what the motion is?
No, it's not.
They can put up the pole sign.
Yeah, but do they have to...
With the dimensions?
Dimensions, the just electronic display, you know, the time.
They have to have all the other conditions except for condition one and staff recommendation?
Yeah, except for number one. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. As, as generally proposed by EMC with the dimension shown, et cetera, et cetera.
As proposed at this hearing.
Okay. All right. If that's clear, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Those opposed? Okay, so it carries. So you can put your sign up just like you wanted to, so.
Wait until next week?
Okay. All right. I hope the temperature goes down, for me included.
160.
All right. That'll bring us to item number 15.
Hey, Mel.
No.
Okay. All right, yeah. John had a standing appointment that he mentioned much earlier today, so he's got to head out. Thank you, John, for all your time and patience today. We'll continue on with those that have also been patient in the audience. That'll bring us to item 15, a conditional use permit and variance request at 1433 Walnut Street.
All right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, these appeals would allow for conversion of an existing building to a tavern use such as a comedy club. The subject property is located on the north side of Walnut Street, along the east side of 15th Street. It contains a one-story commercial structure. The subject property is owned C3A, which only requires off-street parking for uses that are not otherwise allowed in the C1 district. So since a tavern is not allowed in the C1 district, a tavern use on this property would drive off-street parking requirements. In order to use the whole building as a tavern, they would be required to provide a total of 38 parking spaces. They're only able to provide eight along the north side of the building. Those would back out onto the existing alley to the north. Here are some photos that show what the building currently looks like. It was most recently occupied by found things. Again, this is looking down Walnut Street. This is 15th Street here in the foreground. Another view further east down the building. They would be making facade improvements, adding windows and whatnot, so it would look much better. This is the backside of the building where those eight parking spaces would be provided. Another view of the backside. And then here's the consent map. We got three cards, one from Christensen. One was actually representative of Come and Go that owns two properties and the other is Sega Communications who owns two properties. All are in support. Staff believes this is an appropriate location for a tavern type use. However, as far as the parking goes, you'll see that we've recommended that they provide a parking arrangement to achieve the deficiency in their off-street parking. And I know this is going to be not exactly easy for them to find because there's not a whole lot of available parking lots in the area. However, that's the same recommendation that staff has made on Noche down the street and then where the Grumpy Goat is. Staff had also made the same recommendation there. In full disclosure, the Grumpy Goat site, the board, we, staff made the recommendation for the parking, but the board ultimately said, well, there's parking garages close by. We don't need the parking arrangement. And as far as Noche goes, when the board initially granted the conditional use permit, they required them to get the parking arrangement. However, 11 months later, they came back to the board and said they've been unable to maintain that parking arrangement. And at that time, the board let them out of the parking arrangement. So for the sake of being consistent, staff has also recommended these people find a parking arrangement. I let them speak today whether they've been successful with that, but I don't think staff's going to push too hard for that, just knowing that the proposed use would drive customers at off-hours from other commercial uses in the neighborhood. But again, that is our, going to be our recommendation. So we've recommended approval of the conditional use permit and variance is subject to the list of conditions here on the screen.
Is that whole area... Is that whole area zoned C-3A?
It is, yes.
The box was confusing me.
Yeah. Yeah, the entire area. You can see there's some C-3B a block to the west. But the C-3A district goes about to somewhere around the 11th Street.
Okay.
Bert, since you mentioned Noche, and I... If I remember right, that was kind of designed to be kind of a performance club where you could get drinks, you know, for, at the show, and hang out at the bar when there's a show coming up. But does Noche just have normal bar hours, too? It's just kind of open? Or do you know?
I don't know. I know... I think they have Sunday afternoon performances, and they have other...
Which I think... And again, not to get down to make it gospel or anything, but I think that that was our understanding with the approval, that was during performances. I know we had a place there just east of Drake on University where they wanted a conditional use permit as a quote tavern, but they were only going to sell before shows and at ticketed shows. So in this case, and I'm sure the applicant can help us, but in this case, it looks like, hey, yeah, we're just permitting you as a tavern, and you might be a comedy club, or you might be a yoga studio. So staff's okay if this... Hey, if it's just a tavern, and they want to open at 11:00 a.m. every morning, be open until 1:45 a.m. again, that'd be okay with you.
Right.
So it's not... Your conditional use isn't based on any other conditions of how the site will be used?
Correct. Yeah. It's owned C-3A, which, as I mentioned earlier, those yoga studios, other things are allowed in C-1.
Oh, sure, sure.
Wouldn't drive off-street parking anyway.
Right. Right. Okay. Yeah. My concern is, you know, maybe it is or isn't a concern, but if it's just... It's just a general tavern down the line. It could just be a general tavern.
Right.
Right? And that's okay?
Yeah, you're right. We're not putting any stipulation that they have to have live performers or...
Got it.
Anything like that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Applicant or representative of the applicant? Thanks for hanging with us today.
Good evening.
Oh, we've had that happen.
Hi, I'm Ryan Wade with Wade Investments. I live at 201 First Avenue in Iowa City. It's pretty cut and dry, what we're asking for here. Kind of wanted to explain the situation we're in. The building here, we're breaking it up into three different units right now. We have Tee Hee's Comedy Club, who is coming in on the A unit, which would be the far west unit. The middle unit is going to be a yoga studio. And the final unit, I can't say who it's going to be, but we have a... At least being negotiated right now. It does have common bathrooms into it, too. This is kind of a layout of the building itself. We're doing a lot of work to this building. We're putting in close to $350,000 in improvements into the building, plus the tenant improvements on top of that. It's a corner lot. I'm taking pride in that corner lot there. A new exterior facade, new lighting, a new paint, so... Other than that, great.
My name's Grant Norbey. I'm an architect with Shyev Hattery, and I live at 2509 D Avenue, northeast Cedar Rapids. Just wanted to expand a little bit on Ryan's comment there. So the comedy club that would serve alcohol is about 3,300 square feet. The smaller middle unit there is about 600 square feet. That's the yoga studio, so that would be an acceptable use, would not require onsite parking. And then he mentioned the third one, which might also require serving alcohol. So that could fall under this requirement. So that 38 stalls probably would not apply in this case. If we looked at all the leasable space, I calculated approximately 35. You know, so you take off the eight that are onsite, and you come down to about 27. If you take off the yoga studio, it'd be another two, I believe. So we're down to like 22, 23 spaces that we would be looking for. If we wanted to, we could probably look at the surrounding area a little bit. You might be familiar with it. There's abundant on-street parking in the immediate vicinity, but to get to available surface parking, you have to move, you know, about a block away. And you could tell that some of those other businesses had some difficulty finding, making arrangements until you get to about the nationwide parking structure, at which point, a lot of people have pretty good access to that. There is a pretty good balance as well between daytime use and nighttime use. So that's helpful as well.
Yeah, I think there's a microbrewery nearby or a local brewery. Gosh, I can't think of the name, but Gigi and Hannah come out of there. And a lot of street parking occurs around that business. So, yeah. Try not to do too much of a commercial. So I'm not sure if you guys have considered that or not, that, yeah, you will have some competition for street parking there. Yeah. Okay. So you guys up for some questions?
We are.
Okay. Any specific questions? Is your intent basically, as I said to Bert, I don't want to necessarily put any more restrictions on than necessary, but, you know, potentially, hey, you guys can have a tavern. Have a nice day, is what staff's recommending. But is your idea you're only going to be selling alcohol when you have events?
I would probably have the...
Okay. Oh, this guy. What's your name, sir?
Sidj Walker, 2101 Meadow Court, Des Moines. This is going to be sort of a Des Moines' first independent comedy club and supporting local artists. So I would like to see it more than just a comedy club, but also an incubator for the arts here in Des Moines. We will not be running it as a bar outside of comedy performances and scheduled currently for evenings. It's also a... The businesses on Walnut and also some of local... Along Locusts are generally to be considered sort of like a district. They've got everything from casual dining to fine dining, which they love this because it supports the idea of dinner and a show. So we are going to... People may park for dinner, but they are going to walk to the comedy club across the alley and then close by. So it sort of keeps that community focused, too. So that's pretty much it.
That makes sense.
And we won't have any TVs, so we won't have a bar open during Super Bowl or anything like that either. So takes away from the whole live performance aspect of it.
Well, a lot of people call Court Avenue an entertainment district.
Right.
I am kind of referring to it nowadays as a drinking district. But I would really see this area of Walnut Avenue being an entertainment district. You truly have dinner. You... Yes, you can enjoy a drink, but musical performances at a number of locations, what you want to do, comedy, that, to me, would be truly an entertainment district on the west side, which would be cool.
Absolutely. And we've already talked with people like Max Forman at Noche and everything, and it's a very complimentary business. So we were all pretty excited about it.
Good. Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I think you all spoke in support of each other. So is there anybody else out there who wants to speak in support? Anybody wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, are there any further questions for staff? Okay. I don't see any. We'll close public portion, go to board deliberation. I think you guys are being generally generous about the use proposed. You know, hey, it's a tavern, but I'm not going to limit them to what they said they want to do. I would assume that under a conditional use permit, if we've got any problems, the conditions would apply. But the way they want to operate this, it sounds like it's designed to be entertainment and shows and alcohol's supporting. But I don't see need to put any further restrictions on it. So I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request of staff recs. Well...
Would you take a friendly amendment to strike provision number one?
Let's look. Parking?
That they don't have to go out and secure parking spaces because then they're just going to come back in a year and say, we can't find them because they're not available, and...
Trying to recall if they really spoke to that too much about we don't like condition one?
Yeah. They mentioned that it'd be difficult just based on the unavailability of surface parking lots in that area. It's not like on the east... Farther east, where you do have a lot of parking garages.
And they're even further away from the parking than Noche. So it's just worse.
Right. It just gets worse that direction.
People want to go there. They'll find a place to park.
Right. And if it's too inconvenient, they won't go there.
Exactly. And I don't think it's incumbent on us to figure out what their business plan is, and you better have parking, or you're not going to be successful.
If somebody wants to make a... Yeah. If somebody wants to make a friendly amendment, I'm fine with that.
They did.
You did. Okay. So motion and a second with a friendly amendment to scratch item one.
Thanks, Cindy.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 6-0. Good. We'll look forward to our first showdown there. Good. Good. All right. That'll bring us to... Does anybody need to take a break for a couple, three minutes? All right. You guys have been patient, but we're going to take a break for two, three minutes because I've been patient as I can be on some things. Good. We'll be right back.
Too much information.
Oh, I have to take a call quickly. That's what I meant.
Oh, yeah.
We have our own comedian here.
Fascinating afternoon at zoning board of adjustment. So on this next item, we have a member who has recused themselves from any decision making just on this next item. So that means we have five members of the board present. As it stated in the preamble and legal notice which the applicant got before the hearing, it always takes four members to get an affirmative vote for what you want to do with your appeal or permit request. When there are only five members present, you have the option if you want to defer to next month to hopefully see if there's more members here, you can. If you want to roll the dice and think you've got a great proposal and you've seen what we've done here for three and a half hours and you want to give us a good case and think you can get four votes, you can go for it. But you also have the option if you want to say no, I'd rather wait till we have more members. As long as Dave is a member, then he'd have to recuse himself from next month. So we, so I just want to put that out there. Who is the applicant in this case? Okay, you want to go ahead and go for it?
Yeah.
All right, good man. All right. So we'll go have Bert kick us off and give us the background.
All right. Item number 16 is two parts. The first part is one determination whether the board can actually, I apologize, the sun's in a bad spot.
I'll block for you.
You'll block for me? Okay. Well, you've got to be closer. I've already...
You're a good blocker, Eric. Thank you for helping.
He's got my back. All right. So the first part is to determine whether the board could consider this since it was, a similar appeal was denied back in March. And then the second part would be if the board determines it's appropriate to hold a rehearing, there would be consideration of that variance. Subject property is the new Mies Block building on the north side of Grand Avenue between Sixth Avenue and Seventh Street, just next door to the Catholic Diocese building here. This aerial is too new, it doesn't show the building, but there is a new building that's been constructed on the southeastern portion of this property. It's a three-story building and the applicant is wanting to put signage to identify a third-floor tenant. Since it's Zone C3, only the first and second floor tenants earn signage, so they need two variances in order to have signage for that third-floor tenant. Here's the decision in order from March when the board denied the variances. And actually, technically at that time, it was deemed denied because it didn't receive the four affirmative votes that it needed to pass. But at that time, they were proposing a 28 point, 0.13 square foot sign on that third-floor facade. And this is what it looked like up here. This dark gray box is a window, so the proposed sign was just slightly wider than that window. So they've since revised their design so that it's about half the size of what it previously was, so it would fit within that window frame. It would be on the exterior of the window, but it would still be within the confines of that window. And this proposed sign would only be 14.81 square feet. So the first part that the board is charged with is determining whether or not it would be appropriate to hold a rehearing. As noted in the board's bylaws, the rehearing of any decision of the board of adjustment can only be held within two years of the board's initial decision. If the, these criteria are satisfied, such a new application shall be permitted in cases where the facts and circumstances present at the time of the board's prior decision have so changed to material, has to materially affect the reasons that prohibit, produced and supported it. So staff believes that, that satisfies, the applicant satisfies this criteria since the proposed sign is about 50% smaller than the previous sign. So I guess staff is supportive of having a rehearing. So I don't know if Glenna wants the board to vote on part A right now, or...
I think that the board should vote on that first. You wouldn't have the hearing at all if you determined that they hadn't met this criteria.
Sure. Bert, can you pull up that, that decision in order again? And there's usually a summary paragraph of what the concern or statement was, the board's finding?
Yeah. If you remember too, that time staff had recommended that, we had actually recommended approval, but under the condition that the proposed sign be placed on the south facade along Grand Avenue.
Yep. Okay. All right. So it says there basically, "The hearing indicated placing a sign on the east facade of the structure would be detrimental to the essential character of the adjoining property that contains historically significant structure." Right? That's our general finding.
Well, that was staff's, we didn't have a finding because we didn't pass anything.
Well...
That's why we didn't pass it though.
What's the signature page show? Decision in order. First motion. Okay. So all the motions relate to the statement of the findings. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, they're just more or less...
Whether the relief is approved or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So the reason I wanted that mentioned is nowhere in here do I see anything about the size of the sign. I see that where it's located, which is the east facade, would be detrimental to the essential character of an adjoining property that does have historically significant structure and it's not normally allowed. So I don't see a big difference here. Staff's being extra generous today on a couple things. You know, if somebody's got a motion one way or the other, that's fine, but I'm just not seeing where this is substantially different than what we had before. It's on the same floor, on the east facade, in the same place.
I'm, so I wasn't here in March, but the other concern I have actually is the precedent that sets, not that we set precedent, but we often refer to previous decisions and just for predictability's sake. And the idea that people, when they get a variance denied, come back just with like a modification of the size of the sign and we deal with signs a lot and having to deal with them repeatedly, I don't think that's necessarily a good incentive. That said, I'm not, because I didn't hear it a couple months ago, I'm actually probably going to support reopening it just because I haven't considered it, so...
That's fair.
Does, I don't know if this is procedural, procedural question for Glenna, but does the applicant get a chance to make a case or not?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
For example...
So I kind of apologize.
He can demonstrate what facts there are that may or may not support the change of circumstances. So if he has new information to provide, that would always be the burden of the applicant.
Right. So I just think before you go and make a motion...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was a little ahead of myself on that. Yeah, because I was saying it's just up to us, Bert's got this in front of us and so...
No, it would be, the applicant could present on that.
All right. Can you pass that around to...
The decision in order or the bylaws?
Yeah, the decision in order. No, not the bylaws.
All right. So there's no other questions for Bert. We can go ahead and have the applicant come up.
I can stand here and block him.
Bert, you make a good blocker.
Alexander Gigerich, Nelson Construction and Development. I will save any arguments as to why the variance should be allowed and focus only on the historic aspects to be heard for that vote. So previously, the representative here was the sign company. They were not able to comment or relate, really articulate anything related to historic and so the board did not get a fully informed opinion at that time in order to make that judgment. The only thing I would say, and I'm empathetic to Nathan's point about changing size and setting precedent, I think the qualitative differences here, so the quantitative differences are the change in sign size. It's 24% less in width and about the same less in height overall. It ends up being almost 50% less. But the other key thing here, this architectural element, the scrim, perforated metal scrim, actually relates to the history of the Mies building, which the Catholic Diocese owns, and Mies being Mies van der Rohe, the architect. And so before the sign... Before the sign conflicted with that architectural metal scrim and called extra attention to it as far as going outside the boundaries of that window box, calling more attention to it probably feeding into maybe relating to the historic. The new design is not only smaller, and I'm here on behalf of our tenant, we own the building, but it's not only smaller, it's also within the confines and architecturally is given a very different treatment. So our argument is not only quantitative around the sizing, it's also qualitative around the architectural treatment and how that relates to the building next door. So with that explanation, all I would ask is the opportunity to be heard, to articulate those things that the sign company could not last time as well.
Okay. All right. Anybody else here speaking in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? If none, we'll close public portion, go to board deliberation.
I think he gave me a good argument because it was turned down because of the historic aspect of the building, it would detract from it. And he's made an argument that they have minimized that effect on the building, that we should rehear the case.
I was here last month and I believe that it was clearly presented of the historic architecture nature of the building. Van der Rohe was mentioned. I'm not saying the sign guy was an architectural historian, but many of us are familiar with the architectural history of Des Moines and that was very clearly presented. In fact, it was clearly presented, the design of the building, as you just mentioned, the new building was designed to reflect and complement the existing Mies building, the Southwest Iowa Diocese building. And your own picture shows that without a sign on that building, the two do complement, the architecture, the style, the smaller bottom floor and then the flare out for the upper floors. Very austere, austere kind of steel design. And then blap, we're popping a sign on third floor. So I don't think anything has changed from before. It's a little smaller, but it's still a third-floor sign on an east facade next to this. I don't see what's different here besides a little minor scale difference.
Didn't you vote for it?
No.
Oh. I must have misread that.
I thought you voted for it.
I thought you did vote for it.
If you look at what...
I mean, that, that document seems to indicate that you did. That's, that's neither here, I don't know that necessarily matters, but...
You're told to change your mind.
I, yeah.
Well, and regardless. The proposal's still the same as it was before.
But we're just, we're just deciding, yeah, whether it's, it's different enough that we'll come back. And again, one of the elements for me personally, because I wasn't here however many months ago, is that I didn't have a chance to consider it and I'm interested in opining, so I'm going to be in favor for that reason. But also to Lynn's point, I think he does make a decent case that this is not just, they address the architectural component of it by minimizing so it doesn't get into the building but is limited to the window. And I think that's, that's probably a component that doesn't come up very often and I think that's a reason enough to hear it today. So I'd move that we hear the reconsideration today.
I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion, a second to reconsider. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Two. Okay. All right. So that motion fails. So...
It's a motion to decide whether they are going to consider the relief. The applicant has to first prove that they have met the criteria to be reheard within two years. The board has found that they did not. I mean, by, by...
I thought it was just a majority.
No, I don't believe so.
It's only if there's a, yeah...
Every appeal or application for variation or modification shall be disallowed unless the concurring vote of four members or of the board shall favor the appeal or application.
Yeah. All right. So that takes care of that one.
This is the conditions and the condition...
Can I just ask a procedural question? I guess if that's Glenna's interpretation, is there anyone else we can consult on this so that we don't...
She is our legal counsel. If you don't agree with the board's decision, you can file in District Court within 30 days.
Correct. Okay. Can you restate why you believe that opinion, Glenna?
Sure. So there's a, there are, you know what, I am going to come down and put something on the screen.
Yeah, even better.
I think that's the easiest.
Even better.
For starters, this is Article 6, which talks about new applications. Bert showed that earlier. These are the examples of the facts and circumstances that can be presented to pursuant to the board rules. Those are examples of what would constitute meeting the burden to reconsider. There is nothing in this section that puts a lower bar, so I know that Eric referenced it being a majority. There is nothing in this section that changes the board's rules in terms of voting. So I'm sorry, Eric, but I think that was an error. And again, what I just read, Alexander, what I just read from, I can find it. Number two, which you can't really see. Every appeal or application for variation or modification shall be disallowed unless the concurring vote of four members of the board shall favor the appeal or application. So those are the board rules, which I can provide you a copy of separately if you'd like.
And the reason you believe that applies to also vote to be reheard is because there's nothing else saying, saying that's differently treated?
Correct.
So knowing that that's an interpretation...
I, I think for purposes of this meeting, if you and I want to discuss it, I really don't have time after this meeting. I can tomorrow with you, but I don't think that we should hold up the rest of the meeting because the hearing is closed.
Yeah. The board's already made a decision, so it's not open for reinterpretation by the board. So therefore...
So the board couldn't reconsider and re-vote knowing that it's a gray enough area to reopen up the hearing again?
No.
Okay.
So again, as my preamble stated, if you want to sit down and talk with Glenna, you can, but if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief within the Polk County District Court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision in order.
Do you want...
I'd like to communicate, because there's not, I don't want Bert to over it.
Okay. So, moving on.
And you're going to send a concise to Bert?
I don't have that.
Yeah, you do. So it's our...
All right. That'll bring us to item 17, an exception and variance request at 133 Hughes Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, as the board, item number 17 is a series of appeals that would allow for retention of an off-street parking lot that was constructed, that was not in accordance with the approved site plan. The subject property is located...
That's all right. Eventually the sun will...
Is located around the cul-de-sac of Hughes Avenue. It is comprised of six duplex structures and then there's an off-street parking lot here to the, at the northwest corner of the property. If the property looks familiar, it's because it was actually before this board back in 2016, at which time they were granted a series of appeals. And again, just a little different from the last one, in this case, these appeals were granted, plus it's already been over two years, so... After that was approved, the applicant had a site plan, I'm sorry, had a site plan done that complied with that decision in order and it provided the minimum number of off-street parking spaces. And it did obtain those variances to the paving setbacks and they also got variance for the screening. So this again is the approved site plan, however, when it was built, it was not in accordance with the site plan at all. In fact, they built it like this, which is deficient, one parking space, they were required to provide at least 12 spaces and they were required to provide a greater setback from this front property line. As you can see, the site plan is also deficient, the maneuvering for these parking spaces and these parking spaces don't meet our minimum stall width or stall depth. So they're needing an entirely new series of appeals that would allow them to retain this parking lot as it was currently built. And again, there was a site plan approved where they, that they should have complied with, but they didn't, so... There's some photos. This shows that parking lot, you can see it was built right up to the front property lines, they don't have a curb around it as required. You can see the parking, the vehicles are just kind of parked haphazardly throughout the site. This revised sketch that they submitted showed three spaces right here, but you can see that the cars aren't following that revised sketch either.
Are there any marked spaces from what you can tell?
It doesn't look like there's any marked spaces here. And again, it looks like they do have the curb along the west edge, but not along the other edges. And then we did get a few cards back, three in opposition, one in support. Staff doesn't believe that they've met the criteria necessary for granting the variances. We feel that they should be held to the previously approved docket, which required or allowed them, I guess, to construct this parking lot here. We feel that it's reasonable to require them to provide at least 12 off-street parking spaces since there are currently 12 dwelling units in this development. We feel it's appropriate to have at least 12 off-street parking spaces. And also, we recommend denial of the variance to the paving setback. We feel that they should provide at least some paving setback so there's an opportunity to provide some landscaping in between the sidewalk and the parking lot. So again, we have recommended denial of the appeals requested at this time, so... Any questions?
Questions from the board? Bert, did, with the approved site plan, would that have required any plantings to go with the required green space?
Yeah, they were...
On the frontage?
Yeah, the site plan would have been held to the...
So it'd reference it with a number or something? It wouldn't necessarily, the plantings don't show.
Right. And they were able to count the trees within this wooded ravine in order to meet their minimum required planting requirements, so...
So on the frontage by the driveway, they wouldn't have had to put in extra trees?
They would have probably had to put in some.
Some shrubs or something.
They would have had to put in grass for sure.
And to the best of your knowledge, there's no other plantings besides any grass?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it from the photos.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant, it's your turn.
I'll block for Ed too.
Thank you for your patience in waiting today. Thank you for your patience in waiting today.
I'm Edward Keiker from Keiker Johnson Architecture. We were the authors of the site plan that didn't get built. And we're here today because our firm failed to do a good job of getting accurate measurements before we made that first site plan, and our, our measurements were wrong from the beginning, and the buildable area is not large enough to support 11 standard-sized parking spaces and one handicap space. And the ravine running across the property is the, is the problem that limits the area. We have shown on the revised site plan parking stalls that are eight foot, six inch width, which are permitted by the zoning code. I saw earlier today where somebody is proposing eight-foot stalls. All of ours are at least eight foot six, some are as much as nine foot wide. When I first visited the site after I learned about this, I saw every size of vehicle from compacts to double cab trucks. Some are longer, there are some longer stalls which will accommodate the larger trucks, and there are some smaller stalls which will obviously accommodate smaller vehicles. The setback in front, we can, we can get that back by cutting out some of the concrete that has been poured clear up to the sidewalk, and that will give us some room to get the plantings back in there. Again, our initial measurements were wrong. The staff dismissed four areas of appeal. The first is the exception for 11 rather than 12 parking stalls. We can't address that with what we've done. Second, 2.5 feet less than the required parking stall. Again, I point to the zoning code where the eight foot five is permitted for four-hour or longer parking. Third, the front yard setback, except for a small area along the driveway. The front yard setback, the 2.67, is maintained, or will be maintained when we cut back the, the, cut back the new concrete. And fourth, the exception for the one foot of minimum 24-foot maneuvering. This only occurs at a couple of places, maybe only one. So, mostly, it boils down to the number of stalls. We have 11, so we're asking the board to approve the lot as it has been built and as presented by the revised site plan. And I will answer questions now.
Questions for Edward?
What, what is the area to the, I don't know what direction we're looking, the south of the handicap area? That's paved, correct? That's just like the handicap exit?
Yes.
Spot?
Yeah, hatched for no parking.
Yes.
Okay, on the picture they showed, they showed four people parked where spots one, two, and three are. So, someone takes spot four, you're reducing the spots because somebody obviously can't get into eight or nine or something because of maneuvering. So, obviously, they're not using the parking plan that you have there, and then I, I just kind of questioned when you found out your measurements were wrong, you just went ahead and did it?
Well, I wasn't in charge of doing it.
Okay, good. So-
To her first question, are there, are there lines painted on there now?
No.
Okay, and so you're proposing that you will be painting lines on there?
Yeah, and the new, the new site plan has that.
Okay.
And then adding curbing, I heard curbing mentioned a time or two, that there's additional curbing that-
Yes.
Need to be, okay.
So, Edward, you gave them the original site plan, which you signed off on as a registered architect with your number, right? And-
With errors.
Well, but, but you gave them that plan, but they didn't follow your plan anyway. Why is that? Did they say there were errors in it?
We talked about it, and I said, well, if you can't do what I want you to do, you do what you want to do.
Well, could you have said, we should call the city immediately?
No, I didn't do that.
And have this reviewed, and I'm not trying to beat you up on it.
No, but you should.
And I'm not going to ask you what your errors are, but as a registered architect, if you found your benchmarks and found all your points and did your surveying, I don't know what error you made.
That's the problem, we did our own surveying.
Okay, okay, but at the end of the day, you gave them the site plan, and they went off on their own and poured it anyway.
Yeah, and they got the 11 on it.
Okay, so for those at home, that's a lesson. If you think something's changing from what's approved, you better call the city. So, so you're asking for forgiveness first and then permission second here, huh? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, alright, any other questions for Edward? Okay, thank you, sir, we'll check back with you in a bit. Anybody here to speak in support? Okay.
My name's Lorraine Cosmo, and I'm the owner of Mac Corporation, and I acquired the property a little over two years ago. So, when this originally came before the board, I didn't have any interest or anything to do with anything that happened.
Was the paving already in place then when you bought it?
The paving's not in place.
This new paving, it was not?
It was not, and I'll just explain to you how this at all happened.
Okay.
So, I hired a concrete individual to come out and, and concrete at the parking lot. He got out there, he called me, he's like, this will not work. He said, you're going to be 10 to 15 feet into the ravine in order to make this lot work. So, my concrete gentleman actually called Mr. Keiker, and he told him to lay it in the, the original footprint of what we could do, as large as we could make it, and that's what we did.
The original footprint before you'd come to the Board of Adjustment before?
The original footprint of the parking lot, which is all that will fit there.
Back in the day.
Yeah, I've got pictures to show that there, we have on each corner side of that parking lot, we have between four to six feet before we hit the ravine.
Yep.
We took out a few trees, but we can't take any more out, because if we take any more out, then it's gonna, the ravine's not going to be safe, because we're literally four feet from where it drops 15 foot off.
Right.
So, as far as the way that these guys are parking right now, it's because there's no direction, because once I started talking with Mr. Keiker and Mr. Young Dunn down at the city, I mean, I've never done anything like this before, this is my first, first rodeo on something like this, in trying to get the new one approved, then I was told that we had to come to the zoning board to do that. So, that's how we kind of ended up where we are. There are no lines painted, they'll, they'll park accordingly. We also have 12 spots on the city circle where they also park as well. But we literally have no space to expand this parking lot at all, and I've got pictures and measurements and everything to show how exactly close we are to it.
Yeah.
So, to put it, the way that it was put in is the absolute maximum space that we can get, and I'm willing to take out, we, we, we did concrete up to the front just for the simple fact, we were trying to get our 12 spots, because that was important for our tenants to be able to park. But I'm willing to take out a section of that and put some, some bushes in there and stuff like that. There is a curb all the way around the lot, and then we are also building up the ravine in the back for drainage purposes, but we halted and did not complete it until we know what we need to do to complete it.
And hindsight's 20/20, but when things were going off the rails, then that would have been the time, hey, we were in front of the city on this, we had approval this way, if it's wrong, we need to come back to the city and ask.
Yeah, and I had bad direction.
Okay, okay.
When it came to that.
Yeah, and sometimes we can't fix all that, that's what civil issues are for, to deal with, so, mm-hmm, okay.
So, was this disclosed to you at all before, so when you bought the property, the lot was not paved yet?
Correct.
They didn't disclose to you that the lot wouldn't fit the way they had it agreed to?
They were not aware. When I bought the property-
Well, they didn't disclose, they must have been aware, because-
No, they gave, when I bought the property from, from the Fritzels, they gave me the plan, they told me what needed to be done, and then-
Okay.
The plan was off, is what you're saying.
The, the plan that had been, that had been approved by our board.
Right, but I don't believe that, that they were aware, they're actually relatives of mine, so they wouldn't have done, put me in this position if they were, would have known.
Okay, alright, any other questions? Okay, alright, thank you very much. Anybody else to speak in support of the applicant's request? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff?
Yeah, sorry.
Nope, jump right in.
Um, can you put up the, the map of like the whole, no, the, the first map that went up, or yeah, this? So, there is street parking there.
Is, is that the as-built as it is? Oh, there's street parking.
It is.
Because-
Whether or not they're allowed to do head-in parking like that, when I did the site visit, there was probably eight vehicles all with head-in parking there.
How was this approved eons ago, just out of curiosity? Was there like a gravel lot back in the day for parking, or?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, intriguing.
But there are, there are a couple of spots, even if you're not doing head-in.
Right.
There's enough space to do parallel.
To do probably, if you count all the way to South West Second Avenue, you could probably fit at least a dozen cars on the street.
Okay. And, and could you go back to the, the, just the parking lot area? This section, she volunteered that they could take out some of this area. I assume the area that we were requiring before, and I don't actually remember this, was it on the consent agenda?
It's funny, I, I don't really remember.
Yeah, it was in 2016, it was a 6-0 vote.
Yeah.
I signed the order, so I was here.
Yeah, it was. The, um, would, would the space come out of what the board or the staff was imagining before, it would come out of both the first spot there and the handicap kind of access area?
Well, it could probably come out of this triangular area here. I don't know if the ADA requirements would allow them to remove some of this, they would need at least, they need an eight-foot wide van accessible spot, plus eight feet of clearance here.
Yeah, I can't read.
Why wouldn't you have the ADA spot closer to where the residents are instead of on the far side of the lot? Isn't that something ADA takes into account, is having it proximity?
Yeah, it's supposed to be as close as possible, correct.
Right, right, okay, alright, we've, we've closed the hearing, sorry. So, staff's recommendation is denial, so if we want to look at doing anything else here, like preserving some setbacks or making modifications, we'd have to be looking at granting a whole bunch of exceptions yet on width of spaces, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Right, in order to allow this layout here, you just have to approve the appeals as requested.
Okay, because this is the drawing they gave you and developed their appeals from this drawing.
Yeah, and staff believe there are other, you know, maybe they can only, because of this ravine and the reality of, you know, we don't really want them pushing dirt to fill in the ravine in order to have a larger space, we did feel that there were other spots throughout the site where they could add off-street parking, maybe it didn't all have to be within this one location, maybe they could do a spot, providing of it here, and then-
They're allowed to run driveways.
Right, they can do the driveways.
So, we're really only talking a difference of one parking space less than what was approved before.
Right.
So, this shouldn't have to be a big deal to-
Right.
Get this arranged and still meet our size.
Less of a setback along the front property line than before.
But if we wanted to keep that-
But that, but that request, I mean, we'd already given a variance of 27-plus feet out of the 30 that was required.
Yeah.
It's only 2.6.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, we're not, we're not quite to Board deliberation, but-
Right, right, yeah, just to get the feel for it here, okay, alright. Okay, alright, so, we're done with staff questions, alright, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation.
I mean, I came in, I, I was skeptical of what type of justification would be given here, but that said, the, the requests they're making actually, except for the variance request, I suppose, all the other exception requests are pretty reasonable, in my opinion, given the fact that they're on a, like, going over a ravine, so, and, and the fact that they've got additional parking that is available to their tenants, and really right in front of their property and not in front of anybody else's property, right? It's almost, when people, other people can park there, it's not convenient to anybody else. So, those things would, I mean, I, I would give them even, you know, if, if they wanted to, if, if we're more concerned about the depth and the width and the maneuvering space, then maybe we rejigger it to say only 10 spots or something, you know? You know, the, the variance thing, we've given it once, so it's-
Is it eroding away?
Yeah, yeah, but, but a 30-foot would, would end up being impossible, essentially. Well, no, that's not true, because to Eric's point, they could all, they could put driveways in front of each of them.
Well, two, two family drawings do a lot of parking in the front area.
Right, yeah. Bert, can, can you put their as-built up there? Yeah, this is kind of a train wreck all the way around. It appears we've got a professional who's as honest as they get that made a huge mistake. I give that some credibility, but not fully. We've got a property owner, there were plenty of people who could have said, wait a minute, this ain't working. I'd at a minimum want to make sure that we've got some setback from the street and some slightly improved landscaping. We need to minimize our parking lots and residential areas, and-
That seems to me to be the big difference from what was approved before, really.
Yes.
When it comes down to, I mean, there may be an extra space or two, but, but really, functionally, I don't, I don't know that that has a big impact on the, this area.
And I'd like to keep the size of the parking spaces consistent with the code and maneuvering area consistent, so if we have fewer spaces to grant a variance for, then fine. It's just, she's got fewer spaces then, but I want to make sure the spaces they do have are usable and workable within the ordinance.
Can we just point out that we only notice for an exception of one space less than the required-
Yes, so we'd have to figure out what it is we want to grant.
Right.
Especially if we want a little if, we want maybe, you know, a, a 10-foot green space between the, between the property line-
So, we couldn't grant an exception of two, is what you're saying?
We'd have to continue it to next month so we can mail a new notice.
Figure out, right.
How wide is spot number eight at the front to get in there? It looks awful narrow.
Yeah, as far as the renotice, that would have to be up to the applicant and what they want to do, or would it be up to what the board says we need to do? Or, or do we just scrap the whole thing and you go back and talk to them?
If it, if the board would prefer to grant an exception of, say, three less than the required 12-
Up to, yeah, so long as-
As they remove spaces one and maybe four, and then slide the ADA compliance space that way, so that way you have the eight-foot setback here.
Eight-foot, okay.
But, then that would require the renotice.
Subject to what you all think, I want to record, play back that last 30 seconds of what you just said.
What would it require a renotice?
So, because the relief granted is-
It's substantially-
Is better or bigger than the relief that was given notice to the neighbors. It would, we would need to delay the, the hearing.
Yeah, and they may have to pay a subsequent fee for additional postage, but-
They would, they would have to pay the notification.
But they don't have to pay a refiling.
Right, we wouldn't charge the 300.
And the cars are already parking there, this isn't, this isn't going to upset the apple cart terribly. Yeah, but if there's a renotice, do we give the hint as what that should be, or, or is from our discussion right now?
I think, I think staff could, based on the discussion, could just talk to the applicant and see what would be appropriate in the notification.
Unless the board wants to grant the requested appeals, of course.
Relief as stated.
So, we could certainly see if the board wants to do that. If not, we might say we want to remand you all to, what's that called, between two parties, arbitration? And you can come back next month with something that's maybe a little more palatable, and plenty of hints were given as what that might be, right? Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to grant the requested exceptions and variance? We can certainly start with that.
No.
Usually, you don't have to say no, you don't want- Usually don't have to say no, you don't want to make a motion. Okay, so if there is no motion, does that fail by itself?
Can we, well, we can move to continue it, can we do that on our own, or does the applicant, okay?
The board always has the ability to.
Okay, so I'll move to continue it.
I'll second. Okay, yeah, so we've got a motion to continue this to the next hearing, motion by Nathan, second by Cindy, with the understanding that the two parties can have a discussion and see if they can come up with maybe something more palatable to both sides, especially based on some of the discussion the board had. Sound okay? All right, all those in favor, yeah?
One of the direction, so would you like the applicant to figure out how many parking spaces they could provide that, where those spaces have at least nine feet of width and 17 feet of depth?
I still think they should be, at least me, I think they should be consistently sized because they said it themselves. Oh, we've got big vehicles and little ones, so I certainly don't want smaller spaces. Cause we're going to require them to be marked, so we need to have sufficiently sized space.
At the same time, I think the width is probably more important than the depth, given the weird shape of it.
Right.
Right, like.
But then you get in the maneuvering area too, to preserve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for consistency's sake.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we don't all agree on everything, Bert, so.
We're darn close.
Nor should you, because you're not voting on this.
We're just putting a lot of ideas out there.
That's true.
Okay, all right, so we've got, uh, do we have then an official motion for the continuance to next month? You and second by Cindy, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries 6-0, okay.
We're really filling up next month already.
Yes.
Bring a lunch?
5:30.
Again, this pays well, so that's why we do it.
Yeah.
Okay, item 18, a variance request at 28649.
I don't know if you, there's a few communications here, do you want me to divide them onto each side?
Either way. Put a fast reader.
That'll be fun. You're the blocker now? Are you just freaking out, Eric, by shadowing him?
So this is a irregular-shaped property on 49th Street, south of Grand Avenue. I don't know if you're familiar, there's actually a planned unit development at the end. A little bit newer era of development to the south. But this is kind of a long block in the neighborhood. And again, I, sometimes I wish I had the bigger context like Mel mentioned earlier, but I'm not able to show you that right now. Uh, the, the primary dwelling that's there on the property currently shown here. This is kind of showing in between the two property, there's a property to the south. What the applicant is proposing is a 19, I believe a 1980 square foot, um, 1940 square foot building next to their pool, it would be a pool house, it would have other recreational function to it. They're showing it at 10 feet from the north property line, and right now, north is to the right. I'll zoom out here so we can see. So they did put a north arrow on their sketch. There's motor court in the front, so I don't believe they're going to be driving back to any of this. This is all strictly pertaining to the pool area in the back, where the property notches a little bit to the north. Even the footprint of the structure is going to be somewhat irregular as well. They did provide architectural designs as well, so you can see, this is what faces, the south faces the pool. This would be the north that would face the neighbors to the north, and then the east elevation. This is what you would see from the back side of the house that's there now. And this is the, this is actually, I believe, the veranda area right here. And then they did also provide a floor plate, floor plan. So this shows, and they'll have, there'd be another drawing here to show you kind of some depth, but this is a deeper, higher ceiling area. This is more of the actual functional portion of the pool house, and I believe there's mechanical area below this area. Uh, so this is all open ceiling that would have height, cause it's, it actually has depth into the ground below grade, so it actually, even though there would only go 17 feet high with the, the building off of grade, the gym would be sunk into the ground so that the clearance on the ceiling would be higher. So they'd be able to have chute baskets and whatnot in there, and I believe that's part of their intent. This is a cross-section to kind of show that. So you have a floor deck here coming off towards the pool with the outside space, the inside space, and then the gym would have that full height with grade being right here, so you get a sense of how, how high the ceiling would be on the interior space. This is bringing about the need for variance over the total square footage. Uh, because it's still under an acre-sized lot, they're still limited to a maximum of 1,000 square feet of accessory structure. So the total, total, uh, area that this would occupy is 1,940, so that puts it at 940 over the, the, uh, total they would be allowed, kicking it into the variance provision. The, from the character perspective, the height of it isn't going to be any greater visibility-wise to surrounding properties than the, the maximum height on an accessory structure, which would be 17. So from the scale perspective, a lot of this is below grade. Um, they, they're proposing to go to great expense to be able to do that, of course, and this is all architecturally designed with a character that would be in compatibility with the architectural elements of the surrounding properties and the existing properties. So from that perspective, staff isn't concerned about it meeting the character of the neighborhood. It's not any closer than other accessory structures would be allowed to be of a height next to neighbors in the backyard. So, uh, in terms of being an undue impact from that standpoint, I don't, staff isn't concerned about that. We do not believe this, in its, just by its very nature, is of a unnecessary hardship condition, though. So staff is not able to come to the conclusion that this meets the test for variance and, uh, would only support a total of 1,500 square feet for the structure, subject to the conditions proposed, one through five, in the staff report. This would obviously cause redesign of the, what's being proposed here, but still hopefully could achieve the same intent overall. So right now, staff would only support amended appeal to the, to the exception of 500 square feet over the 1,000 maximum in the rear yard. And that would be subject to the substantial conformance of the character of those designs that you've already seen. That it be limited to the 17 feet in height above grade. Uh, any structure shall be constructed in compliance with all applicable building codes, uh, shall not be used as an accessory dwelling unit, and may not be used in association with any home-based business unless they come back to the board to ask for such special consideration. Any questions?
Can you put the picture back up of the neighborhood? Just, a lot of neighbors commented about.
Yeah, and then I'll show you the consent.
How obtrusive this is going to look, I'm just trying to get, do you have the aerial work?
Yeah, there, that one. So this is, yeah, so they have a neighboring, you know, the neighboring properties to the north are essentially in line. The depth of the rear yard on this is not quite the same as going further north possibly. Uh, they're a little deeper than to the south, but south is a larger parcel. Everything to the west of them is much deeper lots.
Right.
You know, you see a lot of pools in those properties.
Eric, a lot of the cards also talked about that, um, people like their forests and, and nature, and this is going to rip all that out. Um, is there a requirement in the city ordinance that if certain amounts of trees are removed on a residential property, they have to be replaced?
There's not a mitigation requirement applied to single-family dwellings.
There is, maybe on commercial or.
If we were doing a subdivision plot of new single-family parcels, yes, but individually as they exist, no.
And I can't quite tell from this picture, I know it's early spring, so everything's not leafed out, but it doesn't look like, it looks like there's a lot of open area in the backyard already. I can't quite tell.
Yeah, and I don't, we don't have great photos, maybe the applicant can shed light on that a little bit, but.
And with what they're proposing, as well as what your counter-proposal is, where it would sit on the property doesn't need any exceptions, as an accessory building, it.
No, it can be two feet.
Yeah, okay, and they're saying what, five or plus? Okay, all right.
And since it's not a garage, you're not measuring the height of it from the deck of a garage, it's sunk, sunk below grade.
I got you.
Is this more, this is going to be primarily roof then?
Yes.
There's not concrete around it, cause some people were talking more commenting about runoff too.
Well, and I, this doesn't really show any earthwork, it would have to go, you know, if there's retaining wall systems, that would have to be implemented.
That all has to be approved through engineering with the building permit.
It isn't giving us that detail, so, you know, you're getting pretty straight elevations based on a grade line.
And I'm not.
But not any sense of how that relates to the terrain.
And that's just something that would be addressed in part of the.
Right.
Permit, okay.
Yeah, if they get anything that's of, of, of height of four feet or a system of terraces that are more than four feet in height, they would have to get structural design reviewed by our permit and development center.
Okay.
Okay, all right, anything else for Eric?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Oh, yeah, yeah, do you have your, yeah, consent map? All right, so applicant or representative of the applicant, you get to go first. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Brian Bosin, I live at 28649th Street, along with my wife, Betsy Elizabeth. I am the father of three active boys. Uh, we live in a great neighborhood, uh, we built our home in 2010 on the street, trying to keep it, maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and the character of the street, so we built a, as you can see, a very traditional home. Uh, this structure would be in line with that as well. So, um, as I see as this went out, um, of that 1,940 square feet, actually, um, 440 square feet is a covered patio. So the actual enclosed area is only 1,500 square feet. So in working with Ian Donovan, we were a little bit surprised that it actually needed an exception, so maybe that's, um, with the covered patio, that maybe is what pushes over the square footage. In doing this, um, we're with, with our children, unfortunately, our street, as great as it is and as quaint as it is, we do not have sidewalks. And, um, while we live in a great neighborhood, uh, some of our neighbors drive a little bit faster and we live on the bottom of a hill. So with three active boys, um, running around, playing all sports, um, and we have the good fortune of having the ability to do this, we thought we'd put in a, a little gym space for them. Uh, you saw in the initial plans that, um, there was a proposed pool, that's down the road. Um, right now, we're just first and foremost thinking about the kids, we understand, we do live in Iowa. Uh, I, I'm not necessarily for the pool, but there's other people in our house. In, in hearing, um, some of the neighbors, um, and in one of the, the pictures that I saw, um, if you take a look at this, um, it does not, um, uh, put in perspective that this area, yes, you are accurate, it is green space primarily, um, so when we talk about forestry and taking down trees, there would not be a lot of doing that. Same as when we built the home in 2010, we, the reason we live in this neighborhood is because of the trees and because of the, the character. Um, we will absolutely maintain that. The other thing is, that you don't see is, um, if you were to measure the back of our property line to our existing neighbors, this right here is 175 feet. The other thing is if you take a look at the topography and the elevation, from the back of this garage here, from this neighbor to the back of our property line, that's a decrease of 25 feet. Uh, so it is, from our neighbors' perspective, uh, we weighed, do we do it detached or do we do it attached? And we can certainly do it attached, and we don't have to be here, it'd be a larger structure and it would certainly be more obtrusive to our neighbors, and frankly, for us, when we can do that. We can attach it to, and we did site plans, attach it to the northwest corner of the house, and we can just go down, and it's going to be a, it's going to be a taller structure. Or we could do it as a detached and hide it in this valley and keep it in among the trees. So if I show this here, this is an aerial view of what it'll essentially look like. So you think with a gym space, you think you're going to have this big barn in the back of your yard, that is absolutely not the case. We talked about the roof height, 17 feet, so it's going to be a one-story, uh, structure. We are going to build, build down to do the gym space for the kids. The other thing is if you take this T, the lion's share of that T is the, is the covered patio. So really, that's the 440 additional square feet. Now, from our neighbors' perspective, we live in the neighborhood as well and want to be good neighbors. Um, this is what it looks like. So the first people that I think of, that I see here in the audience are Pete and Nancy Rhines, who live right next door to us. What does this look like for them? And so if you took an aerial view, the only thing you would see is if the variance was approved on a covered patio, would be the covered patio, because it is so, so, it is so wooded with, uh, trees and brush. If you take a look from 51st Street and the neighbors, there's what you would see from 51st Street, if you were, if you were 3,000 feet up. And then, I think from other neighbors on our street that expressed some concerns, so the site ends on 22049th Street, they're not even going to see the structure. From 51st Street, another, they, they will not even see the structure. And then another view from 51st Street, um, wherein in fact, um, if you take a look, they will not see the structure as well. The other thing is just looking, kind of the integrity of the, the backyard. Most of our neighbors, the reason why we acquired this was for a liability issue and then cleanliness. Um, one, having three kids playing in the woods, uh, we maintained the green space from a neighbor that was directly to the, to the west of us, um, and then worked with a neighbor that was to the northwest of us, and there was a lot of downed trees and brush that they really even have difficulty getting to the eastern end of their, their lot. So in making this use space, giving our neighborhood, giving the number of kids that we have, this will be used for personal use only, so this will not be a business, I do have a day job. But this will be merely for the benefit of our children and the neighborhood kids. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Brian?
I have one, you know, all of the views here are when the trees are totally full, and you discuss where, you know, that every, nobody will see it. What will they see when the trees do not have the leaves on it?
Yeah, certainly, so, so for the, if you think, it's going to be the neighbors directly to the, to the west of us that are behind us, which is the adjacent lots, um, that's where it was important to show the distance of 175 feet. They, they may see the top of the roof line, but again, if they're on their second floor, they will see the roof line, but from ground level, it's going to be very difficult, cause it's going to be down approximately 25 feet from their grade level. Yep, and if you take a look at the top of the roof line, if they're just standing on their lot, that's an additional eight feet below, so the top of the roof line is not even going to be at their grade level. so the top of the roofline is not even gonna be at their grade level, the way that this, the topography of the land is. Here is, I, I did submit these, and I'll, but here is, here's essentially a view, that's what it looks like to the west. So, that's currently, a few months ago, those, those are our neighbors to the west, that's what they see, that's what we see, we don't even see their homes. This is, this is to the north. And then, this is, this is to the south.
So, your building would sit in the grassy areas in each of those three photos?
Yeah, so, beyond our property line, there are more trees as well.
Brian, there, there are a lot of cards submitted, and I'm assuming there's some people in the audience here too with concerns. One of the things I saw on the cards was, you bought this extra property to do this, was your lot always kinda shaped like that? Or did you buy some land from someone else?
We did, we purchased an adjacent property, and that was really...
That from Pete and Nancy, or was it from those others behind you?
Behind us too, on the west. One of the neighbors, I don't believe, young couple, they don't, they no longer live there. And then, it's the, the gal to the northwest of us.
So, those lots were even deeper before?
They were deeper.
And you bought from each of them, what, maybe fifty, seventy-five feet?
Yeah, forty feet, the back forty.
Okay.
So, so, the intent was not to do this, and in fact, I'm, I'm on the fence. No, but it is, it is, there was not a plan, but obviously, you start thinking, what does it look like in building it for the future, so that you don't have to create havoc and do things over and over again.
Okay. One of the biggest concerns that I, well, there'd be two concerns that, that I would have, an accessory structure for this kinda use, we have seen those before. But with Pete and Nancy being so close, and them looking out there, kinda the backside of their house to their backyard, you mentioned there's, there's trees and brush that already would kind of shield that, is that their trees and brush, or your trees and brush?
Uh, primarily ours on our property.
Okay, and would your intent be to leave those there?
Around the existing surrounding border, yeah, so we're not gonna take, we're gonna keep as many trees up as we possibly can. I believe there's only two trees that are in the center of this property that would need to come down for this project.
Because otherwise, you don't have a row of like planted evergreens or a six-foot wood fence.
With all due, yeah, with all due respect, you know, they've, they've been great neighbors, but we have planted arborvitas, just to kind of keep that privacy, we plan on doing the same thing.
Okay.
I grew up with a little bit of a landscaping background, so we wanna keep it kinda tidy.
And remind me with the Latin, those are what in layman's terms?
What's that?
The arborvitas?
Oh man, you're, you're out of my league here.
No, 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 why, I mean, what, is, is it an evergreen, is it a, it's a vertical evergreen?
It's a, it's a skinny evergreen that will grow to anywhere in, from twelve to twenty feet inside.
So, I know what they look like?
Yes, yep, but they're, they're, they're a good landscaping piece that it keeps, that is, that is aesthetically pleasing, but also acts as a privacy wall.
Right, so you'd be planning to have those between your new structure and their west side view?
It would be, they would be, they would be to the east.
Well, yeah, they're, they're to the east, but they would look west.
Correct, correct.
Okay, alright. Staff is obviously recommending roughly five hundred and forty square feet less at the exception level. If we granted it at the exception level, would you probably still do the project, or would that be too small and it's off the table?
Yeah, so, I, I think we'll, we'll have to look to see to revisit the plan, but probably what that changes to is that covered patio, is, now, and this is a question, is that considered?
Yeah, it's a, it's a structure that requires building code requirements for both footings and roofing, and so... Yeah.
The fact that it's not enclosed by walls.
Right, yeah.
So, this was just a canopy on its own, it would still be considered?
So, in that case, then, then yes, the project could get done, but then we'd act, that would do like a pergola.
You'd, you'd make that pat, covered patio smaller than, or change it?
Or, or we would not do a covered patio, we would, we would not do a covered patio.
Pergolas require building permits, but I don't know if they count to your square footage, right?
I don't think they're...
They're treated differently.
Yeah, okay. Right.
I mean, they do provide shape, but they don't have a roof structure.
So, if we like limited you to the exception level, you'd, you'd bump it out to the fifteen forty, but have it all enclosed for gym and enjoyment space then?
Correct, it'd have to, it'd have to be, just pure functionality.
I got you, okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Alright, okay. Anybody else to speak in support? We've got up to five minutes, just need your name and address.
My name's Randy Milder, I'm the architectural designer in the project, and my address is thirty ninety-four, one hundred and fourth Street in Urbendale.
Cool.
And I know there was a little bit of a question about the grade where this building sits. Where it would sit is pretty flat, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to look at that spot. It just seems like it's a little bit more in harmony with that area in the backyard. We looked at potentially adding art to the back of the house, but this just seemed to be a better fit.
Cool.
As far as the, I just wanted to show here the footprint. This area right here is the fifteen hundred square feet. So, that part would most likely stay, and then this area of the covered veranda is that additional four hundred and some square feet that would go away. But, you know, when I've driven through the neighborhood a couple of times to visit the site, it always seemed like cars were, you know, going at a pretty, you know, fast pace, especially for a road that's a cul-de-sac and doesn't go anywhere. There's actually two neighbors along the road that actually have little signs out that tell people to slow down, that there's kids playing. So, I think the Bosins are just trying to find a nice, nice safe spot for their kids and other kids in the neighborhood to play. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Anybody else here to speak in support? Okay. It's up to you guys how you wanna do this, but who wants to speak in opposition? You can come up with your own, own approaches.
Russ, Russ.
Mr. Chair, do you know, was Nathan coming back?
Um, did Nate, there's paperwork there, did Nathan leave permanent, or did he just recuse himself on this one?
I don't know, those were the comment cards.
I just wanted to know that you were down to five, if you don't have Nathan that was way.
Yeah, and, and before we have further testimony, Mr. Bosin, you had heard me mention like earlier that, you know, it always takes four to prove anything, and when we get down to five, if somebody thinks the gamble isn't worth it, they can defer to next month. It appears we've got five of us now, so four would have to say yes. Well, yeah, 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 but I'm just saying, potentially, you could ask for deferral the next month. But if we have somebody who can't be here, sometimes we run into that, but I didn't know Nathan had to leave. He usually says something. Yeah. 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 Bert, do you have a cellphone number for him? Okay, alright. So, we're, we're going to assume that, that he has left the hearing for the rest of the evening, so, if you wanna continue on, that's, that's fine. If not, with the number of neighbors here, would it be possible we just hear testimony and then defer later?
Yes, could hear the testimony of the neighbors and then continue the hearing, but at the continued hearing, there's the right for people to speak again.
Again, yeah, we've had people wait five hours for this, including the applicant, so I wouldn't wanna just pull the rug out, but if we hear those that are opposed before we take a vote, we'll check in with you again. It doesn't mean that what you said or what anybody else says is how we make our decision, we take it into account, but there's a lot of things that help us make our decision.
Wait to come back and...
Well, I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and hear you all now, but before we take a vote, we'll still ask the applicant if he wants to stick with it or not. So, you've spent the time to sit here and wait.
Do we have enough people here to make a decision today? I, I didn't wanna make sure I didn't miss that.
That's up to the applicant and not you, but if the applicant says, yep, okay, you guys go ahead and decide. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, um, I, my name is John Lamberto, I live at two two nine fifty-first Street, which would be this property right here. And I purchased this property in two thousand and one. At the time I purchased it, the owner at that time said it was like living in the country in the city, that's why I moved there. And the property values in this area are directly related to the, you know, the lots, the, the green and the animals. And one thing I want you to know, if you don't know this neighborhood, is that there is no fiftieth Street. There's a forty-ninth and a fifty-first. And I was always under the understanding that this was, because you don't have a topographical map, but the elevation from Grand Avenue, and this is Robertson right here, changed drastically. Okay, so, when it rains, all the water from all this whole area is coming right to that spot. That's a natural draw right there, his property is at the bottom of that draw. When it rained two weeks ago, I went back there a week later and you had water running through there. There's a stream right here, this is a stream right here, you can kinda see this mark right here, this flows into Walnut Creek. So, I believe what he's doing would actually harm the environment, and there hasn't been an environmental impact done on this, but I have some real concerns about some of the things he said, because from my property, if I stand right here, I can see his entire back area, and he has a, like a veranda area right here. So, he was saying that he can't even see it, I can see it completely, and then when somebody asked about what it looks like when the trees leave, you can see the house, I mean, the house is just sitting there. So, in my view, in my opinion, he's calling a pool house, but basically, he's building another house behind his house, and it's almost as big as my house. I, my house, all these houses are, were built right after World War II, and they're all kinda bungalows. As a matter of fact, this house, my house, the Coonies used to live in that house twenty years ago, and people come, I mean, forty or fifty years ago, and people come up to me and say, does it still have the pink tile in the bathroom? Because they had visited them when they were kids and stuff. So, I think this is completely in opposition to the harmony and character of the neighborhood. So, when I got word of this, I went and talked to everybody around here, and I haven't met one person that is, would agree to, that this is a good idea to do. I've talked to probably twenty or thirty people on the street. So, everybody I know on Fifty First and Forty-Ninth Street is against it. A couple comments were that the kids play out here in the cars, this is a cul-de-sac. So, in about another hundred feet on his street, you're not going anywhere, so you can't go fast there. You're already slowing down, you can, the car can only go fifteen or twenty miles an hour in front of his house. I hear his kids playing baseball out on the street every night, so, they're playing out there all the time now. So, I, I don't think that should even be a consideration, but environmentally, the character of the neighborhood, I, I'm against building any kinda structure there, other than like something to store your lawn equipment in or something. He's already cut some trees down, he didn't say he did, there's right here, on this house, right here, there's about a hundred and fifty-year-old oak tree that you can't really see here in this thing, so, I just think that, you know, once he does that, I guess maybe I should, you know, I, maybe I can build a nineteen hundred-foot square house. I have a pool, so I'll call it a pool house too.
Well, by, by right, you could build a thousand square foot tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll just build a house there too, and then we'll just all build and we'll ruin the neighborhood. That's, that's why people moved here, was because they want the, you know, I see fox, coyote, lots of deer, of course. Wild turkey has even been right up to my back door, I mean, that's why people live here, and I, I think every single person I've talked to wasn't for it, so they, I told them I'd come here and voice their opinion for them, so.
Okay.
I think that's why we have zoning, I, I wouldn't even, I'm opposed to granting over the five hundred foot, because that's why we have zoning laws. Sure. Well, I was, I'm done, so I'm, so that's, that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you very much, John, we appreciate you coming down and waiting this afternoon here.
Thank you.
As I mentioned in the preamble, if you wanna show pictures or drawings, yeah. Yes, come on down. I, I've got a cramp somewhere else. Alright, you got up to five minutes, but you start off with your name and address, please.
Peter Rines, two ninety, forty-ninth Street. I'm gonna try to shade this at the same time as I talk. At two ninety, forty-ninth Street, we don't have an aerial view, these things might be protected by or out of sight from the aerial pictures that Mr. Bosin had, but they aren't to my wife Nancy and I, we've lived there for forty years, we've enjoyed the backyard, we have a porch on our north east corner, excuse me, south, southwest, hundred and eighty degrees wrong, and we've enjoyed that. Right now, behind that porch, it is vacant, and we have a four-foot chain link fence. I took a look from that point of view in the good sunlight, but this proposed building of Mr. Bosin's would be right about, almost half of our backyard, and it is behind our fence, but it's only five feet. And I am very, very opposed to it. I feel it is an encroachment, I don't understand, and I have to ask the board, why is it now more than a thousand, why, why did it go up, Eric, to fifteen hundred? Instead of just a thousand, that was acceptable, why is not the variance?
A thousand would be by right.
Yeah.
Five hundred over that would be an exception level appeal?
Which still requires a...
Alright, we're doing a variance appeal today, not exception?
Well, they could consider a lesser...
Combined?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they're considering a nineteen hundred forty square foot overall?
Right.
Yes, you're, you're spot on there, Peter.
Okay.
The applicant is requesting the variance level.
Alright.
Staff is recommending an exception level, and the board might decide one of three or four things.
Alright, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the time and effort you people have put into this. I would strive to try to have only a thousand square feet within the, the plans. Next to the gymnasium is a game room, and I think there's a part there that could be cut back, I don't think that it would be, he could still have a, a good size, a full-size gymnasium without a game room. If it's possible at all, I would like to also see an attachment to his own house. What is wrong with building most of this large building in his backyard instead of behind my backyard? And he had said something about topographical, I looked at it this morning in the good bright sunlight, and the amount, I'll see if I can demonstrate what I'm talking about here. Okay, I'm pretty new at this. Here's my lot. There's my lot in my house, and if I get that to my back fence here, this is gently sloping towards the trough that Mr. Lambert talked about also. And it is in the, the area where the building would be also, I'll try to make this quicker, you guys, so that this arrow would indicate the way that the, the water goes across. Now, my point is, this is exactly the same sloping, the same topography that is behind his house. This is no different, I don't see any real hardship in him putting this behind his own house and leaving me a more clear view. I also have, of course, to listen to the, the trucks and the, and the, the skid, whenever they get ready to build, should, should that be permissible? And I don't look forward to that. And I don't see a whole lot of trees between his house and my house, I know that he's... I know that, uh, he's talked about putting up the arbor, arborita, but, uh, that would also take time to grow and all of that. But this is pretty clear, right over my fence, and there's a couple of fallen logs back there. But there's no real, uh, I, I enjoy what I had there for 40 years. And, uh, let me see if I can make a conclusion here, you guys. I would like the whole proposed building not to be even allowed, but I understand. Uh, the swimming pool is not built yet. Maybe there is something he could use where he had a proposed swimming pool and put his building there or attach that building to his own house. I think there's another way that doesn't block my view. And I appreciate all my neighbors in speaking out today and coming here. Uh, I am directly affected by this. And even though it's only 17 feet high, I would see it from my porch. I can see it, I would be able to see it from my deck.
So.
I appreciate the Bozen family very much.
I want to bring you around the bend here because you've exceeded your time.
Yes.
But as a courtesy to you for sitting so long, if you answer my question, that doesn't count against your time.
Okay.
So he's got that little notch that he bought from, from the neighbor that flares around behind your house. So let's say he built it right up to where that flare starts.
Right.
But he doesn't build it where, again, based on your direct view, um, it's not behind your property.
Right.
You'd, you'd still see it, wouldn't you? If, if he had it in his backyard, but, but not in that little notch there that's directly behind you, even if he left that there, you'd still see it, right?
I don't think I'd see it if it was in his own backyard, especially if he centered it on the south end of it.
Yeah. What you're saying is you'd want him to push it way over by the swimming pool, so you don't see it at all.
Well, as little as possible. That's, that's all I could hope for.
Okay.
But the swimming pool isn't even built.
Right, right.
Okay.
And, and we don't have jurisdiction over swimming pools. That comes into some other requirements and.
Right.
Building code and safety code for the city, so.
Right.
So the board doesn't approve swimming pools one, or, or where they can be located. But I kind of understand what, what you're saying there.
Now, the other thing too, the building, I know that.
Yeah. All right, I'll give you just one more thing here, yeah.
Okay.
If you want to make one closing thought, I'll give you that.
Well, this would be the sight I would be seeing from my porch. And these little small windows like that looks more like a warehouse than it does a building that belongs in a residential neighborhood. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
I thank you for yours too. Okay. All right. Come on up.
My name is Sandy Tachi. I live at 313 49th Street. I live up the hill on 49th from these proposed additions. My concerns are of a general sort for my neighborhood. 49th Street has, for a very, very long time, been a very neighborly place. Um, we've lived there since 1972. I've seen many families come and go. As a former public school music teacher, I have a lot of interest in what happens in my neighborhood. We now have, uh, 23 to 25 kids under the age of 13 on our block. The west side of the street is very hilly. Kids come jazzing out of their parking, uh, out of their driveways, sometimes on their bicycles, very quickly. We have kids who live at the end of that cul-de-sac who are teenagers. We all know teenagers. They, they drive fast and they don't think about safety concerns. And I understand Brian's concerns. But by the time you get down to his end of the street, the other neighbor is right, they have slowed down because they have to. Because the street's in such poor repair that you can't go fast. Um, because there is another construction project going on down there right now that has brought in heavy machines and trucks, et cetera, for about a year and a half. I feel that would change the neighborhood drastically. Um, I'm afraid it would draw in the Bozens' many friends and acquaintances. We would end up with much more traffic on what is supposedly a quiet cul-de-sac den-in-street. Um, this morning I called many neighbors, this gentleman did not. Um, and in two hours of phoning, I came up with 12 families who are very opposed to this project. I think one of the things that makes the south of Grand Area is so lovely is its quietness. And we have a swimming pool, a public swimming pool, less than six minutes from their home. We have tennis courts eight minutes from their home. I do not particularly understand the need to have these things in one's own backyard. Now, that's me, the socialist.
You said it, not me.
I did. Um, but I, I feel that we have to take into account the entire neighborhood. It has, and there is a serious concern with watershed there. People talk about it all the time. I can't imagine that a building this large would not impact it dreadfully. I think I've said what I need to say. I have a bunch of scribbled notes. I will leave them with you. I also have the names of my 12 neighbors and their addresses that I will leave with you who are in opposition to this project. Do you have questions?
Um, if you want to keep your notes, you don't have to turn those in since you didn't share them with us, if, if that was your thought.
Right. I'm happy to share them with you if you can read them.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll leave that up to staff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
My, my decision is that I will leave my messy notes with you.
Those could be submitted, so I would just suggest handing them to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because otherwise.
And they can pass them down.
Yeah, so we have a chance to see them.
And the list of names is on the third page.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, any questions for Sandy? All right. Thank you for your time and your patience today. Okay. Yeah, 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 that's fine. Anybody who hears who can, can speak?
Hi, I'm Anne Folly, and I live at 23751st Street. And, uh, my property is to the west, uh, the southwest of Bozen's. And, uh, my concern is the watershed if they build there, especially if they put in a, a swimming pool at some point, although I know that's not your concern. It's like they're going to be digging down further into the ground. Um, and then, uh, again, I'm a big wildlife lover. I love sitting in my backyard every night, just appreciating what's out there. And I think it would substantially change my evening experience. So, especially in the winter or any time that the leaves are not on the trees. It would be very noticeable. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Yeah, any questions for Anne? Okay. Anybody else want to speak? Give you the opportunity. You've been here all day. Okay. All right, do we have any further? Oh, you had plenty of time at the microphone already. Um, I think what we're gonna do here, we're gonna give Brian a rebuttal, but first I want to see, do we have any questions for staff before we bring Brian back? Okay, all right. Tell, tell him he needs to announce that by the next time. That's Nathan. All right.
Bert, if he wanted to add this to his house, how big of an addition could he put on? Who's connected to his home?
Good question.
He could build it as long as he wanted, as long as he, or as big as he wanted, as long as he met the side yard and rear yard setbacks.
Yes.
So I don't know if this is a lot of record. If it is, well, but as far as the rear yard goes, I think he would have to stay back however deep the lot is, he'd have to stay 20 percent.
He can build as big as he wanted to as long as he met the setbacks.
Exactly, yeah. So say it's a 200-foot deep lot, he might have to stay 40 feet back from that rear property line. But otherwise, he could build up to 45 feet in height as well.
But that's a lot of rough.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 35 feet in height, but yeah.
And Bert, in, in general, I know there's been a lot of concern expressed about kind of the swale or the drainage and the low area. Um, what are the requirements under the building code? How people have to address stormwater?
There's no site plan required, so there's, that wouldn't drive the need for a engineered site plan.
Right.
So.
The general law just says that you can't unduly send stormwater in a different direction.
Water onto your neighboring property.
Right, you can't direct it, right. But if it's coming down from the, let's say, the north to the south, and it still ends up doing that in the end.
Yeah.
If he's savin' his design, he makes it go under or around his place, around the structure.
Right.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so Brian, al- almost like people's court here, you get the last say. Um, you've got up to two minutes, and we might have a question or two here, so.
Sure.
Anything you want to close with?
Sure. So, so I, I appreciate all of your concerns. Um, and we're part of the neighborhood as well. Um, in just doing a preliminary site survey, this is not a floodplain. We're not diverting water. Um, certainly, we could do an attached, um, structure, and it would be large because of our, it's a walkout basement, and then we did a drop with a retaining wall. We decided to do a detach because of the integrity of the neighborhood and to keep it less obtrusive. Um, but we certainly can do it as an attached. Um, and, and, and comment to, to Pete and Nancy Rhines, um, I think when we built in, I mean, I don't know how many times you've been on the back porch, but I don't think it's even functional right now. And so if that's something to help in, as we put through, and what you actually can see, I can assure you, just like we did with our front landscaping, the back landscaping will be exactly the same so that you don't see this, the structure building, and plus, we have the trees. So I think they're all good comments. I, I understand your current concerns. Uh, but we made sure that we addressed each one of those concerns with maintaining the integrity, keeping the forestry. Uh, we're not diverting water. It's not a floodplain. Um, in fact, we put a rock bed in to kind of keep that stream. And frankly, in the nine years that we've been there, it's been torrential downpours is the only time that we've had water. Um, that's the reality. Um, but I get it, and I get change, and I get progress, and people don't like institutional change, I get it. Um, but, you know, we're trying, we're trying to do something good for the neighborhood and for the kids. So with that, I'll, here, back to the board.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the public portion, then I go to board deliberation. So you guys have been good and attentive today. Lots of important stuff, including this one. So what do you think?
I don't see where he's met, I'll, I'll take Nathan's stance here. I don't see where he's met the test for a variance.
Right.
I don't know what the hardship, uh, is that is, uh, not overcomeable.
Okay.
I think he could meet the test for the exception, though.
Okay.
Well, I think too, he, he could put this, he could connect this to his house and get exactly what he's got.
Right. And make it huge. Right.
So the fact that he's, I think, taken the approach that he's taken, and that he seems to be sensitive to what's going on around them, um, I'm not concerned with, my house is full of kids all the time. And I don't have one neighbor complain about any of that. And the kids are old enough now that they can drive.
Right.
And it's a safe place to come to, so I'm glad that there's that many kids there.
Right. When my kids were growing up, I wanted my house to be the house they came to.
I'm not worried about that either. I, I think if he's willing to knock off the covered patio to meet with the, what staff's recommended, I say we let him do it because he's gonna, he could do something bigger and more obtrusive. And I kind of like the, what he's, the way he's thought this through and what he wants to do. So.
Yeah. Marla's?
I was just gonna make a motion, but boy, had if you have something to say.
Well, I, I think it's important, we've had some people sat here all afternoon, and I want to give them some credit. But I'm also kind of a, I like to hand it to both sides sometimes on issues, and I'm somewhat a glass half-full, glass half-empty guy on this one. Um, people have a right to use their property in a residential setting for residential purposes. And all the residents talked about a stable neighborhood and a nice neighborhood and great neighbors. I think he is one. He's got, he's raising three kids in the city of Des Moines, which, we got a wonderful city to raise kids in, but there's some people who decide that they don't want to raise their kids in Des Moines. This guy wants to be a good neighbor, have his kids on his street. People have a right to entertain people on their property. He could have a garage party every weekend if he wanted to. So what he's saying is, hey, I want to do some things in my backyard, uh, for some, you know, you got three boys, congrats on that. That's gotta be a handful. Um, so I'd, I'd like to give the guy credit. He's got the ability to use his property. And we don't have conservation easements. Uh, you have a lot of wildlife in your backyard. His backyard, ironically, is one of the ones that has the more open lot, from what I can tell, in the immediate area. So by right, he could build a 1,000-square-foot building there, by right. And nobody has anything to say about it. Um, now, I'll shift it over to you. We're trying to go through a comprehensive plan in this city and decide how minimum size for building a house. And we've got developers who are saying, well, nobody will buy a 1,400-square-foot house. You're making these houses too big. No one will buy them. And yet, you want to build a structure that's 1,940 square feet, much larger than what a developer says a brand-new house would be in the city. Um, you've got the right to do it at 1,000, 1,940, a little too much. But if we looked at what staff is suggesting, the 1,500-foot or 1,500 square feet maximum exception, we're talking an area an extra 20-foot by 25-foot. That's 500 square feet. You can shift it around 22 and a half by 22 and a half. But what's really on the table here, in my opinion, is, hmm, do we give this guy an extra 20 by 25 to build his building? Because that's the exception level that staff is recommending. And I think with the screening he's proposed, with the general setting there is and the quality of the building, I think once it's there, it wouldn't be that obtrusive. And if you do do it and make it work, you better have one hell of a party for your neighbors. So, so I'd, I'd be in favor of the exception level as referenced by staff.
Is that your motion, Mr. Chair?
I'll make it my motion.
I'll second that.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One. Okay, now, so it takes four to pass, so you pass by one. I don't know if anybody's happy here, but I hope you can all find a way to be happy because I think you can. So I thank everybody for spending all this time with us today. Okay, just a little business from last month. If you were here at last month's meeting, and I'm assuming you all reviewed the minutes in detail. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
I'll make it second.
Motion by Cindy, second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Any other business, Mr. Drost? Okay, this hearing is adjourned.
Good job, Mr. Chair. As usual.
Your honor. That was a good one.
Anyone say that it reopens and we party out?